Good af— ooh, hello. Good afternoon, excuse my voice, I think I’m— my voice is changing. We’ll call the meeting to order for the November 19th, 2019 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Muldoon is currently absent, but he is on his way.
All right, the first item under current business, study session item number one, clarification of items on the consent calendar. Do we have any questions on the consent calendar? Mr. Avery.
I just have a comment on number 10.
Go ahead.
I’m just really pleased with Public Works and other staff getting together and pushing through phases two and three of the contract and for coast highway improvements all the way down to the bridge going over on the peninsula. And it’s cost savings of a couple hundred thousand dollars. We were going to do it over two years, we’re pushing it forward. And so I know Director Dave Webb and his staff, Mike Senna-Cory and a couple of others really worked on that, and it’s great. It’s great for the residents, everyone, it’s just going to beautify the whole stretch, and we’re saving money at the same time. Thank you.
That’s very kind, I agree with you. Mr. Duffield, Ms. Brenner, Mr. Herdman, Mayor Protam. All right, let’s go right into some proclamations. We have this evening a proclamation honoring the 2019 Newport Harbor Lawn Bowling National Champions, and so let me read—and we have them here. If we have Ann Nunes, Charlie Herbert, and Kathy Herbert will be accepting for him, and Matthew Bocero, Buquero, the Association members, if you’d like to come forward to the lectern, and I will read the proclamation. Please come forward. And then after I read the proclamation, I’ll ask you to make some comments if you’d like, and then we’ll take your picture. All right, I’ll read the proclamation. Whereas the 2019 Lawn Bowling National Championships, which was hosted by the San Francisco LBC Lawn Bowling Club, located in beautiful Golden Gate Park, recently concluded with outstanding performances from several Newport Harbor Lawn Bowling Club members. Newport Harbor Lawn Bowling Club is located at San Joaquin Park in Corona del Mar. And the national championships have a men’s division and a women’s division, competing in singles and pairs, and in a round robin format to determine a champion. And Ann Nunes, which one is Ann Nunes? Ann Nunes, Newport Harbor Lawn Bowling Club, is the 2019 Women’s Singles Lawn Bowling National Champion! My goodness, yay! Ann was the only player to go undefeated in the tournament. This is Ann’s fourth national championship singles. Ann also has won five national championships in pairs. Wow. And whereas Charlie Herbert, now Charlie’s not here, you are his wife, okay? He’s with the Newport Harbor Lawn Bowling Club, is the 2019 Men’s Singles Lawn Bowling National Champion. After round robin play, a playoff was needed because of a four-way tie for first place. Charlie beat both opponents in a playoff to win his third straight men’s singles championship. Charlie is the first to accomplish a three-peat in men’s singles. Congratulations to Charlie. And Ann Nunes and Charlie Herbert will represent the United States in the 2020 World Singles Champion of Champions to be held in Adelaide, Australia. Charlie Herbert will also be competing in the 2019 World Singles Champion of Champions in November. And Matthew Buquero, Newport Harbor Lawn Bowling Club, and his partner Robert Buscaglio—I’m sorry, Buscaglio?
Buscaglio, yes.
Okay, Buscaglio. Long Beach Lawn Bowling Club are the 2019 Men’s Pairs National Championship. This is their first national championship. So therefore, I, Diane Brooks Stikson, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, recognize the Lawn Bowling National Champions of Newport Beach and the world. Congratulations. So if one of you would like to speak, Ann, or Mrs. Herbert, or any one of you, please make a comment if you’d be wanting to tell us about your experience.
Oh, so this was my first time competing in the national championships. It was an amazing experience. Just wanted to thank all of you for allowing us to play in our beautiful club right up the street, Newport Harbor Lawn Bowling Club. It’s a beautiful establishment, we love it, our greens are great. Your support, your ongoing support is well appreciated, and we invite you to come check us out.
Oh, sure.
We always have, what is it, Social Bowling, 10:00 AM, Saturday mornings.
Very good.
Come join us.
Ann, did you want to make any comment? Go ahead.
I’ve been playing this sport a long time, and it’s really great to be able to play at the national, international level. It’s as competitive as you want it to be, and as social as you want it to be. It’s a great sport, and everybody should come out and try it.
Well, that’s wonderful. Congratulations to all of you. If you’d like to come over to the flag, we’ll take a picture.
One more. One, two, three. Okay.
Steve’s probably the official one. Great.
And now we have a second proclamation honoring the volunteers of Newport Beach Animal Shelter. Are you all here? Please come forward. We have Valerie Schaumburg and the volunteers, so if you’d like to introduce them, Valerie.
Oh, I have Alyssa and Mary, Judy, Bobby, Edna, Judy, and Lonnie. Just some of our 30 volunteers that we have that are dedicated.
Well, that is wonderful. Well, I will read the proclamation. Whereas for more than four years, volunteers of the Newport Beach Animal Shelter have devoted over 4,300 hours each year to supplement the work of paid shelter staff at a minimum wage value of over $64,000 per year. And whereas volunteers lavish loving care, feeding, training, socialization, creative naming, and cleanup services for the 400 to 500 per year dogs, cats, bunnies, hamsters, and other pets in temporary care, and volunteers of the shelter represent the shelter, the police department, and the city of Newport Beach at community events and activities, and volunteers of the shelter assist in foster placement and adoption of relinquished or unclaimed pets. And in addition to their contribution of time, service, and love, volunteers have donated over $25,000 to the Friends of Newport Beach Animal Shelter for extra medical and other special needs. Now, therefore, I, Diane Brooks Stikson, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize the volunteers of the Newport Beach Animal Shelter for their many hours, days, weeks, and years of hard work and dedication to pet owners in our community, and to the lost, found, injured, and stray animals of Newport Beach. Well, thank you for all you do, for our four— for our four— I think mostly all our four-legged friends, for our four-legged friends. So Valerie, would you like to speak, or say anything?
I want to say thank you to the City Council for everything, all the support, for the police department, the chief, our deputy chief, everyone that has just supported the shelter in the four years. Every year it just gets better and better. Our volunteers are so dedicated, they come on days that we don’t have enough people, they foster, they sit with dogs that are shy. They just—I just get so teary-eyed because they do so much for our shelter animals. They come in from—we spend hours chasing them in the street, to maybe animal cruelty cases where we see them through conviction and maybe into a new home. So it’s like the full circle versus handing them off. And so our volunteers are fingerprinted at the police department, so we make sure that everybody’s there, that we can trust, and has some knowledge to make sure that the animals are safe, and we keep our volunteers and the public safe. So thank you again, we just love the shelter, we go every day, all of us, and we have a great time. They make—you can’t have a bad day at the shelter.
This doesn’t work, this is fun.
Don’t say I wouldn’t—I would do this for free. But it just—it makes a great day just to see the animals, and we have volunteers who have had a bad day and actually come in the afternoon and say, “I just want to sit with my favorite animal, and how can I help?” And you’re like, “Well, you came just a couple minutes to feel better,” and they’re like, “I’ll help feed,” and it’s just a great group of people I cannot say enough about. They show up out of the—you know, just in the last minute to just stand here so I could say thank you.
Well, and so we could say thank you as well in return. Back at you. Did you want to say something?
Mayor, with your permission, I’d like to say thank you to our volunteers as well as President of the Friends of Newport Beach Animal Shelter. This is why we in the community support our animal shelter through membership, and this is going to be a shameless plug. We’re still going for our founding membership for every—anybody that hasn’t volunteered at the shelter. We would appreciate if you would become a founding member of our shelter as well through our program. It’s FONBAS.org, F-O-N-B-A-S dot org. Just pick one of these great categories that we’ve got selected, and we could use your financial contributions as well. But this is priceless, so that’s what we look at, this is undetermined. So thank you for the shameless plug.
Well, thank you, and thank you for what you do for our animal friends and for your countless hours of volunteer service. We are grateful. Why don’t you join me over here at the flag, and we’ll take a photograph?
One more. One, two, three. Perfect.
So we have Meg Linton, or we have Tim.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight I have the pleasure of introducing Meg Linton, who is the CEO of the Newport Beach Public Library Foundation, who’s going to have a brief presentation.
Very good, welcome.
This is one of my first times presenting in my new role as CEO of the foundation, so I’m really thrilled to be here. I’m here with Kathy Verrier, who is the Chair of our Board of Directors. So—and I’ve also got my staff here today, too. The Newport Beach Public Library Foundation is an independent 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Its mission is to fund valuable library resources, programs, and services, and engages the community through the creation and sponsorship of diverse literary, cultural, and intellectual programs. The foundation has its own Board of Directors of 16, and a staff of three full-time employees. Through a cooperative agreement, the foundation occupies office space in the central library. It funds its own operating expenses and raises its own funds to fulfill its mission of supporting the library and the production of educational programs. The foundation is a distinct and separate entity from the Library of Trustees, the Friends of the Library, and the Newport Mesa Pro-Literacy Group. The library and the foundation, while separate, do work closely together and have done so since—the have worked closely together and have done so since the inception of the foundation when the central library was built on Avicato Avenue. The role of the foundation is twofold. First, it provides programming to our community that is presented at the library, and second, it provides cash for the library’s annual wish list, items that are not included in the annual library budget funded by the city. So, our first slide. So between 2009 and 2019, the last decade, the foundation has provided over $7 million in wish list and program funding. So we’re pretty proud of that fact. Our next slide, 2018 to 2019, so our last fiscal year, the foundation provided $153,000 in library’s wish list items, and provided nearly $380,000 in educational community programming with our witty lecture series, library live author series, medicine in the backyard, monthly community book discussion group, our Making Memories for Children programs, the wildly popular It’s Your Money and It’s Your Estate financial literacy programs, and so much more. Where $535,000 in funds were donated by nearly 1,300 members and donors. Well, that was last year. This year, for this fiscal year, the 2019-2020, the foundation is funding the library’s wish list with a cash gift of $155,000 for the items shown on the slide. We’re also producing another 60-plus programs for this current season. The costs for these programs are similar to last year, and will be approximately $380,000. And we will again be contributing over half a million dollars to this treasured asset in our community. According to the library’s tracking of program activities, for the last fiscal year, 2018-2019 season, over 72,000 people attended 200-plus programs in the Friends Room. This represents a two-and-a-half times increase in overall library programming attendance since 2009. Programming is a big part of what libraries are about today, and demand is increasing. The foundation is helping to meet the demand financially, and its volunteers, members, and donors are proud to be supporting this star-rated library system, which serves over a million visitors per year. Without the foundation’s financial commitment, staff, and volunteers, both the money and the personnel would have to come from other sources and/or the city’s general fund. The community appreciates and has come to expect the educational and cultural programming that the foundation provides for all our lifelong learners, and those dedicated to free access to knowledge and independent education. The foundation loves its libraries, and our board and members put time and money behind their belief that libraries are a vital asset to communities such as ours. So we are happy to present you with this gift of cash for the 2018-2019 wish list. So in lieu of a check this year, we’ve decided to give you a $155,000 bill. Finally, we say thank you to this city council, and to the library trustees, and all your predecessors for your continued support of the library. We appreciate the library staff for making our library such a terrific community asset that is open every day and serves everyone. Thank you.
Well, let me be the first among many—I’m here short this evening—to thank you. And I have commented in meetings past to put on the record the significant and enormously generous contributions, financial and intellectual, that the library provides to our community. We are grateful, and I can remember a few years ago pundits were suggesting the demise of our libraries because of the digital revolution, and it’s anything but that. Mayor Protam was just showing me part of your digital program that brings periodicals, magazines to any library member subscriber. So you’re keeping up, if not exceeding, the pace of the 21st century with the library that we have, and the programs and services you provide and help to provide in our community. And it’s a credit to the board, the foundation board, the Board of Library Trustees, the Friends of the Library, all the support groups, and staff who work together to provide a library that’s the jewel of Newport Beach. So thank you.
Yeah, it really takes a village to do it.
It does. Does anyone else want to make a comment?
Yeah, I love the wish list. So for anyone in the audience who actually hasn’t downloaded Flipster yet, you should. There are actually a ton of magazines, some that you’ll pick up as a guilty pleasure in the aisle at the grocery store, so now you don’t have to actually buy them. But then they’ve also got Sports Illustrated, Atlantic, New Yorker, and then if you’re a parent of young kids, they still have Ranger Rick, which I remember growing up with, and so a whole bunch of other things like that. So definitely download Flipster. All you need is your login for your public library, on your public library card, and a whole bunch of other things, but that’s one of my favorites. So thank you for filling that.
Yeah, of course.
Well, thank you. All right, I’ll come down and we’ll take a picture.
Okay, great. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
All right, now we’ll go into the rest of our business, short-term lodging, the Ad-Hoc Committee on Short-Term Lodging, recommended changes. So staff, Mr. Jurges, and staff, if you’d like to take it from here, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. Simone Jurges, I’m your Community Development Director. With me I have Monique Neverett, she is our licensed supervisor, and Brian Contino, he is our acting code enforcement supervisor. We’re excited to present the item this evening. This is the recommendations from the Ad-Hoc Committee on Short-Term Lodging. These are kind of proposed changes to our current ordinance. Your Ad-Hoc Committee, who’s made up of Mayor Dixon, Councilmember Brenner, and Councilmember Herdman, have been really working really hard on coming up with some proposed changes, and we’re going to go ahead and dive into it. So one thing to remember on short-term lodging, short-term lodging is not a property right. If you rent out your unit from 30 days or less, that is not considered a property right. And so the city can regulate short-term lodging, and cities can prohibit short-term lodging. We happen to have a long history with short-term lodging, and it’s kind of been a culture for short-term lodging. The purpose of the Ad-Hoc Committee is find that balance, strike that balance by allowing short-term lodging, at the same time improve that quality of life for the community. It’s been many years since we’ve made proposed any changes on this ordinance. So what you’re going to see this evening are recommendations, and once we get the council’s feedback and consensus, then the staff will come back with a revised ordinance and come back sometime in early 2020 for introduction. Just a little bit of history, as I said, the committee’s been working really hard on reviewing the changes. One thing to keep in mind, we’ve actually run out to the community about in three different occasions. Back in August, we did a community meeting with all our stakeholders. That’s where we invited all the community members in to address the—to listen to the presentation on the changes, and let the community provide their feedback. Councilmember Herdman did a town hall on October 14th, and specifically on short-term lodging on Bebo Island, and got a lot of good feedback there. And Councilmember Brenner did her town hall on October 26th at the new fire station, and got a good turnout and some really good feedback. I think all in all, what we can say is that people who live next to short-term lodging want a lot more restrictions. People who own short-term lodging don’t want any restrictions. And so it’s pretty mixed on the feedback side. But again, this is where our recommendations are for somewhere kind of that balance in between. So with regards to operators, these are some proposed changes. Anytime you’re an operator and you have a short-term lodging permit, you must post it on any type of advertisement, whether it is a magazine article, whether it’s a blog, or whether you’re on platforms. You must provide your short-term lodging permit number. You must disclose to the city through an application the number of bedrooms. And for the first time, we’re proposing a maximum occupancy. And our formula for occupancy is two people per bedroom plus two. And that plus two is really recognized as maybe a living room couch or foldable bed in the living room. So—and that’s pretty much standard of what we’ve seen with other cities. They’ve used this type of formula, it’s become kind of the standard. We’re looking at this as a maximum occupancy for overnight occupants, and so there is an example there, that for a three-bedroom home, three times two is six, plus two, that’s your maximum occupant load, which is eight. Eight overnight occupants. So the question would be, can you have guests? Well, sure, you could have guests, you could have visitors, but from an overnight standpoint, we have a maximum occupancy, and it’s just like a hotel, they have maximum occupancies for the rooms. Some additional changes we’re requiring, there are some house rules. So property owner or the operator, they must post these house rules on the inside of the unit, so the tenants could understand what the rules are. So we do want a live contact person, so if there’s a problem with the unit, somebody that they can reach out to in a 24—in any 24-hour period, that’s for the tenant’s benefit. We must post information regarding to parking, how many, and the location of the onsite parking spaces, and I’ll talk more about parking here in a little bit. We want to know the schedule of the street sweeping, we want to know the schedule of the trash collection, so everybody understands what they’re expected to do, when to take out the trash, when to bring the trash back in. We want to really define the noise, loud and unreasonable noise, and Brian’s here, and he can talk about later about, you know, the noise complaints he does receive. So we want to be really strict on noise. We don’t allow any noise or unreasonable noise beyond 10:00 PM, and that’s going to go all the way till 10:00 PM, and that’s something that we’re going to propose in the code. And then at the same time, you know, it’s not just the property owner’s responsibility, the tenants are going to be responsible, too. If they get—if we get complaints, and we show up, and we see the tenant is violating any of the rules, they’ll get a citation also. The next set of changes we’re proposing is really to post a sign on the outside of the unit. This is different, this is unique. We took this example from Big Bear, where they actually post the occupant load on the outside of the building. What we’re proposing is that every unit for short-term lodging that has a permit must provide signage on the outside of the unit. It’s not a big sign, maximum two square feet, and it’s going to have the contact name, it could be a management company, and a contact phone number, and the occupancy limit. What we heard during our community forums is that some of the property owners don’t want their phone numbers posted. Well, of course, it’s a privacy concern. So what we started looking into from a staff standpoint is that can we utilize an outside answering service, a third-party answering service? And we found that this model’s actually used with a number of different cities throughout the nation for short-term lodging. And so the answering service, the number would be a local number, a 949 number, and if a resident or a neighbor has an issue with the property that’s under rent, could be maybe a loud noise, could be the parking is messed up, they would call that number, and that answering service would be a live person, take that information, and either would electronically call the property owner, electronically notify the property owner, or call the property owner. And so what we’re proposing is that the city would contract with an answering service, and we’ve—we looked into the cost, it’s about $35,000 a year, and this is—I think is going to help a lot with any code enforcement complaints or any issues about the response times. I’ve heard a number of issues about, you know, they’ve reached out to code enforcement, and we don’t have a nighttime service for code enforcement, or PD is really busy, and it took a long time for PD to respond. So this is going to kind of curtail that, where we’re going to have an answering service, that answering service is going to reach out to the property owner directly, and let them know what the issue is. With regard to parking, we are proposing that any short-term lodging permit that’s issued for that unit, that unit must have at least one parking space. If you have a duplex and you have two units, you’re going to require it to have two parking spaces, and it could be the garage, it could be the carport, it could be the driveway, it could be anything. But we’re trying to get the cars off the streets and onto the private property. So the question is going to be, well, I already have—I have a short-term lodging permit now, I don’t have any parking onsite, what happens? Our proposal is going to be that you lose your short-term lodging permit. Hosting platforms, there are some requirements for hosting platforms. If a hosting platform is going to collect the TOT, they’re going to be required to remit that TOT. Whoever collects the occupancy tax is going to have to remit it, and that’s going to apply to the hosting platforms, too. Hosting platforms, you know, cannot book anything that is illegal. So with regards to how they’re protected, you know, it’s kind of free speech, it’s copy protection. They could post a listing of possibly an illegal unit, and they’re not forced to take it down, but what they cannot do is they cannot book it. They cannot reserve that unit. They can post it, it’s just words on a screen, they can post it, but they can’t book it. So that’s something that we’re going to make sure that’s in our code, and they should not—they’re not going to be able to— code. And that should not, they're not going to be able to collect any fees or facilitating unpermitted rental services, uh, units, I'm sorry. Another kind of new proposal that we're making is, you know, right now, we have about, about 1,450 short-term lodging permits issued. We're going to propose an ultimate cap throughout the entire city of 1,600 permits. We'll never exceed 1,600 permits ever. And if you want, if you're that 1,601, we're not, you're not going to be able to get a short-term lodging permit, but you're going to go on a waiting list, and we'll, and Monique will be managing that waiting list. Until somebody comes off, then that waiting, then you come back from the waiting list and get your short-term lodging permit. The other proposal is we're looking at, where can we make some adjustments, some fine-tuning adjustments? In the coastal zone, we have, you know, almost all the short-term lodgings in the coastal zone. And any changes we make in the coastal zone, you know, we're going to have to go to the Coastal Commission, and I think that's going to be kind of an uphill battle for us. But in the non-coastal zones, we're proposing to not allow any additional short-term lodging permits to be issued. If you have a short-term lodging permit, and we've counted so far only 58 in the non-coastal zones, you get to make, you keep your, your, your short-term lodging permit, you get to hold on to it, you get to be grandfathered in, but it's a 10-year abatement. In 10 years, you lose it. So we want to get, we're trying to eliminate, we're trying to curtail the short-term lodging, and so we feel that the non-coastal zones, probably the best way, we're talking about 58 permits that are active today in the non-coastal zones, and I'll show you that here in the next slide. So you could see on the left of your screen, you have kind of that darker shade, that kind of reddish color, that's the coastal zone. And on the right side, that's the non-coastal zone. And this is a, a live picture today from our GIS database. So this is Cronin Delmar Village, and we've got 49 that are permitted in the non-coastal zone. And with our proposal, those would be able to maintain their permit, but only for a 10-year abatement. And no screen there. Oh, there we go, okay. And this is over there in Newport Heights. You could see how all the short-term lodging permits are on that peninsula in West Newport. You could see in the, in the non-shaded area, you've got seven houses there, those green house dwellings, so those are in the non-coastal zone. So, and we have one over there in Back Bay too. I didn't, I didn't provide that on the screen. So if you add all those up, that's about 58 that are in the non-coastal zone. So we're saying, no more permits in the non-coastal zone, we're not going to issue anymore. And at the same time, those that do have a permit are grandfathered for another 10 years. So to curtail the, the cap on, we propose 1,600, and to offset the loss of 58 units in the non-coastal zone, what we're proposing is that we allow short-term lodging in the mixed use. Right now, our code does not allow mixed-use properties to have a short-term lodging permit. So if you think about mixed use, mixed use is a combination of residential and commercial. Could be residential and retail, it could be residential and office. You know, we have a lot of these types of uses. And so we've counted, there's about 533 parcels out there in the community that quote are considered a mixed use. And if you look here in the, on that screen in front of you, it's kind of hard to see, but it's the pink salmon color is the mixed-use zone. And so you could see how it goes from the Newport Pier all the way up to kind of the West Newport into Mariners Mile. And if I zoom into the Newport Pier area, you can see more of that salmon color, and you see that MUW2, that's our mixed-use zone. So we have quite a bit of it throughout town. Right now, today, in our zoning code, it does not allow short-term rental. And really, the purpose was, it was just to limit or cap how much short-term rental we do allow throughout the city. So what we're proposing is that we start allowing that. It's, it's a mixed-use zone, it's a residential-commercial use. We open that up, allow people to start using their short-term rentals in that, those residential units. Unfortunately, I don't have a, a unit count, I don't know how many residential units there are. I just know we have about 533 parcels that are in the mixed-use zone. From an enforcement standpoint, we're going to kind of tighten up on the enforcement side, that's our proposal. If you have a short-term lodging permit and you haven't paid any TOT in two years, you know, we're going to go ahead and revoke your permit, but you're allowed to reapply if you'd like to. Are there going to be loopholes, where somebody's going to submit a TOT for a dollar and try to keep their TOT, their, their short-term lodging permit? Yeah, probably. We're going to try to figure out some, some language there. But the idea is that, you know, if we're going to impose a cap, and we're going to have a waiting list, if you're not using your short-term lodging permit, let's just give it to somebody else who's going to use it. Bullet point number two, if you get two violations in a 12-month period, you're going to get a six-month suspension. And our bullet point three, our LUGOs, these are citations issued by the police department, are loud and unruly gathering. If you get two in a 24-month period, you get a 12-month suspension. And if you get a suspension, and then you get, you come off suspension within six months, if you violate the code again, we're going to revoke your permit. And there's due process rights for that property owner, it'll be reviewed by the finance director, and we have language with regards to due process, but that's going to be our proposal. So with that, you know, looking at what the cost of services, and we've, we have kind of a, kind of a laundry list of changes, and we, we think we're going to need some additional staff resources to kind, to help with the compliance side of it. So the answering service, we looked at, it's about $35,000 per year, and if you divide that per a permit basis, we're looking at $25 per short-term lodging permit. For staffing, we do have currently a senior fiscal clerk that's operating at a .6 FTE. If we're to increase that, we feel we do have the need to do that with these changes, that increase in cost is about $60,000 per year. And if you could see that line at the bottom there, our current short-term lodging permit fee, our current fee's $103. So if we impose the answering service fee of $25 plus the senior fiscal clerk, just that delta between the .6 and the 1.0, that's an additional $41. And so we can offset this by charging a higher short-term lodging permit fee of approximately $169. And that's something we'd like to get your, the council's feedback on. So here's our summary, here's our top 10 summary of what we'd like some feedback from the council, is short-term lodging permit on all advertisements, maximum occupancy, we talked about that, our interior rules with trash and street sweeping posted, parking, one space for every unit, exterior signage, that's, that's really new, it's the, using, apply the maximum occupancy, the contact name, and using an answering service. We, we really like that answering service idea. An ultimate cap of, of short-term lodging permits, about 1,600 permits per year. We have the platform, they're responsible too, and we've gone through that, a short, allow short-term rental permits in the mixed-use zone. Tougher enforcement regulations, what we went through, and an abatement program for non-coastal zone permits. And that concludes my presentation, and we're here to answer your questions.
Okay, anyone, anyone have a question? Mr. Hurdman, did you?
I can't remember what the cost of a business license is. Thank you.
On the, I have a question on the answering service. So tell me, revisit how that process will work. So a, a neighbor conceivably would be calling the answering service to complain, and then what happens?
So if there's a neighbor complaint, they, they could look at the, the number on the signage. The answering service would take the complaint, it would be a live person, we would specify a live person. They would document what the complaint is, and they would forward that complaint electronically to the property owner. Again, we're, we're requiring a, a contact person that's available 24 hours throughout the day. That, that property owner can actually respond to the issue, call their tenant, follow up with their tenant, discuss it with their tenant. And so that, that's an immediate response. We think that we can, we can compress this response time dramatically. At the same time, from the city standpoint, we start collecting data. We start to understand where our hot, hotspots are, what are our, we know that our summertime is our peak season, but we, we struggle to understand where the hotspots issues are, where we need to focus more attention on the code enforcement standpoint.
So, entry service sends electronically a notice to the property owner. So suppose there's no response from the property owner.
We, we will find that out. I mean, that, that would be part of the data that we will collect. And if there's no response, we're going to have provisions in our, in the draft ordinance, that they have to have somebody available 24 hours a day. And from there, we could issue a citation because there was no response from the property owner.
So we'll establish some time period, if there must be a response within X number of minutes or something.
That's correct.
Mr. Avery.
Yeah, I recall when this topic came up some time ago, a woman came down, and we were talking about how difficult it was, and this idea of, you know, people not controlling their places. And she said that, you know, and her places were out of town, but like in, I don't know, Tustin, and up in that area, and she had a number of them. And she said, I have no problem at all. I've never had a problem, because I've got the rules, and I'm an active manager, and I'm there, and I'm managing these buildings. And that makes complete sense to me. So, so I have a couple of things. One is, I think we need to be kind of alert to those owners that are not managing. And when we kind of get this code enforcement kind of, they're not, they can't be contacted, and they don't respond, and it happens repeatedly. I just think we need to really make it clear in some sort of way to people, if you're going to do this, you really need to manage your property and be on it. And so they have to feel enough threat to losing their permit fairly quickly on to engage their tenants and, and remind them, and be real clear when they're meeting them there at the property, you know, what the rules are. And that's what this woman was doing, and she was not having any problems at all. My only other concern is just, you know, the, do we have the code enforcement horsepower in terms of, of enforcement officers to, to do this and do everything else that we need to do in town? And I know that's a tough juggling act, and, but that's a concern of mine as well. But I think the real key is to, we, we shouldn't have to manage these. You know, this should be the responsibility of the owners of these properties. And so I think it's very expensive to have a code enforcement officer get involved, and something that really should be up to these folks to do. So I don't know if there's a way to add a little more teeth to, you know, to the whole thing in terms of, as people get the point, they, they, if they're going to do this, they're, they're on the hook, and they can lose their permit or have it suspended easily. And I think maybe it's a reasonable, what you've got here in terms of the two times. But anyway, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Potem.
So, we've got a handful of questions. So one of them is the, so the answering service issue. What happens if there is a neighbor who particularly dislikes a short-term lodging near, near them? And that neighbor chooses to call repeatedly, to the point where the person who owns the property does not want to take the phone call any longer? Is there an out clause there for someone who is being harassed by a neighbor who would like to use these new rules as a way of eliminating, eliminating the, the issue?
I think you, you bring a really good point. And I think what's really important is from the city staff side, is to have that dialogue with the property owner and the individual that's complaining. You know, if there are going to be multiple violations, multiple issues, we're going to start to see data. And from there, that's where Bryant comes in with his team to actually go and investigate and verify. That's going to be really important. And we already do that. We do get those multiple complaints constantly for property owners. We go do, and do inspections, and, you know, most, some, most of the time we conclude there's nothing there also. So you're absolutely right. I think there could be an abuse here, but I, I do also believe that it's going to be very helpful from an enforcement standpoint, because if there are great operators, they want to know what's happening to their properties, and they want to follow through.
I think there's some level of reasonableness too. So whether to issue a citation or not is somewhat discretionary up to the code enforcement officer. So if it looks like someone's using it as a tool for harassment, then it'd be up to the code enforcement officer to determine whether or not they should issue a citation in that circumstance.
Yeah, and, and to the point someone had made earlier about the staffing concerns, is it, is it not possible to have a central database then of, of the phone numbers that are available to either code enforcement or to a, the police department, so that if there is, let me put it this way, I think it's a lot less likely that a neighbor would call repeatedly on, to a code enforcement officer or a, or a police department if they have to call those instead of a number being put on for an answering service. I mean, I, I'm, I'm just saying, you have to anticipate human nature a little bit on this one. So I, that's, that's one of my concerns, especially on the cost side. Because one of the concerns I've got in terms of looking at that, would you mind going back to the cost slide? One of the concerns I've got when I'm looking at this is that this is all post-TOT, this is actually post-TOT minus 18% money going to regulate an area of the, that generates the TOT, right? So we're looking at $95,000 increase directly to the city of Newport Beach on an issue that is, again, minus the 18% that we're paying to VNB. That's a, that is, I will just say, concerning to me, in terms of seeing that kind of increase on, on that. Can we go back to the cap? I didn't understand, I, I didn't understand the cap issue in terms of shifting, yeah. So we would cap it at, how many do we have right now? I'm sorry.
We have 1,458 permits issued.
And all of those were grandfathered in, right? No?
No, only 212 are grandfathered in.
Oh, okay.
Of the 14.
Okay. And so we have, we could potentially expand up 142, and then we, if we did that, we'd do that. And so what's the, so, when we have, when we say a non-coastal zone, don't we have an LCP that goes significantly into all of the areas that we were just looking at? Like, if we go, yeah, isn't the non-shaded part still in the, our LCP? Or is it, is that, no? What about, what about on the peninsula? If we go?
I don't have a, a good imagery of the peninsula.
Yeah, that.
So that's all coastal zone.
That's the coastal zone, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I missed, I didn't see that, that's... Okay, so the idea would be we, go, go to the next slide. Okay, this, yeah, so this is what I'm trying to understand when we're looking at this. So the idea is that we would hopefully shift some of the, some of the non-coastal zone back into the coastal zone by zoning the, by allowing the mixed use to, to expand out?
So it wasn't necessarily a shift, is, you know, the, the committee understood that they're imposing a cap of 1,600, that they're going to eliminate some out of the, the non-coastal zone areas. From, from my department, we get a lot of requests for short-term lodging in the mixed-use zone. So really, to kind of counter that cap is to go ahead and open up that mixed-use zone to, and there's, again, there's 533 parcels out there. It seems to be a better fit, it's that mixture of residential and commercial. So we were thinking that we're not going to get as many noise complaints or complaints from trash, because you already have a commercial component to that. And it wasn't necessarily the shift, it was just to provide a little bit more flexibility for individuals that want short-term lodging in the, in the mixed-use zone.
So if we pass this, 58 would go away, no matter what, in about 10 years?
Correct.
And, but we could potentially expand that 58 plus 142.
Just 142.
Plus, well, if you got rid of the 58, then it decreases your number, and then it goes back up, right? So up to 142 plus that. And then, so you're looking at potentially expanding the number of short-term lodging along the peninsula by quite a bit if we move forward with this approach. I'm not sure that's quite where people want to go. I mean, is that, are we getting, are we having a lot of people saying, yes, please add 200 more short-term, short-term lodging into the city?
No, we're not getting that request at all. We get property owners that own mixed use, that are, that knock it on our doors quite a bit, and knocking on some of the council's doors too, that they feel that they are being singled out because of, you know, for the, for the mixed use, that they're not part of that, allow, being allowed to for a short, short-term rental.
Interesting. Okay. And then I'm sure Craig will make these comments. He had a, he made a good point in writing today, that, that the number, let's go back to the, what the sign would say. Yeah, so that bottom that says occupancy limit, it would technically, the occupancy limit would technically be only the overnight occupancy limit. I mean, people can have friends over to watch football, or.
Correct.
Or ballet, I guess. But yeah, that's, but that's, but I, I just want to, he, he made a point of, that it probably should say overnight occupancy limit instead of occupancy limit only to the, only because you're probably going to get a few calls if someone has, some folks over during the day, especially along the peninsula and the boardwalk. People have parties, they have barbecues. If, if I see something saying occupancy limit eight, but there are 15 or 20 people hanging out, you're probably going to get some calls that are unwarranted. So just, that's probably, that's a...
I think we did say, to add the word overnight in there, eight overnight occupants. Somewhere we discussed that.
We did.
Okay. Yeah, but I'm saying on the sign itself.
That's a good point. Mr. Hurdman.
Yeah, just, I, I served on this committee. I liked the work we did. We're maintaining this industry in our city. We're not saying there's not going to be any short-term lodgings. And of the 13 cities that were surveyed by the city, there are several cities that do not allow short-term rentals in their city. We're tightening up the ordinance. not allow short-term rentals in their city. We're tightening up the ordinance and the regulations in order to protect quality of life for people that live next to and/or around short-term rentals. We're opening up mixed use, and I think it's important that, we talked about this today in our meeting, once we open up mixed use, we're probably going to reach that cap of 1,600 right away, and that'll automatically create a waiting list. So, because what Simone says is very true. In our mixed-use areas, there's a number of people that are very desirous of having short-term, short-term lodging permits. And then, Brad, to your point, we can always revisit this. We can always revisit it. Okay, we can tighten things up even more. We can increase the number of units allowed. We can decrease the number of units allowed. So just be aware of that, okay? One other thing, too, in an effort just to be as completely as transparent as we can, for those people who are applying for a short-term rental business license renewal fee, a permit to do so, and then if they're working with a platform or two, the potential cost could be as much as $1,194 a year to the property owner now, okay? With, by increasing the cost of fees because of the answering service, because of the clerk costs and that type of thing. So I, I just think it's important that people be aware of that and that they not be surprised if, in fact, we do approve this. Thank you.
Mr. Avery.
Brian, how is it now, in terms of the calls? So we have an awful lot of short-term right now. And is it, is it manageable? Is it infrequent? Or?
So we're, we are a reactive division, and right now, the calls have kind of tapered down because we are outside of our busy season. During the summer, I would say, coming in on the weekends, I'll have five or six calls every Monday morning that start that, that week off. Some weeks are less, some weeks are more. And then, kind of right now, we're going to start to see a pickup, because people are coming in for the holidays, renting the houses out. So we are kind of getting ready to gear back up for some more calls into our department.
But considering the number of units, it doesn't seem like a lot.
It's not overwhelming, but they are, they are coming in.
Constant.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Ms. Brenner.
I just wanted to mention in response to that, that we have not been able to respond on a 24-hour basis to the complaint calls. We've had to, because Brian works regular work hours during the week, we've, we've had certain calls that go to the police department, too. Do we get records of the ones that go to the police department, Brian?
We get records if they are issued a DAC, which is a
If they're issued.
District Attorney card from the police department.
But if we just respond and give them a warning or whatever, we may not know about the calls that we get for that.
That is correct.
And one other thing, I wanted to ask about this employee that's going to go to full-time. Are we covering the pension costs and, and everything with the amount of fee that we're raising for that?
Yeah, she would become full-time, and that cost is in that dollar amount.
Okay, so that's fully covered, then. And one other thing, on our slide that lists the tenants' responsibilities, we say no loud, we talked about this at our meeting, but the way it comes across here, no louder and reasonable noise from 10:00 to 10:00 a.m. It sounds like you can have louder and reasonable noise, as long as it's not between those hours. So we might want to look at that language a little bit more.
Got it.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
Actually, I'll see.
Oh, did you want something, Mr. Hurdman?
Well, that's not the case. Everybody in this city has a right to live a peaceful life 24 hours a day. We have ordinances in this city that, that in fact say that if someone is disturbing the peace between 10:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., sometime during the day, they're breaking the law, okay?
That was my point.
Yeah, we'll make sure it's very clear in the ordinance. That's a good point. So thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, could you go back to that mixed-use slide just one more time? I suppose the, part of the, there are a couple of concerns I have. One of them is, you, you know, the moment you open up mixed use to this kind of use, you'll never get it back. Because the coastal commission is so focused in on maintaining access. So you'll just, we won't, we won't get this back if, if it turns out this was a bad idea. And I'm just, I'm not a, I'm just, I'm not inclined to, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to move forward on a, on opening up the mixed use in this area. That, they're really, I mean, you think of some of the condo complexes that have been going in and over there, and some of the apartment areas, and the housing and, and whatnot. I mean, there's a reason why we, there's a reason why some cities strongly prefer people who are long-term tenants. I mean, they're, you, you don't have vacancy issues. You don't have issues of folks who are transitory. You have people invested in the community. You have, you have the, you have a consistent base of folks who live next to each other and great community. And we do have a great, I mean, I think that this, this council's been great on supporting our current existing businesses in this area. But I just, I can't favor expanding it at the, at this time into, into the mixed use. But I, I think the rest of, the rest of this has been well thought out, and I appreciate the subcommittee's approach on it.
Mr. DeFoe.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to do a, a thank you to the committee. I think they did a great job. Same thing with staff. I have a vacation home in another state, and we're going through this right now in my neighborhood, and they're doing nothing compared to this. So I am, I think that we are doing a fabulous job of working with everyone, trying to, like you said, Mr. Hurdman, sorry. The, you're exactly right. We're not trying to stop it. We're not trying to eliminate it. It's a good thing for homeowners, property owners. So, but to live with it is what we're talking about, to live with it. And where I am, we've got a long way to go. And you guys have done a fabulous job of thinking about just about every little thing you can do, and I'm sure there's more. But you're really on a great path. So I just want to say thank you for that.
Well, that's a good comment. I'll have some follow-up comments, and I want to commend staff. You know, we've started looking at the 21st century version of short-term lodging. When Airbnb and VRBO started, it's about four or five years ago, when we started talking about the impacts on our community. Because we do, and I've said this before, we've all said this, we have really a fine professionally managed hospitality industry for short-term rentals in our community. So we've peacefully coexisted, because we've had responsible management companies dealing with their short-term rentals. And we always had a single place to go if there was a problem. So this has opened up the world, and so we continually are trying to find ways to allow it, to allow the benefits of visitors into our community, but to respect the rights of our property owners and our, and keep and maintain our, the quality of our neighborhoods. Mayor Protem has brought up this on the mixed use. We only really had one meeting discussing the mixed use consequence, and I have grown to share his concern, because, of course, it affects largely in my district. I did not realize, Mr. Juerges, how many mixed-use units we have in the city. You said approximately 500 and something?
It's 533 parcels. So how many units? I don't know yet.
Yeah. So that's concerning to me. And Mayor Protem is most likely correct in foreseeing the potential issue that if it became difficult to manage and it had negative community impacts with the coastal, all of this in the coastal zone, we really couldn't do much to prevent that. Speaking on the enforcement side, do you have any data on year-to-date, what the number of complaints, Brian? You talked about every Monday, you have about five. I mean, year-to-date, how many complaints and calls have come in? Do you have that information?
Not off the top of my head, but just to kind of guess in the ballpark, I would say probably 500 calls year-to-date about short-term rentals and issues
Wow.
with these, with these properties.
That's a lot.
Yes.
That speaks to a problem. And then on the second issue, equally important, could you just give us an update on how the host compliance firm we've outsourced to identify those properties that do not, that are operating short-term rentals without a permit? And we have to chase those down essentially manually through this outsourced company. Monique, do you have some, just some information about that?
Yeah, so we're still using the host compliance website, and we have some data. Host compliance does come in and bring us a lot of properties, so it's not manually scrubbed site by site. We have some figures for you. I'm not sure if that's what you're asking, but from 2015, when we started using host compliance to current, it's brought in discovery efforts of about $2.5 million.
And how many unpermitted properties have been identified?
Probably about 600.
Oh, my gosh. All right, just year-to-date, do you have that, is it, is it awareness building in terms of the requirement for a permit?
Meaning, are we finding the same amount every year?
Yes.
We're starting to plateau. When we started using them in 2015, we just didn't have the manpower. So when we first went on board with them, we found an abundance of them. So right now, we're at about 100 properties for this year that host compliance has found for us, or helped us find.
So going forward, that, you, you expect that would, using host compliance would be a continuing cost that we'll bear?
I do believe so.
Okay. Any other questions up here? We keep losing our screen here. There we go. Let's open it up for public comment. Please come forward.
Madam Mayor and fellow councilpeople, I'm going to make a couple of comments on some of the things that were brought up today. Quite frankly, I think I'm with Will on this. I'm not seeing any sense in opening up to the mixed use on, on the peninsula, especially. We've been in Venice for 50 years. I've never really received a call to manage a mixed-use type property. I don't really, and as far as Will's concerned about the number of permits, there's a difference between active permits and inactive permits. And we have a lot more than 1,400 permits. Some of them are not active.
We don't keep in our system inactive permits. They have to stay active with an active business license, or the accounts are completely closed out.
All right. So anyway, there are on the books a lot more than, there's still inactive permits on the books, anyway. Regarding the sign and the occupancy posting, from a practical standpoint, I don't see how that can be done, because no one's going to go count the beds. So if you put an occupancy limit on a sign, say eight, you going to go count the beds? I don't know how that can be enforced. How would anybody know? Walking by, you've got 10 people, 12 people, 15 people there? I don't really see the point of that. I don't see how it can be enforced. If, if code enforcement came out, are they going to go count the beds? They're going to count sleeping bags? I mean, I just don't see that as a way of an enforcement kind of a situation. I do think, though, that the city has done a good job as far as putting a lot of information online. You can go onto their website and see who has a permit. And I think they ought to be sure to have the occupancy limit on that particular property, so anybody could go onto the, say, website and see what the occupancy is. I think just from a practical standpoint, to have that number on a sign doesn't really serve a real purpose. Because, as mentioned before, if you have some friends over and you've got 12 people on the patio, and you have an eight-limit occupancy, there's a difference between occupants and occupancy. Occupancy is based on overnight. So, I don't know.
Well, so, let's talk about this. So we thought we would say eight overnight occupants.
But, so what can you do? You going to go count the beds? You got, you've got 15 people on patio. Okay, who's here staying overnight? I mean, I just don't get that.
Okay. Do you have any other questions?
The, there was a comment that, now, apparently, all these extra fees that are going to be added are going to be expensed out on the permit fee. So there'll be no erosion of the TOT. Now, I've had a live answering service for years, and I happen to be the one that gets the calls on. I get the text first, and then I can decide what to do with it. And I spend about $2,400 a year, not $35,000. I don't know what answering service you're getting a quote on that, but that seems kind of high. Now, one other thing, too. I mean, the vacation rental industry is, is huge. It's, it's a choice on Expedia, and it's a, it's a choice that hotelers make today and vacationers. And I think the city is wise. City Newport Beach does their best job of any city in the county in managing short-term rentals. And I have to give the staff and all the enforcement kudos on that.
All right. Thank you. Brian or Mr. Juerges, do you want to talk about enforcement on the occupancy issue? How would we handle that? How, how do you see that happening? Somebody complains that there are 15 people on a property, what would you do?
I'll do it. You know, right now, right, right now, we don't, we don't have any regulations on the books. And so if we do get a complaint, you know, we're, we're following up and investigating. It, you know, we, it's a reactive program. If somebody were to file a complaint and say that they are, they have a large party, they're exceeding their maximum occupant load, you know, depending on if we have a staff member available, we'll go out there and respond and do a visual inspection. It's a reactive program. And that's how we do it now, and that's how we'll do it going forward.
Okay. Any other comments? Please come forward.
Nancy Gardner. Simone, are short-term lodgings counted as residents in our count?
Short-term lodging are not considered residents, correct?
All right. So it seems to me that our right-hand and left-hand are not communicating today, because we have 4,800 units we're going to have to count somehow. And we're saying, let's have more short-term lodging, which would then take away from that number. So then, we might want to consider even shortening that amount, because we're going to be in such a, it'll be such a challenge. But I do support the work. I really salute staff and the committee, and I was at some of the meetings. And the more we can do to make it pleasant for everybody, the neighbors as well as the people visiting, it would be great.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor, Council Tim Stokes. I would add one more task to the answering services about the metric of, is this working? Is the, a, a simple call the next day to the person that complained, did your complaint get resolved? And that, that gives you the ability to see if this whole thing works from that perspective. And my other question is, is, is something like this transferable? Is it just for a property, or is it, will it be monetized, or so you could sell this thing to another person? The answer is no.
No, stays with the property, though.
Okay.
Next speaker, please.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Regarding the parking requirement of one space per unit, I was wondering if we have an estimate of how many of the existing permits would be eliminated, because they do not have that one space currently? And second, because dwelling units in Newport Beach vary drastically in size from one bedroom to many, did, did the committee consider any other formula for how many parking places might be needed for a short-term lodging rather than just per unit? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Juerges, do you want to respond to the parking formula?
You know, we, we don't have a, a large data set. We do, we are aware there are few properties that do not have parking. Majority do. Again, we're not trying to be overly restrictive. Again, it could be on a driveway, it could be in a carport. So, you know, we, we want to work with the property owner and find that location where they actually can use it as a parking space. But we don't have true hard data yet.
But we are saying emphatically, if there's no parking space, there's no permit.
If we can't get a car on site, even a little mini, then we cannot issue the permit.
Right. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Carmen Rosso. Regarding the language to be used, in the presentation, we talk about contacting the owner. We should be contacting the operator. We have Boardwide Realty, Balboa Newport Realty, Beachview Realty, Y-Sell Realty. They represent maybe 600, at least 600 units. So an important data is how many units are individual property owners versus these property management companies. Now, I have had a short-term lodging permit since 1992. I have used many of the local property management companies. Some have better than others. I have had, driven by my property, seeing an issue, contacting the property management company that I used to use years ago, didn't do anything. Since the contract is between the operator and the guest, I had no way to take action. I had called the police on my own properties. So when you do the, how it operates is really, besides the guest and the property owner, the operator should also be liable. How many of these calls are for a particular operator? Also, in previous presentations, we talked about having, that somebody had to be Also, in previous presentations, we talked about having that somebody had to be nearby the property, nearby the area, somebody living between two hours or whatever. For those that do not have local representation, is that, did that go away? One of the property owners may be in Texas, trying to manage in front Texas and having a keyless lock in their house where they don't have representation here. So what happened to that idea? That when, that any property, when a short-term lodging permit should have somebody representing the property within 20 minutes or 30 minutes from location? The other item I have is regarding the number of bedrooms. It can be misleading. I have walked through units where a bedroom is considered a hallway where you get to the other bedroom, where they can call it, or you can have very tiny bedrooms where barely you can fit a bed. So there should be also, and I understand that you cannot do it maybe in writing, but having some general parameters of how that is going to be taken into consideration. In other cases, you have huge bedrooms where you can easily accommodate four people. I know you have to have parameters, but there is some variance there that needs to be evaluated too when you issue short-term lodging permits. Thank you.
That's very good. The next speaker, please.
How are you? I'm Scott McFetters, and I live on Newport Island. And I've owned a house in Newport Heights, and I've owned a house on Galaxy in Dover Shores. And in the last couple of years, I bought a house down there. And one of the reasons I bought a house down there is one of the few places on the peninsula where you, where there wasn't a lot of short-term rentals. And you could go there on the Fourth of July, and it's pretty mellow on that island once you go over the bridge. So I think in the last year, it's gone from like three permitted places to probably, I think it's over 12 or 15 now on that small island. It was always kind of controlled by the Edwards family, and then since then, some of the houses have sold off and whatever else. But the big issue we have there is that, is the parking's number one, that's already a permitted place. So now you have other people coming on that may or may not have parking spots, period. There's some, like, on the end of Channel, we're having issues because they're on a fire lane and they can't park in their driveway. So they're either parked in the fire lane, or they're blocking a sidewalk every day that they run it out, or somebody else is there. And so you have the parking issues that go on every day where people can't get through. If a fire truck needs to go through, the garbage truck, it causes a big issue. And this is a specific area, the end of Channel on Newport Island. All over the island, though, you have limited parking because you have red zones on all over, all over the triangle that you can't park. So, the issue that I've seen since I've been down there is, we've got, it's kind of like when you move to, next to the fairgrounds, you have the noise. If you move under the flight path, you have the planes. But what, but now I'm seeing that that area transforming into an area where, you even see it on Lido a little bit, we're starting to creep onto Lido where they only had one when I rented a house on Lido before I bought the house on Newport Island. And now there's like four or five down at the area when you first cross the bridge. So it's one of those things where it's more of a permit issue because enforcement, what we're supposed to do is call the police every time somebody does something wrong. And it's going to happen, a lot more as more of these places come in, especially if they don't have the parking. The other thing we found is, was what she mentioned, was somebody will say it's a four-bedroom house, and, boy, if you look in the Zillow or whatever, it was a two-bedroom house four years ago, then it was a three-bedroom house last year, and now it's a four-bedroom house. And now they want, you know, 10 people in there, you know? And I don't know if it's permitted or not. But I think every area needs to be looked at because, like a place like Newport Island, you're going to ruin that neighborhood by letting these houses, by these short-terms come in because it is one of the only quiet places on the peninsula. And it's been that way. The city's creating the problem by letting more permits come in with lack of parking. And also, I should mention, too, like the house next door to me, it's a 2,100-square-foot lot, and it's a 1,900-square-foot house. So do you think that, we're talking about people having parties and all that, do you think in the backyard, on the water, that's not going to make a lot of noise when we have 20 people over there all day? Because they decided to put that in last year, then they put in a short-term permit on the other side, then there's another one on the other side, and then on the other side. So we're getting nailed with short-term permitting on our island now.
But you know, but those are single-family residents. We don't issue permits for single-family residents.
No, they're, they're--
Duplexes?
They can be dup, they can be duplexes. But they are single, the ones that are being issued are single-family right now. They might be zoned.
No, we can't, we don't do that.
Yes.
Unless we have, we have about 200--
Pardon me?
We have about 200 that are grandfathered, so he's probably--
Well, right, if they exist, but they're not new. I mean, they've been on the property for decades.
Correct.
So they might be operating illegally, so why don't you give the addresses to--
Monique, no, she has both of them. They're, and they both were just permitted in the last three months. The two next door to me, there's another--
Were those grandfathered permits?
The 3711 is grandfathered, and 3717 is the one that's coming up, or do I have those swapped? They are, the properties are permitted to rent.
So those are long, the history of that is, I think it was like in 1992 that we stopped issuing permits for, for single-family residents, is that right?
In 2004, we changed the R1.
Yeah. So there have been no new permits since 2004 for single-family residents, but those have been grandfathered, unfortunately.
So they're grandfathered even though they weren't active permits till this year?
That is correct. If they had a permit in 2004, then that property is grandfathered to engage.
But if they don't, just, it brings up an interesting question. What do we decide to do about single-family residents with a lapsed permit? Does it, is it lapsed if they haven't exercised it?
If it's an R1 property and it lapses and we close it in two years, they are still eligible to reopen. If it's just a regular property as well, then same thing, two years and it can be reopened.
That's the situation.
Yeah, so, okay, so then I get the permit issue? But now, now the issue is, how do you, if they're doing the same stuff every day, they're parking illegally, they're doing all that stuff, you can only call the police so many times, how do we fix it on the permitting side?
So, I think you used your time, but anyway, I'll continue to answer your question, so thank you. So from an enforcement standpoint, staff, I mean, you might want to address the answering service call and then the enforcement response time that Carmen mentioned.
So we did tighten up the ordinance in related to suspensions and revocations based on whether or not there's been violations tied to the residents. So if they get, you know, a certain number of violations, then they could get suspended or revoked.
We'll be keeping track of those now going forward.
Yes, so we put time limits as far as, you know, if you've gotten more than X number within a year, or then you can be suspended. If you get more than, you know, I think three, then you can be revoked. So that's something we're going to be tracking, so hopefully we'll tie that up on the enforcement side.
Okay, thank you.
And Madam Mayor, with regards to response--
Yes.
We do have, in our draft ordinance, it is within 25-mile limit. So we did have it, we just didn't propose it tonight, we didn't show it tonight.
That the contact person has--
Correct. Within 25 miles.
Very good. Very good. Next comment, please.
Hi, Julie Sambuco. First of all, I'm totally impressed by what a good job and how thorough this was. I think it's great. It's a lot of work. Do you know how much tax we'll lose if the non-coastal homes go away and you're not allowed to expand?
It's a process, and we'll ask staff.
How much, how much tax we'll lose if the 58 non-coastal go away and you're not allowed to expand? Because I'm assuming part of the reason why you want to expand is to make up for the revenue you're going to lose when the 58 non-coastal homes go away.
We didn't consider that. Didn't consider that? It was more just to kind of, a little bit of an offset. But just as Mr. Jurges says, it was a shift. It just was seeing a potential opportunity.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, let's come back up here. Ms. Brenner.
I had a question on those grandfather, those R1s that are grandfathered in. Is there an expiration date on those?
No, currently, they're grandfathered in perpetuity. Unless the structure is torn down, then they will lose that right.
But what we're talking about now is a grandfather period of 10 years.
That's correct.
But in that, when that was done, that was done in perpetuity?
Not for the R1s, correct.
Okay.
Mr. Avery.
I would just like to reiterate again, the necessity to take care of the people that are affected by this, when, in terms of what the gentleman was saying about parking, the changes in his neighborhood. It's all great, but I think we really have a responsibility. And the responsibility really is, as I've said, is to transfer it to the person that's getting the permit. And they need to feel the pain when their tenants are violating it. And I don't mean to be, but they need to have something to lose. And it can't be something that we kind of go, okay, and, okay, it has to happen. And then the word gets around, and they feel like, oh, my gosh, they get that call, they run down there in 20 minutes, and they take care of it, or they've got someone designated to do it. But they have to feel that risk because otherwise, people, residents are just going to have a tough time with this. So if it's actively managed, it's all great. And I think 90% of the units are actively managed, probably more.
Well, what's going to be different going forward is that we're keeping, there'll be data managing the performance of the operators of this property. Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I lived on Newport Island years ago, and it was an R2 property. I will say, though, by experiencing living on that island, what you have are houses that are so skinny that they're barely the width of their garage. So normally, you could always park, you know, in front of, in your house, so to speak. But on Newport Island, it's so unique that really the only places to park are in front of garage doors. So the rest of the parking is so minimal, you know? So when you rent a home out, you really only have whatever the garage holds, which is probably full of junk, and then you have this one place. And so I have a lot of sympathy for those on Newport Island that are confronted with this Airbnb problem. They really, uniquely, they're unique. Newport Island is not the skinniest little streets and the skinniest little houses, but they, it's a great place, but it's just really bad parking. I can't, if I had a choice, I would say no R, none there to help the homeowners, really, because I don't see any parking. I virtually don't know how anyone survives living there now with Airbnb when I lived there. I could barely find a place every night.
Well, if they don't have parking, then they don't get a permit. And then the single-family, the R1 are grandfathered in, so that's a limit on that. Mr. Avery, again?
It seems to me, someone says, okay, I want the permit, I've got this many bedrooms, and I've got this many parking spaces, is it impossible for a code enforcement person to just go, I'll meet you there, instead of an appointment? Maybe we add that to this fee? And you just say, okay, show me your parking places. And then, okay, let's take a look at those bedrooms, just to, you know?
And I think if we could, we could do that if we added another body, an FTE to that, but we can't do that with the current resources.
Right, I understand. But I think it's something maybe we should all think about--
Okay.
--for a reiteration of this, because I think that would go a long way to taking care of these issues.
Well, another thing that Carmen mentioned that is, you might want to look into this, that if the operator is different than the property owner, then--
That's a really good point, that, we could make that clear.
Yeah. Ms. Brenner.
That's what I was just about to say, but I do have a couple of summary comments. You know, Jeff had just said, we have a history in the coastal zone of doing these kind of vacation rentals, but I remember growing up here that the history on Balboa Island was you had nine-month rentals, and then you had these weekly rentals during the summer. But during the winter, you had the stability of a nine-month rental. So you didn't have this weekly rental going on in the coastal zone that much back then. And the other, I mean, I think it's really important that people recognize that we're, this is something that we are, a privilege we're giving them. It's not something that they should have the expectation of being able to have a rental in a residential neighborhood. Because this is changing our residential neighborhoods and not for the better. One of the thing about the party houses that we were just mentioning, generally, if you've got a neighbor that lives next door, they might have two or three parties during a year. And if you've got people renting there by the week, they generally are going to expect that they're probably going to have all their friends and neighbors come down and have a party, you know, at least once while they're there. So you end up with a place next door to you that's having a party generally every weekend. That's a big change for our residential neighborhoods, and it's way more than a normal homeowner. The other thing that, the effect that comes out of this is, you also end up with a lot of empty houses in your neighborhoods. I have two vacation rentals, one next door to me and one across the street, and they are empty most of the time. So you end up with neighborhoods that don't have the neighbors watching out for each other, that don't have the same neighborhood feel to them. So there's a definite, definite change there. And this does impact our RENA numbers and our ability to have available residential units in our city. So I don't know if 1,600 is the number that we need to go with, but it's something that impacts a lot of other areas other than just our TOT tax.
All right, that's a very good point. Any other comments up here? Could you flip back to the summary page? Let's just kind of go through that, if you would, please. Okay, so if we have concurrence with my colleagues, so, is there anything on numbers one through 10, except for, let's pull aside number eight, but one, okay, two, but we want to do some follow-up on terms of how we assess the size of the bedroom. We don't want them in the hallways or the closets. Interior rules, parking, exterior signage, cap the permits at 1,600, platform responsibility. Number nine, tougher enforcement regulations. Number 10, abate non-coastal zone permits, so allowing those to abate. All right, I agree on the comments that have been made about not extending this to mixed use. So I would propose everything, there are nine items excluding the mixed use. Do we have concurrence on that with all everyone up here? All right.
It's probably good to just go ahead and raise your hands, just so we can count the votes.
So it's yes on all except mixed use?
That's fine.
Okay, so everyone but Councilmember Herman?
Did you say yes?
I didn't vote yes.
Oh, you did not? Okay. All right, so we have one dissenter. Okay, well, thank you, staff. It's a continuing project and being, trying to be responsive to the community, our neighbors, and our businesses. Thank you. Good job. Appreciate it. All right, Madam Clerk.
Public, public comments are invited on agenda and non-agenda items.
Please come forward.
Hi there, I am forward.
You are here. Okay.
Larry Tucker. Tonight, the library lecture hall item is before you, really for the fourth time. It was in a study session in March. It was in the budget in June, and it was back to the council for the formation of a design committee in July. Tonight's item is just a furtherance of the things that have been before you three separate times. It doesn't have anything to do with $8 million. It doesn't have anything to do with Lido Plaza, or Lido Theater. It only has to do with awarding a design contract, only $197,000 of which may be spent until the matter comes back to the council. This is an item that, in my opinion, maybe it should have been on the consent calendar to begin with. Instead, it's the last item on the agenda. So I would request your consideration at tonight's council meeting to move that item forward on the agenda.
Could I just ask you a question? The reason it's on the current business, because there was this discussion about the role of public-private in working through this agreement, could you just comment on that and what our expectations should be going forward?
Well, if I were in your shoes, I'd want to have a explicit deal, a contract, by the time you make a decision whether you're going to move forward with the project or not. The design, the conceptual design just gets you to the point where you understand all the details about the project, including what the cost would be. In other words, where it's going to be cited, what it's going to look like, how's it going to affect the parking, and then the budget. So you're going to need to be satisfied with all those things, and you may come to the conclusion now, this really isn't that great of an idea. We think that you'll come to the conclusion, it is a great idea, but the other thing you're going to need to know is, where's the money coming from? And at that point, there should be an agreement that the council should want, but also the people that are going to be contributing to this lecture hall are going to want something, too. They're going to want to know, what's the city going to do specifically, just as the city is going to want to know, well, what's our specific responsibilities and what are the people that are raising the funds going to do? That should all come back to you when the whole package is together so you can see exactly what the proposed project is. So that wouldn't really change whether it would be on-- So that wouldn't really change whether it would be on the, you know, a consent calendar or not, but it would be something that's not currently in your resolution, which if I were you, I would add a sentence or two that just says that, you know, part of any deal is going to be, when it comes back, we also have to have an agreed-upon funding mechanism before the council decides to move forward.
Yeah, and we've always been, I think the whole council's been consistent on that principle, that this would be a joint public-private partnership, 50/50, so to memorialize that as we go forward. So we'll bring this up in the regular session this evening. Okay with that. Thank you, Mr. Tucker, appreciate it. Any other comments on agenda or non-agenda items? Please come forward. Seeing none? Okay. Mr. Harp?
The City Council will adjourn to closed session to discuss item 4A, including meeting with the city manager and the community development director to provide direction to them as to price and terms of payment in regards to properties located at 4,200 Campus Drive in Newport Beach, which is leased by Avis Rent-A-Car Systems LLC and owned by DEKKK Associates. And the council will also discuss the properties at 3175 Airway Avenue and 1885 Anaheim Avenue, which are located in the city of Costa Mesa and owned or leased by the city of Costa Mesa.
Okay, we are recessed until 7:00 PM. Thank you. Okay, good evening. I'm delighted to see so many people interested in matters on our agenda this evening, so we'll have a good discussion. So we are calling the meeting to order for the regular meeting of the Newport Beach City Council, November 19th, 2019. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Muldoon, he is on his way.
He's on his way from, in traffic in Los Angeles. All right, Mr. Harp, closed session report.
Thank you, Mayor Dixon. There is no closed session report this evening.
All right, tonight, we have an invocation by Pastor David Main, is that Main, from Calvary Chapel of Costa Mesa, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Brenner. Thank you.
All right, thank you. It's an honor to be with you again. Lord, we ask tonight your special blessing that, once again, upon our mayor, the entire city council present here, and Lord, our city attorney, city manager, city clerk, entire staff, the working staff, Lord, we ask your blessing upon them and all the people, Lord, that make up our city. We do pray for our police department, fire department, the water department, all the municipality, Lord, that keep us running day to day and week to week. We pray for providence and protection over all that we do. And, Lord, we just look to the matters that are before us tonight that will be of conversation and the decisions that will be made continue to guide and to lead and direct in all that we seek to do. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you for that lovely invocation, and I would just like to ask everyone to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance in memory and in honor of the recent shooting victims that we've had in the state of California and in the nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you, Pastor Main, appreciate it. Madam Clerk.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm just going to announce a couple announcements for everyone here in the chambers. You probably realize that the community room is open, so we have extra seating in the community room and audio is in the community room as well as the screen, this image shows in there as well. Two agenda procedural items, just to announce for efficiency this evening. The current business item on the public, excuse me, the library lecture hall is going to be central library lecture hall building design, which is item number 24 under current business. We'll move that up on the agenda to follow the consent calendar items. It will precede the public hearing items. And then another efficiency move tonight, it may be forever, we'll see how it works tonight, the council member reports on city committee activity will be moved to the very end of tonight's meeting before adjournment, but we will, each council member will announce upcoming events or meetings for community information. So just those two items will affect tonight's order on the agenda. So we'll go right into the city council announcements and new items that council members would like to be placed and introduced on future agendas and the reports on council member activities, as I just said, will be moved to the end of the meeting. Mr. Avery?
I have none.
Mr. Duffield. Ms. Brenner.
I have an announcement about the Newport Mesa Irvine Interfaith Council has their Hearts and Hands 2019 event on Saturday, November 23rd, from 9:00 to 3:00 at the Church of Jesus Christ of the Latter Day Saints, I believe, at 801 Dover Drive. There are over 20 different hands-on service projects that are being assembled and taken care of while they're there that day, and it's an opportunity for people to come and just help in 21 different ways. There's also a Red Cross blood drive, there's free flu shots, and CPR certification. So they are looking for new and slightly-used prescription glasses, shoes of all sizes in good condition for heavy youth, stuffed animals, new or very clean, children's books, and homemade baked goods for food projects.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Hurdman?
I have none.
Mayor Potem?
Tomorrow night at the Newport Coast Community Center, we're going to be having the listen and learn phase of the general plan update. There are signs in the back talking about the general plan update. The purpose of having it in Newport Coast Community Center tomorrow night is, this is a continuing action to make sure that we have one of these in every district in the city. So this is District 7, again, tomorrow night, Newport Coast Community Center. What time is it? Is it six, it's 6:00? 6:00? Thank you.
Mr. Duffield, you had an announcement?
Yes, you confused me with your changing everything, so I apologize. I wanted to make everyone aware that on Wednesday, December 4th, at 6:00 PM at the Newport Beach Public Library in the Friends Room, there will be a discussion on, an information on the Lower Newport Confined Aquatic Disposal, CAD, facility construction project, dredging. It's a lot easier word, but in our dredging efforts in our harbor, we have a unique problem, so we need to discuss it with the public and we will be doing that on Wednesday, December 4th, at 6:00 PM, right there. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have two comments. There's a slide coming up for the Yellow Ribbon Campaigns, was that the same thing Ms. Brenner just said? Something different?
I think that's different.
Is that what you did?
No, mine's Hearts and Hands.
This is Yellow Ribbon Campaign, Camp Operation Christmas to help bring holiday cheer to Orange County's military and their families. The city will be accepting new and unwrapped toys for children of our troops, new or used DVDs for the troops, and gift cards and cash donations for the families. Through the Yellow Ribbon Campaign, Operation Christmas, let's show them how much Newport Beach appreciates their service. It's a program organized by the Yellow Ribbon America that supports more than 300,000 members of the armed services and their families. And if you'd like to participate, there'll be a box at the city clerk's office up on the third, second floor, Oasis Senior Center, Central Library, all of our fire stations, the police department, Newport Coast Community Center, and Marina Park, starting now until noon on December 23rd. So bring your, bring your toys and gifts, new and unwrapped toys. Okay, I just want to make a little comment about, more than a little, comments about a future agenda item that I'll be asking staff to respond back to the council. So let me talk to you all and update our community on a very important matter that's in the papers recently and it relates to something that will have a significant impact, large and lasting impact on our city. And you may have read in the news that the state is mandating that all cities plan and zone for a large amount of new housing through the housing element update process, which is included in the city's general plan. This mandate is called the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or otherwise known as RENA, R-H-N-A. So you'll hear RENA a lot. The city of Newport Beach has been told it is mandated to plan and zone for 4,832 new housing units, nearly 5,000 new housing units. These are new housing units beyond our current housing stock. This land use action has been imposed by the state on our city and is probably the most significant state mandate imposed on our city planning history. And one way to think about this mandate is the equivalent of 50 museum house towers. The museum house, as you all know, was a controversial development matter a couple of years ago. 50 of those towers now being mandated are the equivalent number of housing units being mandated in our city. We are not alone. All cities, most all cities in Orange County are facing the same enormous housing numbers, different numbers depending on their population size and size of their city. But 4,832 new units will certainly impact our city and it will impact our quality of life. And these new housing units accelerates four decades' worth of development into the next 10 years. So we have big questions to answer. Where in the city will we zone for these housing units? How will it affect our traffic? Incidentally, our traffic counts in many parts of town already exceed the projections that were predicted to be reached by 2030, and we're already there in 2019, 20. What does this mean in terms of the level of service and the service requirements for our fire and police? What about our utilities? Do we have the water, sewer, and electricity systems, electrical electricity systems to support these units? How are our schools going to be impacted? So obviously, there's a lot of questions that we, as your elected representatives and all of us together as the city, will need to be working together to solve this challenge. The State Housing and Community Development Department is now reviewing the methodology that allocated 4,800 units to our city, and this was done through the Southern California Association of Governments, also known as SCAG. And the State Housing Department has 60 days to review and comment on these recommendations. And then in late February 2020, in a few months, all cities will have an opportunity to appeal the methodology if we decide to do so. But please understand, we do not object to our city's responsibility to provide housing that is affordable and market-priced. Indeed, California has a statewide housing shortage and we will follow the law. As a 113-year-old city, Newport Beach is nearly built out and our roads and highways are congested, especially during busy summer months. It will be a challenge to meet the requirements of this mandate, but we will follow the law. We expect the final housing numbers to be adopted by SCAG by next October 2020. So now, more than ever, we need all of you, our residents, to get involved. We need your voices to be heard on where to zone the housing units in the city. Fortunately, as many of you know, and Mayor Potem just announced tomorrow night's meeting, we have general plan workshops scheduled where you can participate in the zoning of our city and actually participate in exercises to say, put the houses, the 4,800 housing units in different parts of the city. And you can find the schedule to attend the workshops, I think there are handouts there in the lobby, or go to our website, which is newporttogether.com. And what we're asking, what I'm asking tonight is asking that staff come back to the council with proposed next steps on how we will proceed to challenge this mandate if we decide we want to challenge. This could be an A1 item or staff can bring it back under the city manager's discretion. I believe we, as a city, need to do the following. We must appeal these housing numbers. We must ensure the proposed housing number does not increase anymore. It's already, we thought it, we predicted, staff projected it was going to be about 2,000. Now it's up to 4,000. And we need to explore all avenues to extend our deadline, which is October 2021, to submit our housing element on top of the revisions that we're making to update our general plan. So it's going to be a busy time for staff, for sure. And we need to consider that we lobby the State Housing and Community Development Department, the governor's office, and our local representatives. But most importantly, I'm asking staff, and if my colleagues agree, we need an action plan. And above all, we, as residents of this city, must work together to ensure and protect our quality of life. So Ms. Grace Leung, I wish you'd comment on how you suggest we might go forward.
Oh, yes, absolutely. This item is of highest priority on the city staff side as well, as we have to figure out how to incorporate, you know, these units into our housing element. And October 2021 is really, if you think about it, right around the corner, if you think about the long lead process to it. So we are working very aggressively right now to figure out how to determine what steps to take and what kind of process input we can provide to the state and to SCAG on this. So we do plan on bringing an item back in January to talk further with council about the next action steps to take and where we should be going.
And that's very good, and I just want to thank staff for their hard work, that they've been working really to, very diligently, working with SCAG and its counterpart in Orange County called OCOG to represent our city's point of view on how many housing units we can comfortably afford to build in the city, and all of our efforts were ignored. I do want to thank and appreciate, extend my appreciation to our general plan update committee chaired by, I don't know if, former council member Nancy Gardner is in the audience. She's leading this effort of the community engagement, the listen and learn, and it's a very critical component of how we put together our general plan. So I'm delighted that all of you residents are here this evening because you're all hearing this important message that we all have a challenge to work on together. Okay, do we have any public comments on these announcements or any oral reports that the public may wish to make? Please come forward. Seeing none? We'll proceed on to the work of the meeting. Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 20. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Do we have any council members, do we have any items to pull from the consent calendar? Mr. Avery?
I have none.
Mr. Duffield. Ms. Brenner?
On item number three, the second reading of the ordinance modifying the campaign contribution ordinance and establishing lobbyist registration requirements, I would propose that we conduct the second reading and adopt the campaign contribution ordinance, but that we not adopt the lobbyist registration requirement ordinance this evening. I think we should bring the lobbyist ordinance back for the first reading at the second meeting in January to give us the opportunity to hold another public forum in early January and solicit additional public input. If everyone is agreement, I think that this can just move forward on the consent calendar without pulling the item.
Okay, all right. Mr. Hurdman?
I'll second, if she just moved, I'll second the motion. So she's just, she's proposing a modification.
It's not a motion, yeah.
I'll make the motion.
All right, yeah.
Do you have anything to pull?
No, I don't.
I don't either.
Mayor Potem, nor do I.
Okay, so we'll move approval of the consent calendar with item number one showing an updated set of minutes that was provided in the front and also in our packets. Item number three amended as stated by Councilmember Brenner.
So no items have been pulled?
Correct.
Okay, do we have a motion?
That was my motion.
I'll second.
And any comments on the consent calendar? So which means all items on the consent.
Mayor Dixon, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. For those of us who see value in California's open meeting law, the Brown Act, which by the way is the little remembered Ralph Brown, no relation that I know of to any Governor Brown. For... remembered Ralph Brown, no relation that I know of to any Governor Brown, for those who see value in that act, I believe that item five on your consent calendar, the abrupt restructuring of the city's homeless task force, comes as a great disappointment. I wish that you would see the Brown Act not as an enemy that needs to be evaded, but as a recipe for better decision-making. I hope that you will look at and read the written comment that I provided, which I attempted to explain in detail, how following the Brown Act, you could do everything, this restructuring, which is eliminating the citizen members from the task force, you could do everything that it is supposed to accomplish following the Brown Act and come out with a better result. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Please come forward.
Mike Glenn, resident of Balboa Peninsula. I just wanted to clarify that the political reform that we are talking about excluding the registration lobbying, that is to give council people more time to correct errors in their fundraising. Is that accurate?
I don't really understand the question. Tonight, we're going to be passing the reform on the campaign financing.
And there are two parts to that. One is to give council people more time to correct any errors on their reporting.
Oh.
And the other aspect was lobbying registration. If we're pulling the lobbying registration, and the only thing that we're talking about tonight is allowing council people to more time than is currently legally allowed to correct any errors on their campaign finance reporting, is that an accurate summarization?
No.
No. Do you want to respond to that, Mayor?
No, no, it's his public comment.
All right, okay.
That was my question. Thank you.
Well, we'll clarify that. All right, Mr. City Attorney, would you like to comment on that?
So what we'll be moving forward tonight is the campaign contribution ordinance. And one of the provisions in it, basically, if there's an inadvertent error, it gives a small opportunity for time for people to correct that error before they would be referred over to the district attorney for prosecution.
Okay.
Aaron, could you, it's not just council people, it's candidates.
Yeah, and that's true. It's all candidates.
Okay. Next speaker, please.
My name is Alan Beek. Is it appropriate to discuss the content of the Part B addressing the council electoral campaigns?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I want to say that I think what has been proposed is quite inadequate. But as you know, it takes a lot of money to run for the council to make a credible campaign, and you go around asking other people to supply that money often, and they thereby obtain an undue influence over what the council does, which is certainly undesirable. And I would like to suggest that the only way to address that problem properly is for the city itself to provide campaign finances for the candidates, enough so they can run a credible campaign without having to ask anybody else for money. Yes, that would take quite a bit of money, but it's much less than the money that can be misappropriated if we have bad people or people who make prejudiced decisions on the council. So I recommend that some such provisions be incorporated into this ordinance.
Thank you. Next public comment on the consent calendar. Any other public comments? Seeing none. We'll bring it back up here. Anyone want to make a comment?
Just two real quickly. One of them is, a lot of you know how hard the city council's been working on, working through issues dealing with our homeless population. The recommendation, I don't quite recall what the adjective was, but it was not positive toward the way that we're working toward restructuring the committee. But just so everyone understands, what we're doing is we have three council members on the homeless task force right now. At our last meeting, it was unanimously recommended that we form instead an ad hoc committee that would have just the three council members and then rely on a great breadth of expertise out in our community. And so, and then we've also, although legally, we're not allowed to require this as part of an ad hoc committee, the council members have agreed that we'll continue to hold public meetings on this so that we can continue to discuss this out in the public. So just so everyone understands, that's the issue. And then just one other note, even in cities where they have taxpayer money being used to help fund campaigns, which I would not recommend, that doesn't outlaw political action committees that are allowed to fundraise an enormous amount of money at a clip. Right now, candidates in Newport Beach are prohibited from raising more than $1,200 from a person. Political action committees have no such restriction, and so you see donations in the buying a new car level at some of these. So I just wanted to point out, this gets complicated, but that's, we're trying to clean up a specific issue dealing with inadvertent over contributions.
Seeing no further comments, let's vote.
And prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2019-19, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending Chapter 1.25 of Title I of the Newport Beach Municipal Code pertaining to municipal campaign contribution and expenditure limits. The motion carries 6-0.
Very good. Before we go to public comments on non-agenda items, let me make one more procedural comment for public comments this evening on the business portions of the meetings. We'll allow three minutes for the public comments on non-agenda items that we'll be doing in the next moment. But for the items under current business and public hearing, because of the size of our audience participation this evening, anticipating there are a great deal of public comments, we'll limit the speaking to two minutes. So if you're planning to speak, you might want to begin to, your thought process on condensing that down to two minutes. All right, are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Please come forward.
Ladies and gentlemen of Newport Beach City Council, last time I stood here before you was to seek an apology after a judge ruled that one of you had fabricated accusations from me from the dais at which you sit. The argument in court, which the city of Newport Beach spent over $18,000 to defend, was by the city of Newport Beach, they claimed was a political statement, not a factual one. That was the defense of the city. The statement that I was supposedly owed the city of Newport Beach a bunch of money, a few hundred bucks, as it turned out, and in fact, which the council argued in its entirety in court, was that this again was not truthful, but entirely political. It was done at a time when I was speaking out against the trolley, something I had repeatedly said would welcome homeless people as it provided free air conditioning rides during the summertime. The plan to debunk me worked, the trolley passed, and our homeless population blossomed. In the meantime, I offered at every step of the way to drop my suit of defamation for nothing more than a simple apology, which was refused at every step of the way. The last time I came here was to seek the apology after the judge ruled that the statement was not factually correct, nor could it have ever been, given the circumstances. This sent a chilling effect not just to me, but as the community as a whole. Since then, I have not returned in fear of retribution from council people of no problem spending taxpayer dollars to insult, defame, and lie about the residents from the dais. This willful and reckless intimidation of constituents is not how a republic of any sort or any representative-like democracy works. It is a policy of tyrants. From this day forward, I will once again pledge to remain actively engaged in our community regardless of the intimidation being put forth by council in both words and, which I release, sorry, getting a little nervous here. Anyway, there are times where we're going to disagree. We're going to disagree respectfully. There's going to be times that we agree. But taking the extra step to disrespect citizens and our tax dollars by spending them on a warpath to defame those in our own community is reprehensible and unbecoming of somebody in a city council seat. It is a sad state of affairs, indeed. I look forward to the rest of the evening and other evenings to come. Now, I know that the city attorney is going to claim that the judge did in fact dismiss my defamation suit. That was dismissed based on the fact that lawmakers said that other lawmakers could defame people without consequence. The judge, however, did say that those things that were said were untruthful. But that is behind us now, and I look forward to with a good working relationship with all of you to come. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, City Council. Honorable Mayor, my name is Ryan Farsie. I'm here to talk about capital improvements and budgets and what we're doing in this city, as well as the county and the state and the United States of America. So we have a continuous problem with the budget. Our new budget is coming out by the president. It's like $3 billion or, I'm sorry, $3 trillion over budget. So I'm glad you guys are taking steps to try to create more revenue coming up in the next few years with this proposed water plan. But the CPI for 2018 was 1.9%, and also 2017 and 2016 was 2.1% respectively. So when you guys are going over budget on some of this stuff for proposed increases, you're basically trying to create more revenue. So my concern is this. I came over here last year to speak about Grant Howland Park, where my daughter practices for her club soccer team. And also, I just complained about the hygiene in the bathrooms. Those bathrooms didn't have any paper towels or air dryers or nothing, so I complained about it. And luckily, it said somewhere, I read it in the paper, that we're going to spend $2 million to upgrade those bathrooms. So essentially, those bathrooms went into an upgrade over the last few months. We had a porta potty, Mayor Pro Tem O'Neill, that was outside the bathrooms, and it was all roped off, and we didn't get to use the bathroom. But you know what we had outside? We had paper towels. We had a little water thing that we pressed and washed our hands. Today, I happened to go to use the restroom, and they opened it up, and I'm seeing maybe they redid the tile or something in there. But it still doesn't have any air dryer or paper towels or any of that stuff. So I'm trying to understand, where did our $2.1 million to upgrade those bathrooms go? So that's my question to you guys, is how are we spending this money? Because it's very important that we get our money's worth as a citizen of the city and the state and this country. We're constantly going over budget and spending a lot more money, but we're not taking precautions on how we're spending it. So who's the authority to look over this stuff? It's $2.1 million to redo bathrooms. There's still soap dispenser, and the bathrooms looked okay and clean, but I didn't see where that $2 million went into the bathroom. So that's my comment for budgeting. We're spending the money, but I don't see where it's going. So hopefully, we take better caution in spending our funds. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. Any other comments on non-agenda items? Seeing none. All right, we will now move to, we were moving forward, as I announced earlier, the current business item, number 24, the Central Library Lecture Hall Building Design Approval of Professional Services Agreement. And do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do. Good evening, Mayor Dixon, council members. My name is Jim Houlihan, the Deputy Public Works Director and City Engineer. And as you mentioned, the item before you is the Central Library Lecture Hall. With me tonight is Peter Taucher, Senior Civil Engineer with the Public Works Department and Project Manager on the project. Peter will walk through the process that the Library Lecture Hall Design Committee went through to come up with their recommendation on the selection of the designer, as well as other recommendations by staff of other items that are related to the Library Lecture Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Dixon and council members. I'd also like to acknowledge the Library Lecture Hall Design Committee members for providing a recommendation. Following this presentation, the Chair of the Committee, Jill Johnson Tucker, is present for questions regarding the selection process. As you can see in the map here, this is a map of Avocato or the lecture hall. The stars denotes where the lecture hall is scheduled to be. It's southwest of the Central Library along Avocato Avenue. The Library Lecture Hall Design Committee was formed by council action on July 9. The Lecture Hall Committee was charged with selecting a design team and review and approval of the project design concepts. The mayor selected five people that were approved by council. Those members were Jill Johnson Tucker, she's the Chair of the Committee, Janet Ray, she's the Vice Chair, Mayor Diane Dixon, a committee member, Matthew Witty, committee member, and Karen Clark, committee member. The Library Lecture Hall Design Committee conducted four public meetings to select the overall best consultant team. Four meetings were in July, August, September, and October. And all meetings were agendized, and the public could attend all the meetings for Brown Act. The Library Lecture Hall Design Selection Process, we went out for RFP, Request for Proposal, to nine architect firms. Of those firms, seven provided a proposal to the city for review. The review was done by the Library Lecture Hall Design Committee in those meetings. The first meeting went over procedure. Second meeting went over going, how we're going to select the seven, we're going to pick the firms. And after the second meeting, we went down to four firms, and we were selection of interviews. And then at the four firms, we picked the two top firms, and they were asked supplementary questions. And at the fourth meeting, the final meeting that we've had so far, on October 7, 2019, Robert Coffey, Architect and Associate, was selected the best overall design consultant unanimously by all committee members. Right here, we have a tentative schedule for what we're looking at for this process of the project. Right now, if this process moves forward, we're looking at completing the design concept phase in spring 2020, and then we'll go back to council with our concepts and project funding and budget costs for this project to move forward for the full design phase. If we move forward with this process after the council action in the summer of 2020, we will move on with the design permitting, and we'll hopefully have that done by spring 2021, and award the contract in the summer of, spring, summer of 2021, and begin to construction in summer 2021, and complete the project about a year later. Overall project cost, that was discussed at the March 12 meeting this year, was between $7 and $8 million. So we have a project cost right now of about $8 million, as we're looking at. Staff recommendations that are presented in the staff report are to determine this actua sequo exempt, approve a second amendment to the special land use restrictions between the City of Newport Beach and Irvine Company, and then approve the professional services agreement with the City of Newport Beach and the Robert Coffey Architects and Associates, and then also approve a budget amendment for $110,000.
Okay, let me ask my colleagues. Any questions of staff on their report? Any comments? Seeing none? All right. Why don't I take a show of hands in terms of how many people want to speak on this item? What do the green signs say?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I guess we'll see how, so we're not repetitive, so obviously, listen to your fellow residents, and so we're not repeating the same thing. One other comment. Did we, do we have a sense of the council of where we want to go, just to kind of be more efficient in the process tonight?
Boom. So at the end of our study session, Larry Tucker's been involved in this, came to the study session and made a suggestion that I think is something that our group ought to take a look at, which is, right now, the way it's phased is, on the design side at least, and since all of you have picked up your packets, I'll just cite the page real quick. It's 24-3, and then at the top of 24-4, there are three phases. There's the research, programming, planning, and concept design. The second is design and planning approvals, and the third is the construction document and bidding. By far, the most expensive portion of this, at over $400,000, is the construction document and bidding phase. We would have to, as a council, approve the concept design at the end of the process anyway. That's the discussion. That's the discussion at the top of page four. So, it makes a lot of sense, I'm listening to Larry, that if approved by this body, that at the conclusion of Phase 1, when it's coming back to us, we really need to dual-track a discussion on what would essentially be an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, for two reasons. One, for the protection of the city, that we're not expending funds in terms of, you know, without knowing that there's the private side as well. And then, on the private side, of course, protecting folks who are putting up pledges or donations to know that the city's committed as well in writing. And so, it strikes me that if we're going to approve this tonight, we ought to just make sure that we're conditioning that approval of Phase 2 and 3 on concurrently having an MOU in place. And if that were to happen, my suggestion would be at the first meeting in January, we create an ad hoc committee of council members to handle that negotiation.
Yes, and after we have the public comments, I'll be making a motion to that effect that we amend the recommendation this evening to include the preparation of an MOU as part of the agreement when we complete Phase 1.
Okay. Then I probably, I mean, it probably, do you want to just draw a vote on that?
We could, how do the colleagues feel about just indicating a straw vote of where we are in terms of endorsing the staff's recommendation, supporting the staff's recommendation, with the additional motion to require, by the completion of this Phase 1, there will be an opportunity, there will be an agreement between the city and the Library Foundation in terms of the fundraising commitment of a 50-50 joint partnership. If you're in agreement with that direction, please raise your hand.
With council members Muldoon and Duffield abstaining, objecting.
All right. So, on the basis of seeing the sense of where the council is, you can certainly calibrate your comments accordingly and speak to these matters. So, why don't we open it up for public comment? Please come forward and form a line down the middle aisle, if you would, please. Ms. Jill Johnson Tucker, would you like to open up the, be the first to speak, please? I'm sorry, what?
If I could, I'd like to be the last to speak.
The last to speak, okay.
And address any opposition that arises, if I may.
Sure. All right.
I would like to be the last to speak.
Well, you can duke it out there.
I have a Mr. McCaffrey wanted questions addressed, so I'd like to.
Okay. So, you'll be the second to last, and then, last, and then, okay, well, maybe go back and forth. All right, next speaker, first speaker, please.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Dixon, City Council Members. My name is Barbara Gladman, and I'm a freshman member of the Board of Library Trustees, but not new to the library scene. I have more than 25 years of involvement with the library, having been part of the partnership of city and citizens that got the library built. I've been here since the beginning, and I'm still here, passionate as ever, about continuing and enhancing the programming possibilities at the library and the draw it has on the community. Once again, a need has been identified, a new library lecture hall. The proposed building, however, is more than just a library lecture hall. It's about the way of life here in our city. The library has become our community center, our gathering place, our place of learning, greeting friends, and making new ones. This is so important, especially in an age where technology substitutes as engagement. We are asking you to work together with us in supporting a new, larger, updated space through a public-private partnership. The building will be owned 100% by the city for the benefit of its citizens, who will partner in funding it. This is how the library was built, and those results have exceeded expectations for 25 years and counting. Last year, more than 72,000 people attended over 200 events, Library Live, The Witty Series, Medicine in Our Backyard, and many other informative and entertaining programs put on by the library, and funded 100% by the Newport Beach Public Library Foundation and Friends of the Library. These two support groups raised and gave more than $400,000 for programming last year to educate and enrich the lives of our residents. 85% of that programming was free. What does that mean? Is it over?
You've had your two minutes. Can you wrap it up, please?
Okay. In addition, they gave another $300,000 to the library for books, computers, and other needs. This is a win-win for all of us. We work together, and we benefit together. I hope we can count on your support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Go like that, wave your hands, no clapping, just wave your hands, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Starr. 25 years ago, my husband, John, and I took the responsibility to raise the money to build the Newport Beach Public Library. We had 5,000 donations, and I wrote every thank you letter. We had one Read-a-Thon for children, and some children gave $2.50, but they got a thank you letter. Our policy was, it was public support by private donations. It was going to be a public building, but it was going to be built through private donations and city funds. If you go to the library today, it's absolutely full. Every seat is occupied. We have college students there, we have preschool children there, we have their parents there, we have the men's club every morning that gets sent from home, so that the housewife can do her work. We have Doris Kearns Goodwin coming in a few months. The ticket's sold out in three hours. That full house will be there to hear her. We need a better and a bigger concert hall to have these lectures. The other community groups that have already spoken to me that are interested in using it is the Orange County Women's Chorus and the Pacific Symphony. So, please support this project. We need it, and we will be very appreciative of having a lecture hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. No clapping, just wave your sign.
Good evening. My name is Lizanne Witty. I also worked with Barbara and Elizabeth 25 years ago, and helped organize the grand opening of the Newport Beach Public Library, and have been deeply involved in one capacity or another ever since. Now, why is that? It's because I believe that a public library is one of the most important democratic institutions of any city. What other place serves literally everyone in all walks of life, from children to our elderly population? We also serve folks of all income levels. It's a busy, purposeful place, and I respect everyone who uses this building to study, write, work, or just read. But the 21st century library is more than that. It's a cultural community center. Our library is interactive, it's social, it's a place to listen and participate in discussions. At our program's audiences, attend to engage with others. And aren't we all proud of this library and what everybody involved here has accomplished over the years? Isn't that something Newport Beach wants to nurture and wants to help flourish? The Newport Beach Public Library has become the place, the only place, to hear the best and the brightest, right here on Avocado, the center of Newport Beach. This is where it belongs, here, where the Library Foundation and the library staff are headquartered, here, with the big parking garage and access to public transportation. In 1995, I asked Library Director Ladonna Keenitz if I could invite an author to town to speak in the Friends Room. Maybe people would come. Let's try. That author was Carolyn C., and that evening started the ball rolling. We have come to learn that writers love libraries. This is their home away from home, and this is where they wrote their books or found refuge as students. We don't stop to acknowledge this marvelous reality. And as Barbara Gladman stated, over 72,000 people attended more than 200 programs in the Friends Room this past year. The public is hungry for more, and continually suggests speakers and topics. They want more lectures, culture, panel discussions, documentary films, et cetera. What a history. The Library Foundation's partnership with the city has been a huge success. Let's look to the future. The Library Lecture Hall is long overdue. It will be booked solid, not just with library events, but will be used by the Film Festival, the Arts Commission, and hosted by the city itself. And I look forward to working together with all of you to make this a reality.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please line up, as I'd asked earlier, line up in the center aisle, so we can get through each of the speakers quickly. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon and City Council. My name is Karen Clark. I live in Corona Del Mar. And I was a library trustee for 10 years, and I am now on the foundation. I'm the Vice Chair. So, I've had about 20 years now being really integrally involved with the library. I wanted to talk a little bit about costs and finances, because that seems to be an issue related to this hall. First of all, I think that you are aware that the foundation and the Friends of the Library provides all the programming at the library at no cost to city taxpayers. And that will be true, remain true, when the new lecture hall is built, which I hope is built. And what does that mean, no cost to the taxpayers? First of all, it means that the foundation's three full-time employees are paid by the foundation, not the city. That means all this work is done, and there are no city salaries involved, no city pensions involved. It is all paid by the donations to the foundation, by citizens of Newport and other communities. And plus, there are a huge number of volunteers that put in literally hundreds of hours to make sure that these programs are carried out and are good quality. You may be aware that the cost of these programs is pretty substantial. I mean, the quality of the speakers that we get, people like Doris Kearns Goodwin, actor Anna Deavere Smith, authors Anna Quindlin, Billy Collins, and Joyce Carol Oates, these people don't come free. Last year, the Library Foundation spent about $380,000 on its 60-plus events. And this doesn't count the programs put on by the library itself or the Friends of the Library. There was no taxpayer money involved. This all came from private funding. In conclusion, I think this is, this lecture hall is a win-win-win. The citizens of Newport Beach win, the library patrons win, and the city council wins for showing the wisdom to support this new lecture hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I would just like to apologize in advance. I don't have anything prepared, but I'm Liam Ganyan, I'm a senior at Corona Del Mar, and I've been using the library since I moved here when I was four. I remember doing the book club every summer through elementary school, and then in middle school, when I started having to, you know, study for tests and prepare for them, that was the place I wanted to go. Instead of having like, a desk or office space in my house, I felt most comfortable working there and being able to use the resources of the library. And I think that this would add to that. And I've continued my habit of going to the library a few times a week through high school. And now that high school's wrapping up, and my little sister just started at Corona Del Mar, she's a seventh grader, I'd like to see her have the same available resources, if not even more, than I had. And this is a great chance, a great chance to do that. You know, the library's somewhere you can go just to have some quiet time to study, you can go with your friends to study in a group. Or I had my math tutors there for the past three years, and we met at the library and had our sessions there. It's a really, it's a really useful place, and the youth of the community, the students of the community that have been born or raised through the public education system here, have a great use for it, daily or weekly use for it, and I want to see that continue or, again, expand. So, yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'd like to start by apologizing. This is to everybody behind me, because I'm about to say some unpopular things. Guys, we have a city income of about $250 million bucks a year. We are including our unfunded pension liability in debt over $2 billion. Now, to put that in perspective, from debt-to-income ratio, that's like somebody that's earning $25,000 a year, being in debt $200,000, when they're spending all, or sometimes more, sometimes less, of their entire salary. We're short on cash, guys. We haven't, we've got debt that is unfunded. And it's not a little bit, this is a lot. So, I'd just like you guys to take this into consideration when you're voting to spend a lot more money. I appreciate it. And again, audience, apologize to you guys.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Toby Larson. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Library Foundation, and I'm here to support the library as a draw for all of our events. I know that several other venues have been suggested, Oasis Center, and Lido Theater, and places off-site, but all of our events are intended to draw people to the library, not from the library. So, the point being that the synergy that we've developed with the city and with the people who come to the library is attracted by people who would be attracted to a brand-new site here, an expanded lecture hall. So, in brief, I'm simply asking you to support our concept of a new lecture hall on the campus of the Central Library itself. It makes sense, it is the only practical thing for the city to approve, and I hope you will approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Please come forward also. Ma'am, you could come right up to the lectern here for the next speaker. Thank you.
Mayor Dixon, members of the council, I'm Paul Watkins. I'm Vice Chair of the Board of Library Trustees, and I'm in support of the lecture hall. Both Barbara and Karen mentioned Doris Kearns Goodwin. In addition, John Meacham, David Gergen, Tom Brokaw, Susan Estridge, the late Andy Rooney, George Plimpton, these are some of the folks who are Pulitzer Prize winners, Emmy winners, Oscar winners, Tony Award winners, Penn Faulkner Award winners, and Guggenheim Fellowship recipients who have spoken to us over the past 23 years for the Witty Lecture Series. They join the over 200 presenters annually who draw 72,000 guests at our library programming. Could we ask most or all of these folks to present at Harbor High School, at the Oasis Senior Center, or at the Lido Movie Theater? The answer is theoretically yes, assuming we could overcome massive scheduling conflicts and logistical challenges. But those of us who love the library are asking you to support a home for the programming, a home that is at the Central Library, a home that completes the library campus, a home that is nearby the stacks, nearby the books, nearby the now-replaced Dewey Decimal System card catalogs that I used as a kid. A home where we can congregate with fellow book lovers, lecture lovers, entertainment lovers, in a library setting, both before and after the presentation of a scholarly, creative presentation that is engaging, inspiring, and provocative. The facility will not be a glitzy, seagull-shroomed center. It will be attractive, it will be functional, it will be efficient, and we will not lose one parking spot. Thank you, and fight on.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, thank you.
Sir, you may come up to this next lectern. All right.
I'm Karen Everett, and I, in that list over the 25 years, one of my favorites was Sandy McCall Smith in his kilt, his Scottish kilt. Master Gessen, too, was tremendous. I, too, support the lecture hall, and I precede some of the people here who talk about 25 years. I served two terms on our library board, 1983 to '91, and in those years, were truly an exercise in how to participate in my town's civic betterment. The absolute joy of that 7-0 vote by the city council, after being told by a city leader who shall remain unnamed, that if we go to Huntington Beach or UC Irvine, if we need another library, we don't need a central library. But we did get the 7-0 vote, and hooray to the work of then-librarian Ladonna Keenitz, whom we hired to do that, Mayor Bus Turner at that time, and Councilwoman Lucille Kuhn, very hard-working people that got that 7-0 vote, which was moment- got that 7-0 vote, which was momentous. After that historic vote, and as a dutiful library board chairperson, it was my assigned task to head over to the Irvine Company to take receipt of some document they were talking about pertaining to their donation of, was it $11 million, the land? Anyway, I trans, I was the emissary. I don't take credit for that. I just did it as chairman of the library board. What a time that was. But my being termed out in 1991 meant I was not involved when Elizabeth Starr did her outstanding, remarkable community fundraising. And when the actual construction decisions were being made, I was out doing other things. But we'd been limited to something like, I believe, 50,000 square feet, which means a few things got left out of the library. A decent-sized Friends bookstore. It's packed. It's jammed. It's too small. There were no restrooms on the second floor. Thank goodness, that's been remedied with the new city hall and the remodel. And a functioning lecture hall. Has anybody sat there in the back row, unable to see the speaker because we don't have a sloped auditorium? Let's see. I guess I'm den. Please vote yes. I'm Karen Everett. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Next speaker, and if there are any other speakers, please do come forward down the center aisle. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon, members of the city council. My name is Peter Keller. I'm president of the Bowers Museum. I've been a resident of Newport Beach for almost 30 years, the same time I've been, amount of time I've been president of the Bowers, and it's grown substantially along the lines of Newport Beach. I travel a great deal around the world, and I'm very proud to be a Newport Beach resident. There is no better symbol of Newport Beach than the library. Again, I'll point out Elizabeth Starr and her husband, John, they've done an amazing job. But you know, there's something missing. My wife is on the witty committee here at the Newport Library, and I am so jealous. We do speakers like Zahia Iwass and Gloria Sainum, and we fill the place. The speakers you have here in Newport are just over the top, but you don't have the proper facility. Doing it in what I call a multipurpose room is just almost an embarrassment. You could go to surrounding cities like Irvine with Irvine Barclay, or go up to the Siegertson Center, or come to the Bowers in Santa Ana. But you shouldn't have to. It should be right here in Newport Beach. In closing, I would just like to say, I congratulate you on the architect you picked. Bob Coffey was our architect for the Kershaw Auditorium. Bob and I didn't always agree on things while we were building the Kennedy Wing, but what he did for that auditorium was just unbelievable. It was way over the top. I think it's one of the finest auditoriums. And he's very practical. You're not hiring an architect whose ego is into it. It's going to be way over cost. Bob is very practical, very easy to deal with, and you couldn't have a better choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon and council members. My name is Walter Starr. I'm an author. I've spoken at the Friends Room. I'm not anywhere near in the caliber of those other folks, but I wanted to give you an author's perspective. Maybe if an event was at the Lido Theater, maybe I would go. But authors love to go to libraries. That's where we do our work, and we feel comfortable there. It's a neutral, nonpartisan kind of place. Someone asked me the other day how I would grade the Friends Room versus other venues where I've spoken, the National Archives, the auditorium up at the Bowers, other places like that. And I said, you know, it's a B minus, C plus. From the author's perspective, at the moment, just as the people sitting in the back can't see the author very well, the author can't see the people. And when I go to Kansas City or wherever to give a speech, I want to see the people. I want them to be able to see me. I want to talk with them about the book. So a new library lecture hall, in my view, is essential to build on the success that we've had in terms of having authors and other cultural events, to bring them to a logical, central place. I urge you to vote yes this evening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I don't think you need any more people to advocate for the lecture hall tonight. I do think the city is in need of somebody to advocate for open government. As I said, the previous item I spoke about, I was very disappointed in. I am very disappointed in the presentation of this item to you. It's a very important item. This is the staff report that you and the public saw. It's 14 pages. It has a diagram where the lecture hall would go. It has an agreement with the Irvine Company. My understanding was the lecture hall design committee was going to present to you a recommendation on several proposals. There's nothing here as to what the proposal is. These are the proposals. You're not seeing Mr. Coffey's proposal. You're not seeing any of the alternatives. More important than that, you're being asked tonight to approve a contract. And we've heard that there are certain points in the contract. I do not find the contract in the staff report, yet you're being asked to approve it. I think that is a problem. And beyond that, I noticed, I think there is still some uncertainty as to what you're committing to building. Some of the letters that I saw in support of this were from a group of 60 vocalists who think this would be a good location for them, that would be an auditorium rather than a lecture hall. I don't think you're designing an auditorium, but I'm not sure. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Are you speaking, Mr. Rosansky? You were supposed to stand in the aisle there.
You should know I'm not a good listener or good follower. But I am Steve Rosansky, president and CEO of the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here this evening at the request of our Board of Directors, which at our last board meeting unanimously voted to support the construction, or at least moving forward in the process with the development of the lecture hall idea and the design. I will say that since the board meeting and talking with my board members and other business members, I think there's a lot of interest from the business community as well. I mean, we haven't really touched on that here. It's been more on the art side of it. But the business community actually used the lecture hall to rent it. I know the hoteliers in town frequently have group business in their hotels, and they're looking for a place to, for a company to have, you know, an auditorium-type environment. But unfortunately, we don't have a facility like that here, certainly not one of the caliber that they're looking for. In addition, there's other types of businesses that would like to have employee meetings or things like that. So you can look at that as not only another civic use, but as a revenue generator for the facility. And I'll just now take off my chamber hat and put back on my former council member hat. And the discussion here tonight sort of reminds me of another discussion we had at a council meeting that I sat at, dealing with the Newport Coast Community Center. And there was a few naysayers in the community that said at that time, we don't need another community center. We have community centers all over town. We all have gated communities. We have clubhouses. We can do whatever we need to do there. We don't need a community center up in Newport Coast. Well, as you all well know, and most of the people in this room, that community center is very well-used. And it, more importantly, it provides a focal point, a place for the community to come and gather. And that's what I think what we're going to see with this new lecture hall. It's another focal point. It's the thing that makes a city a community. It's having venues like this, places where our residents can come, become educated, meet other residences, put away your cell phone, you know, and actually have an interaction with another person. So, you know, take that into account. And I'll also just mention that, you know, years ago, when we conceived of this building and this facility, we added 17,000 square feet to the library. And I guarantee you that 17,000 square feet is well-used. It was a great investment in that building. I think this lecture hall will be another great investment in the community facilities and this civic center. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Larry Tucker. I'm going to read some of the wisdom of Bob McCaffrey, published yesterday. For the past month, I've been asking why Newport Beach taxpayers should pay for an $8 million library lecture hall? Well, he knows that half the funding is coming from private sources, but yet he continues to claim it's an $8 million number. Again, he says, "The library folks thinks they need a 275-high-end theater for the library lecture series of seven or eight annual speakers." It's not seven or eight annual speakers. He made that number up. The Woody Series has seven or eight lectures, but that, as you've heard, there are a multitude of other programs, and they're all free. People show up to things that are free. It's a lot more than seven or eight. As he said, "I've suggested before, spending eight-plus million, they investigate the use of existing theaters as alternatives." How ironic. He's not investigated anything. He's just thrown out these ideas with no idea whether they'll work. He threw out the idea of the high school theaters, Corona Del Mar High School and Newport Harbor High School. The superintendent of the district rejected that immediately. The ink wasn't even dry by the time that one was rejected. They're already overbooked. Oasis Senior Center, what a fine idea. Let's put 300 people over there. Out of the blue, we'll just turn it into library programming instead of senior programming. He didn't investigate that. And the lavish city hall, this is his last one, seats 150 people. Now, how's that going to work? He said the community center as well, that seats 180 people. The Friends Room seats 187. He's made no effort to actually figure out whether any of these things work. The last one, the Lido Theater. That theater has no pre-event space, no post-event space. I go to these lectures, and on Friday nights, and they do happen occasionally on Friday nights, there are three-hour affairs. And they're a struggle for me to stay awake. I'll say that in front of my wife. After I play golf and drink a beer, it's kind of like, they go on forever. But the underwriters get there, then the speaker speaks, then afterwards, they're fed. So how's that going to work? Is Fritz Duda going to give up on 20-some Friday evenings a year? So goes the movie business. He made no attempt to research anything.
Thank you. Any other public comments? See, no. I did indicate to Ms. Tucker that she may speak last. So Mr. McCaffrey, you're the next speaker? Because she asked before you did.
Well, I'd be happy to speak at the same time with her if she'd like.
Why don't you come up? I can't hear you without the mic.
I'd be happy to speak at the same time she does.
Well, you can't overtalk one another. Why don't you come and speak and respond to comments that have been made? You're welcome to do that.
I see what the vote is, so I see no reason to speak to the city council. I think I should speak to the library board. Can you hear me?
No. Mr. McCaffrey, please, you can, Mr. McCaffrey, please come around and talk to us. Please.
You've already voted.
No, we haven't voted officially. No. Please come and talk to us. That's what the lectern's facing, the council dais. No, Mr. McCaffrey, please face us.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon, city members. I'm right next to the microphone.
Mr. McCaffrey, please turn around and face us and address the council. That's what the public speaking comments are intended to.
The library board.
They can hear you by speaking to us.
They can hear me right now. I'm right next to the microphone.
Mr. McCaffrey, this is...
Dixon, it's a free country.
This is the rules of our council. This is in our council policy. Speakers, address the council.
Mr. McCaffrey, the public portion is so you can address and make comments to the council, so if you wouldn't mind.
I want to speak to the library board, not the city council. Because you've already made up your mind. Good evening, Mayor Dixon and city council. I feel better off facing them than my back to them, but that's your choice. My name's Bob McCaffrey. I live on Balbo Island. Since March, when the library trustee first pitched this idea of a library lecture hall, I thought the idea was so unnecessary that no one would take it seriously. I figured we elected self-proclaimed fiscal conservatives that would not agree to such a proposal. As I stand before you this evening in the most expensive city hall in Orange County, I should have paid more attention when it was, before it was built. We were promised to sell the land at the old place, take the money, go to the Irvine Company, ask we'd build it here, and build a city hall. Eevee, Stevie, we now are in debt $240 million at $20,000 a day for 30 years. Our pensions are $350 million behind. Many of you are fond about talking about how responsive you are to the public input. You've received hundreds of emails opposing putting public money into this. Please listen to your constituency, not just your friends on the library board. Let's put this in context. $8 million, it doesn't make any difference if it's tax dollars or anyone's. It's still $8 million bucks. For those many lectures, it's ridiculous. I know we're rich, but I don't think we're stupid. As our harbor silts up, employee pensions costs grow, and new fire stations are built, we can use the money on things we need. This is not a need. This is a want. I've offered numerous alternatives to this idea, all of them rejected by the library staff. They say our new state-of-the-art theaters at Corona Del Mar are unacceptable. The schools years ago took the same position when the Little Leagues wanted, Little Leagues wanted to play there, and a little public pressure came in and they said no. I think these are good people, and I think they mean well. And I'm not opposed to a hall, but I am opposed to taxpayers' money. If they're so confident, if we're so rich, why in the devil are we putting taxpayers' money into this? Why can't they raise the money themselves? 100%. If they're that confident, give them permission to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Boy, I welcome the chance to answer any questions that have been raised by Mr. McCaffrey through the last month or so. In particular, he mentioned that he...
Excuse me, Jill. Why don't you say your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Jill Johnson Tucker. I'm chair of the Library Lecture Hall Design Committee, and I was on the Board of Library Trustees for eight years. I chaired that for four of the years. And we knew, when I first joined the Board of Library Trustees, that would have been nine years ago now, that we had a problem with the Friends Room. Even back then, it didn't support the number of events. There were 28,000 then. There are now 70-some thousand attendees each year. But Mr. McCaffrey mentioned that he's, that you've received hundreds of emails from the opposition to this project. And I would like to point out that those emails were all form emails based on fallacious information that Mr. McCaffrey continues to spread throughout the community. The $8 million that he talks about, like we've stated, if that does indeed turn out to be the number, half of that is coming from the fundraisers. But I think it's a pretty great idea that we've agreed to do that, since our peer libraries, six of those throughout the state, all already have auditoriums and lecture halls, and they have not had to require private fundraising for that. So as far as his statement that it would be fiscally irresponsible of you to support the lecture hall, I'd like to read a quick paragraph that I wrote. "I'd respectfully suggest that it would be fiscally irresponsible to not support the lecture hall. The Board of Library Trustees, whom the city council appoints to, amongst other things, oversee the library facilities, has known for years and made it known to the city council that our facility was lacking. All our peer libraries have lecture halls or auditoriums on their campuses. The Newport Beach Public Library System, with the most vibrant program offerings, does not. But still, the support group raised funds and packed the Friends Room. These groups raised $700,000 last year." I think that's pretty substantial. I'm surprised that we're asked by Mr. McCaffrey to continue to raise more than that. That's a pretty... And while it takes hundreds of volunteers to raise the $700,000 they bring in and thousands of volunteer hours to plan and execute all the programs, our naysayers don't recognize how lucky the city is to have all of the volunteers that work on these projects. Moreover, the Board of Library Trustees and support groups have now said they'll help the city by raising half of the construction costs for this long-overdue facility that our peer libraries already enjoy. Would it be fiscally responsible to say that you shouldn't accept that half of the construction costs? Is it fiscally responsible to put that down, kick the can down the road, and maybe at that point, you'll have to pay 100% of the cost because you won't have the support at the ready? We're ready. We are ready. We don't have a capital campaign group formed yet, but we've already got non-binding agreements to the tune of $1,350,000 towards our half of it. And we don't even have a conceptual design in place. We're ready to go. There's no reason why we can't see this happen. We're happy to help with half. 100% of it is outrageous. All of our other peer libraries already have what we don't, and we're ready to help the city get there, but it shouldn't be 100% on our shoulders. Thanks.
Thank you. See? See no other comments? Is that correct? All right, let's bring it back up here. Do we have any comments from the dais? Mr. Muldoon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Except for when it comes to public safety, those who know me know that my default is to say no. Some even say I get enjoyment from it. That's not, that's not the case in this scenario. I was first approached by a very well-organized and respected group of people who wanted this facility. I understood their position, and I was actually leaning towards it. I understood their position, and I was actually leaning towards it. But since I've heard from enough residents that are concerned about the spending, I've decided that my default probably is best in this case, even when times are good. For those who are in attendance, it was about evenly split, about 100 emails for, about 100 emails against. So, I'm respectfully voting no on this issue. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Mayor Protem?
Yeah, so, folks aren't wrong to be focused on the finances of this. While I disagree with Mr. Glenn's comment about the total amount of debt, it is worth knowing, especially because we have a lot of people here who probably don't come very often and don't think about the city's finances, to remember that we still owe a little under $200 million on the Civic Center project. We still have around $311 million in unfunded pension liabilities. Those are sizable, really sizable. Those have come down in the last three years, and we'll continue to pay them down aggressively as we have. Those numbers are big, and I think that it's worth remembering that when people are concerned about the city's finances, there are good reasons to be concerned. Now, if you come to the city's finance committee meetings, you'll hear our strategies on making sure that we continue to pay down those pension liabilities. You'll hear how we continue to pay down the Civic Center debt. And I think what you'll also hear is that, well, first off, our budget is literally two inches thick. It's a fairly convoluted and complicated document, but each year, what we've been able to do so far is budget toward a balanced budget. Not only a balanced budget, but in the last three, four years, each year, we've had a surplus, and we use that, at least half that surplus every year, toward paying down long-term liabilities as well. It's a responsibility that everyone up here has taken very seriously and will continue to do so. One of the other things that we do is we budget toward the future. This is a practice that past councils have had for over a decade in terms of the facilities' financing plan. And in that FFP, what we've done is we've budgeted toward literally every major capital project that we can think of over the next 50 years. And we save, we set aside money each year toward that so that when the money is required, we have it. So, for example, if you saw that we approved the Lido Fire Station, we did that with money on hand. We're not taking out debt. When we're looking at the Corona del Mar Library and Fire Station, the same thing. We had money on hand, we didn't take out debt, and we're setting aside money so the future council will have the same opportunities that we have. When we're talking about this particular project, I actually typically join Kevin on this, and my default tends to be no, and oftentimes, it drives people crazy because unfortunately for them, I actually do know where the money is in the budget. I know on this one, this is a nice-to-have, it is not a need-to-have, it is not a fire station, it is not the police station. But because this is one of those things that I value extraordinarily, because when people talk about social infrastructure, they're talking about infrastructure that the city builds that brings people together, you need to recognize some of the intrinsic value that comes along with something like this. It's the same thing as a library. It's the same reason we fought so hard to make sure that we funded the Corona del Mar Library along with the fire station as well. And so, because we have consistently balanced budgets, because we have set aside enough money and plans set aside for unfunded pension liabilities on a going-backwards basis, and if you were at our last finance committee meeting, which one of you was, we had, we're starting to set aside money for what we anticipate to be our future unfunded pension liabilities as well. So, what you know, if you spend a lot of time inside that two-inch document, you get to know what we have and what we don't have. Now, I'll say, we have a queue of projects in line. We just recently had some folks come to us to talk about trying to build a swimming pool. We've got the junior guards program building that we're looking at, which would also, we've said, would be a public-private partnership. There are a lot of projects in the pipeline that people ask for. One of them, we're gonna be talking about later, is the bridge, and so, we're constantly looking for more funding from outside. But on something like this, where we know where we are in terms of having that set-aside funding, and we know where we need to go, it's worth moving forward with this. And it's also, though, worth making sure that we, as a council, negotiate this properly when it comes to making sure that there's sufficient funding on the private side as well as on the public. So, I will just say, as a preface to what I anticipate, we've been using percentages, just as a side note, when we talk about 50/50, I'm just gonna suggest that as we move forward, it's not 50/50, because if this creeps up, the city's amount needs to be capped, and that's a discussion for a later time. But at this time, I wanted to make sure that folks walked, understood what the thought process was on the financing, on the finances side of this, because it is really important, and people aren't wrong to be concerned. Thank you.
Mr. Avery.
None of these are easy decisions for us, for all the reasons that Will outlined. And I think we sort of fall on a spectrum that reflects sort of what we're feeling from the community, and we're all different, and we perceive things a little differently. But my mother was a librarian, and I've been around books a lot. I know everybody up here has been around, everyone's been around books. So, there's a special place, obviously, for everybody about a library, I think. And this is the city's center now, and building this out, I think, is a good thing. It's a good thing for the cities, it's a good thing for the residents. And what does it mean? It means maybe less into that unfunded pension liability, less into something else that comes up. We have a homeless situation, and all of you are aware of it, that is gonna take a lot of money to move forward on and continuing. So, those are all things that we know, we take in to balance, and those on the finance committee have a better grasp of it than those of us who are not on the committee. But we talk to people, and I get counseled by members of the finance committee, so I have a sense of it. And I think these are tax dollars that are coming at us, and then we have to listen to the public, get some input. It's all very important. My inbox, and I know everyone up here, just the letters, the incoming from both sides of this was really something. And every morning, I pull it up and start looking, going through it. We've got engaged citizenry, that's for sure, and that's probably the best thing I can take away from it, because it's, you know, it's pulling you both directions. But on balance, I think if we're meeting our obligations, if we are paying down the unfunded liability, my feeling is that we do the best job we can to balance these things. But we're living now. We should not, in my view, overweight the future in terms of what might happen. I believe people, we pay taxes, and we expect services, and we expect the bottom line, the bottom of the pyramid things, to function, the police, fire, all the rest of it. But then there's the inspirational things, or the things that we come together as a city and we're proud of. And whether, wherever you fall on the city hall, I believe going forward, that this compound, if you will, this civic center, is going to be increasingly something that, you know, we're proud of. But more than that, it's a place where we gather, and I think we've heard that from several people. It's a gathering place, it's our central gathering place, because Newport never had that, you know, or these desperate villages, if you will. This is the spot, and this is, if we're going to invest, I believe this is a really good spot to invest, because the whole community can enjoy it, take advantage of it, and perhaps not now, but at some point in their lives be involved. And so, for that reason, I'm gonna vote for it, but respecting the concerns of Mr. McCaffrey, of my fellow council members on the dais that have concerns about this, and I look forward to doing more work on this. This is just the very first step, and I think we've heard, looking at contracts, we've got to be on this and do it like we do everything else in the city, respond to it in a very pragmatic way. But I do believe that these sorts of things, when the public comes at you, and they're prepared to raise half the funds, and we already get the pulse of it, at least I do, the pulse that it is happening, we've got people that are committed to it. And I just, I intrinsically know that. And so, to me, that's a wonderful spirit, and it's something we should encourage to the degree that we can. And I also think, if we can do it, we should do it, because in a few years, we may not be able to do it. It may be a different world. So, if we can get it, I think we should. Thank you.
Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I went out into my neighborhood, knocked on some doors, and asked, "Do you want..." And I used the $4 million, not the $8 million figure, and I didn't get anybody who wanted to pay that. I didn't, they all want, it sounds great. I want, I'm 100% for it. I just don't wanna pay for it. I mean, there are so many other things that we need to pay for, that to do this is, well, at least the people in my district, they're not big on this. So, I would suggest I have to go with what my people want, and they don't want to pay $4 million. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Brenner.
That's interesting, an interesting way of looking at it, because I think there are a lot of things in our community that if people were approached on this particular project or that particular project, they'd say, "No, I really, like, you know, I don't really use the bay. I don't really care whether we dredge it or not, or I don't really use the bay. I don't really care whether we have a harbor department, or I don't live on Balboa Island. I don't care whether we build a seawall around that." So, you know, with that kind of logic, you could probably get everybody in the city to agree that they don't wanna spend the money for something. But we're a city, we're a community, and the reason that we are so amazing is because we have worked together, and we've done things for the greater good that maybe we wouldn't have chosen to do just for ourselves. I sit on the finance committee for the past year, and I can't tell you how impressed I am with the staff, with the council, and with the appointees that serve on that. It's such a well-organized committee, and they look at every facet of how this city operates. And when they look at the unfunded pension liability, they've got a plan, they've got a way of dealing with it, they're forecasting, they look at our investments. I mean, it's really worth attending those finance committee meetings, even though it may not be your special area of interest. It is so fascinating to see how that works. And on this particular item, I was looking at this in terms of if we were a business. And if we were a business, and we were strong financially, we've got a sound organization with a well-thought-out and research plan for the future, we know how we're gonna pay for things, we know that we're in good shape, we know basically what our income's gonna be, it's gonna be that or greater. And if we had an opportunity to acquire a major asset for our business, and we could get that asset at half the price, like, it might not be the time that we think we necessarily want a lecture hall, but some group is coming to us and saying, "You know what? We'll get this major asset for you, and we'll get it at half price." And if we looked at that and we said, "How is that going to benefit our business or our organization in the future? And can we justify our portion of that? Because we're getting something that's much more valuable than we're gonna have to pay for it." And I think if we were a business, we'd look at that opportunity and we'd say, "Yeah, we have to do it. We have a great opportunity here, we can afford it, it's financially sound, and it's going to greatly benefit our organization." So, those are the reasons that I definitely am in support.
Mr. Hurdman.
Everyone is chiming in, so I feel like I should too. I'm not gonna repeat what's been said here. I'll just say that, given our plan for our financial future, it's perfectly reasonable to consider adding a community asset to our community at this point in time. When I ran for city council, I promised people that my vote would reflect majority opinion and not my opinion. And I've tried to live up to that, and this is a perfect scenario where my vote can represent majority opinion as opposed to my opinion. And majority opinion is that people are in favor of this facility. And so, my position is going to be that, as long as the majority feels that way. You know, I just, I wanna say this too, and I've said it before. I used to be the principal of a elementary school, several elementary schools, and when school uniforms came about, there was a group of parents always in every school that I was responsible for who wanted school uniforms, and then there was another group of parents in the same school that didn't. And the PTA always asked me to conduct a survey, and I always conducted a survey, and the results always came back 50/50. Okay? Whenever you conduct a survey on something, I can guarantee you statistically, you're gonna get a 50/50 response, and pretty much, that's what we've gotten here on this particular project. But my sense is that there is a great deal of community support for this, and as long as I sense that, I'm gonna continue to support this project. Thank you.
Okay. I want to add my comments and address the finance issues, because that's something that's very important to me. I've served on the finance committee, I'm in my fifth year. I served as chair for almost four years, succeeded by the mayor, Protem. And as one of the speakers who spoke about, what was her name? She spoke, oh, I wrote her down her name. Anyway, when she was on the library committee, when they were opposed to, I guess it was building the community center, that was one of the comments too, and then just the questions of building that. So, one of the significant characteristics of this community is the fiscal responsibility of this community, and that's in our DNA, and that is how this council and prior councils operate, with a sense of what can we pay for and how do we pay for it. Not going into the Civic Center issues, but the history of this city has been to reserve, have a solid financial management, fiscally conservative. This city, that's in our DNA, it's in our bones, will never change from that. Since I have been on the council and been looking at these numbers on a daily, practically daily basis, I just wanna remind people that we are financially strong. We are financially strong for a number of reasons. Our property tax base, which is funded by commercial and private property owners, sustains our quality of life. It is, we have a $220 million general fund plus another $100 million enterprise fund, which pays for itself in the water and sewer, et cetera. But our general fund is funded 16% of what you pay, not 100%. Nobody pays a cent of income tax to this city, not a cent. Some cities have gone to special taxes to pay their unfunded pensions. We have not increased our sales taxes. I think it's highly unlikely, because we have a supermajority requirement. We will self-fund this city, because commercial and private interests, all of you and your homeowners, all of our property owners, our commercial owners, I call it the circle of life in Newport Beach. The public monies, the private investment, to reinvest in this city, to make the city the beautiful city it is, so it attracts additional investment. That additional investment is what funds our general fund, because of the steadily increasing property assessment values that contribute, the 100, specifically, $113 million of our general fund come into this city, general fund, because of all the improvements publicly and privately we make to our community. And that is what funds this city. And we have cultural fixtures, we have harbor, which is certainly an economic driver, and we want to continue to invest in our harbor-related services and infrastructures, which creates a terrific revenue source for us as well. But it's the combination of what makes Newport Beach unique. Also, the fact that we are a destination city. You talk to your colleagues or friends or family members who live in parts east of here, they're not destination cities. We get over $32 million a year, because people want to come to visit our harbor and stay in our hotels and dine in our restaurants. We have a solid financial base. By having such a significant, more than 50% of our general fund is funded by property tax revenues, only 16% of what you pay to the county or to the state of California comes back to the city. It's not 100%, it's 16%. We manage this, and our predecessors have managed this fiscal house rigorously to protect the needs, the ongoing operating needs... the, the needs, the ongoing operating needs, the investment needs, to continue to make this community vibrant, strong, healthy, and desirable for future investment needs, and we manage our financial responsibilities that we've inherited from prior councils, and the state of California, in the public pension benefits paid to our employees. We are very disciplined and rigorous in how we manage collective bargaining agreements, how we manage our future indebtedness, as the Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, every year we've had pensions, or, excuse me, a budget surplus, we pass balanced budgets, we create a surplus, and half of that surplus, ranging between five and eight million dollars, or maybe 10 to 12 million dollars is a surplus, half of that goes to pay down, accelerate, like you pay down your mortgage, accelerate our unfunded pension liability, which we have absolutely no control over. But as Mr. Avery said, we know that we have that long-term obligation, but we also have, and that will be paid off, we're on a 14-year paydown, it will be paid off barring a major economic calamity, but we are on a fast track to pay that down. But many of us believe that we also have to invest in our current life, our current way of life, and our quality of life in our city, and not short-change the future. So we can, it's a balance, we, we want to invest in the present day that will, this building, this lecture hall will not just exist for a year, it's going to exist for 30 to 40 to 50 years, as, as a library. And that is what we do, our responsibility is to invest in the here and now, and pay our bills, and invest in the future, so we are a desirable place for people to live, work, and play, and invest, and spend money in Newport Beach. I think the Finance Committee is exceptional, the talent we have with our public members, and our, and our City Council members, as with our staff, that we don't waste a dime, and our department heads don't waste a dime. So I feel very confident that we are on a, on a, on a well-managed fiscal program to keep our city financially healthy, and at the same time, invest in the quality of life, cultural issues that make Newport Beach distinguished. We're not trying to be Costa Mesa with Seeger Swim, we're not trying to compete with the Laguna Playhouse, this will be unique to Newport Beach, that we will be proud of. And it's, it's not going to be, I've said this publicly, it's, it's going to be functional. Mr. Coffey will design a functional lecture hall that will not have gold-plated bathroom fixtures, as some people have said, it will be functional, and reflect the people of Newport Beach, and how we are, we like quality, but we want to just, pay just for quality, and not a cent more. So, let's move forward, the screen keeps going out here. Anyway, all right, so the items, if the scene is, there are no other comments. So we want to approve the Second Amendment to the Declaration, is that right, we're doing that, Second Amendment, is that what it says, that's correct here, of the land use restrictions between the city of Newport Beach and the Irvine Company, and most importantly tonight, is to approve the professional service agreement with Robert Coffey and Associates of Newport Beach for the lecture hall, at a overall price not to exceed 637,000, but of that, approximately 197,000 is what's going to be paid out for this first of three phases. And as I said earlier, we will, I'm adding, I guess this is the motion, that as, at the same time as the conceptual design and preliminary budget are brought back to the council in the spring, March, February, March, April period, for consideration, an agreement on the public and private funding responsibilities of the project shall also be approved as part of any decision by the council to proceed with this project. In other words, there will be a memorandum of understanding, otherwise known as an MOU, that will codify that it's a public-private 50/50 project, and within, not to exceed eight million dollars. So, that is the proposed motion, do I have a second?
I second the motion.
All right, any comments, let's vote.
With council members Muldoon and Duffield voting no, the motion carries 5-2.
All right, thank you very much, thank you all for being here. Why don't we take, why don't we take a three-minute recess, just to let everybody leave and re- All right, we'll reconvene. So if everyone could have a seat, and we lasso back our council members. We're still missing a couple, I think they'll appear shortly, one has, is the Mayor Pro Tem around here somewhere?
Yes, he's over there.
All right, well, we'll talk slowly, here he is. All right, thank you for your patience this evening, we'll go to public hearings, number item 21, on the Superior Avenue pedestrian bicycle bridge and parking lot project, and I'll turn it over to staff, do we need a staff report?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
On this issue, in the last iteration, the conceptual designs, a utility component was added, so due to my business interest in telecommunications and related underground, I have to recuse myself on this item.
Okay, we'll miss you. All right, so staff.
All right.
All right.
Jim Hulahan.
Yes.
Deputy Director of Public Works and City Engineer. Tonight I have with me Andy Tran, who is a Senior Civil Engineer with Public Works, and also the Project Manager, and Chelsea Crager, who is the Project Planner in the Planning Department, and Laura Detwiler, Director of Recreation Senior Services. Those folks will be presenting the background, as well as the planning, design, and programming elements of the project that support staff's recommendations.
Okay, very good.
Please proceed.
Excuse me, okay, sorry. Good evening, Mayor Dixon and council members, my name is Andy Tran, and I'm a Senior Civil Engineer with the Public Works Department, and also the Project Manager for the Superior Avenue pedestrian bicycle bridge and parking lot project. We are very excited here tonight to present the conceptual design. There are three components to this project, primarily the bridge, a new parking lot, and the third component being the recreation area. So this project is located at the northeast corner of the Superior Avenue West Coast Highway intersection, the, there is an existing parking lot at the existing site with 64 parking spaces. The area between the existing parking lot and the Sunset View Park is currently undeveloped. And as some of you might recall, Sunset Ridge Park, when we completed that, the construction of that project back in December 2014, unfortunately, we were unable to construct an onsite parking lot due to coastal, coastal permitting constraints. So the two primary goals of this project are to improve the safety and access to Sunset Ridge Park, as well as to improve or increase the parking availability. So we began our conceptual ideas with the Parks and Beaches and Rec, Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission back in April of 2017, and since that meeting, staff has been working closely with the City Council Working Group, as well as the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Ad-Hoc Committee Group, to review our conceptual design alternatives. We, staff has also been continuously coordinating with Caltrans and the California Coastal Commission to complete the federal environmental review, which is the NIBA document, because this project does involve federal grant funding, as well, we have been working with the California Coastal Commission to amend our coastal development permit for the Sunset Ridge Park project. We, staff also presented the conceptual design to the adjacent residents, we held a total of five community outreach meetings, and lastly, the conceptual design also was presented to the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission back in August 6 of 2019. As far as the proposed improvements are concerned, this project involves a new pedestrian bridge, a new pedestrian bicycle bridge that spans Superior Avenue, that will connect the proposed parking lot to Sunset Ridge Park. This project also involves constructing a larger parking lot to replace the existing smaller parking lot. Lastly, this project will have a recreational component, which will either be a dog park or a passive area, which we will discuss further, later today. And lastly, this project also involves some minor amenities, such as a drop-off area, a bike node with a little fix-it, fix-it station, as well as a drinking water fountain. So, as part of the conceptual design, we actually evaluated four bridge structures. The two leading bridge structures are a steel-trust bridge and a concrete cast-and-place bridge. So what you see here is a rendering of the steel-trust bridge, in terms of, the bridge itself is about 14 feet wide, 260 feet long, and the steel-trust bridge is approximately 16 feet tall. In regards to the advantages for this bridge, steel-trust bridges, this one in particular, we, it's a single-span bridge, which means it does not require any mid-span support along Superior Avenue, and also with steel-trust bridges, they can, for the most part, be assembled onsite, so it would, it would minimize construction duration. But unfortunately, with steel-trust bridges, especially in our marine environment, it will require a little more maintenance, such as regular, regular painting. Here's a rendering of our concrete bridge, similar in size as far as width and, and length, but one of the greatest advantage of a concrete bridge is that it is only eight feet tall. So in terms of visual obstruction, it will be, it won't be as, it won't be obstruct, I guess, as the steel-trust bridge. As far as disadvantages, this concrete bridge is a three-span concrete bridge, which means we do, we will be needing two mid-span supports on Superior. And as far, the other advantage I forgot to mention on the concrete bridge, is that it is very, is it is very traditional, and it would require minimal maintenance. So staff is very aware of the potential visual concerns in regards to putting a bridge at this location, so as part of our, our visual and aesthetic analysis, we did complete six visual simulations, and these simulations are a little different than the renderings that I just showed you in the past two slides, in that these, these are actual photos with our proposed improvements shown in them at, at true scale and size. So as you can see here, this, this view simulation was taken from Sunset View Park, looking south towards the ocean, and the steel-trust bridge as shown here is below the, the ocean And similarly, this is a, from the same viewpoint, this is, but with our concrete bridge. Here's another view simulation from the other side of Superior Avenue, along the sidewalk, and again, the steel-trust bridge is shown there, below the, the ocean view. And again, this is the same simulation with our concrete bridge. And this is my, our third and last, final simulation, this is a view from Coast Highway looking north up Superior Avenue, and in the background there, there's Newport Crest. Our last simulation is from the same point, point of view, and this is of our concrete So with these view simulations, we were able to confirm that we really don't, the view impact would be less insignificant. And here's an aerial view of our existing parking lot, as I mentioned earlier, there are 64 parking spaces in the existing parking lot, and the access to the parking lot is off Superior Avenue. And here is a rendering of our proposed larger parking lot with 128 parking stalls. As far as access goes, it would be this, very similar to how it is today, off Superior So as part of our public outreach, outreach, we did present the conceptual design to the following residents, which are Newport Crest, Villa Balboa, West Newport, and Lido Sands Communities. And the bridge and the parking lot were both very well-received, and the feedback that we got from the community and PBNR was that the concrete bridge was the preferred alternative for the structure. Although the, you know, the concrete bridge was, and the parking lot was well-received, we did receive some concerns, primarily from the Villa Balboa residents, in regards to the dog park, which is why we will be going over some of the potential, I'm sorry, the concerns were primarily because of noise, odor, and added traffic. So we will be going over a couple of alternatives for this recreational area. Lastly, we also did receive a lot of support for the dog park, primarily from residents outside of Villa Balboa. So before we get into the alternatives, if I can ask Laura Detwiler to come and give us a little background on the recreational needs.
Thank you, good evening, I'm Laura Detwiler, Recreation and Senior Services Director. We did want to just share with you a little bit about how Sunset Ridge Park is being used. As you're aware, it's a sports park, it's got a baseball field, a couple soccer field overlays, our youth groups are utilizing it, we have AYSO soccer, some club soccer groups, as well as pony baseball, that are currently using it. However, they're, they're using it on a limited basis because of the lack of parking, there, there's only so many kids that can play on the field at any given time, and we're limited in terms of the number of games that we can play throughout the day, to make sure that we allow enough time to have the parking lot empty out, and the next group of kids come in with their families. So, it's not being maximized as intended, these groups have been waiting patiently since 2014 for the addition of parking, and I can say that they are very excited about the completion of this project, and even so, more so with the addition of the pedestrian bridge, it's just a much safer feel to be able to access the playing field at this level, to get families, grandparents, kids, and all the equipment over to the ballfields to maximize its use. So, we do absolutely expect to have increased use once we complete the project. The other thing that we wanted to share with you is, is the, the dog park that you see in the plan today has a long history, and it actually started back in 2013, when we completed the Civic Center Dog Park here, and the council started to hear a lot of feedback from the community about how much they liked it, and wanted to see additional park, dog parks throughout the community, and in particular, on the opposite side of town in West Newport. So, late 2014, the City Council directed the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission to form an ad hoc and look at feasible locations to add a dog park. So that group completed their work in 2015, they came up with four, four options that they thought might be viable, one being Sunset View Park, the AT&amp;T property over at Benita Canyon, some open space that existed over at Benita Canyon Sports Park, and also Lower Castaways. They, they were prioritized, and Sunset View Park was head above the rest for a variety of different reasons, one being it was city property that we owned, it was undeveloped parkland, and it was located on the opposite side of town of the existing dog park, and it was going to provide some pretty incredible views for our dog owners. So, that recommendation sat idle until we started this conceptual design work, and our, our first priority has always been additional parking in this pet bridge, and if there was any additional land, what we could use it for in terms of a recreational component. And although it is very small, it's smaller than the dog park we have here at, at Civic Center Park, the commission felt that it was still a viable option to include a dog park. So, that, that process has continued, we did start to hear feedback from the Villa Balboa residents, we met with them not too long ago, to hear their input, and they were certainly very concerned about a variety of, of issues, odor, increased traffic, and noise. And so, what we, what we talked about at that meeting with them is that we would provide some additional options, and that being open space. So, we've prepared some alternatives for you this evening to look at, and I'm going to turn it back to Andy, and he'll go through those options with you, and certainly I'm here to be able to answer any questions that you may have about any of that, okay?
All right, thank you. Andy, could you, excuse me, just add clarification of why the Coastal Commission denied the, was it access road, if I understand, and the parking, five years ago, what, what was the story behind that?
That is correct, the Coastal Commission denied the access road to the parking lot, so without that access road, we really, it would be no point to build a parking lot there.
So, we, they allowed us to build a park, but no access to the park?
No access to the parking lot, to the park, correct.
Yeah, so that's been an obstacle to the use of the park, that's unfortunate. Okay, please continue.
Okay, this is an aerial view of the proposed improvements, in particular, the recreational area, which is highlighted in red. You can see that the recreation area is, is proposed to be next to, or in between the proposed parking lot and the existing Sunset View Park. And to the right or north of the Sunset View Park is Villa Balboa. The photo to the top right there is of the, of an existing earthen knoll that is currently out there today, and the photo to the bottom right is of Sunset View Park. And the photo to the bottom right is of Sunset View Park from Sunset Ridge Park. So our alternative number one, which is our dog park alternative, this is a cross-sectional view of it, and I'm going to start on the right-hand side and move to the left. To the right is Villa Balboa, and right next to Villa Balboa is the existing Sunset View Park, or the existing sun, upper Sunset View Park. And I want to draw your attention to the existing earthen mound, which is shown with a dashed line there. So our proposed improvements, improvements would start at the edge of the existing Sunset View Park with a two-to-one slope down approximately 25 feet to get to the elevation of the proposed dog park. So the proposed dog park is going to be located approximately 260 feet away from Villa Balboa. It's going to have a shade structure. It's also going to have some proposed fencing, so that we can have dogs run off leash. And the area for the proposed dog park, in terms of size, is going to be about .2 acres in size.
Could I just ask a clarifying question? Where does it say here how far it is from Villa Balboa?
Oh, it's the very top line.
Oh, 260 feet. Does that, is that to the property line or to the actual buildings on the property?
That is to the closest building.
To the closest building, okay.
Correct. So our alternative number two is actually very similar to the dog park alternative. As far as grading and earthquake is concerned, this, this alternative still involves grading down a two-to-one slope approximately 25 feet to create a level passive area down low at the lower Sunset View Park area. The only difference for this alternative is that we will not be incorporating the, the shade structure nor the fencing. Here's a cross, excuse me, here's a cross-sectional view of alternative number three. And again, similarly, there would be, everything from the Sunset View Park, or the upper Sunset View Park, to the right would remain unchanged. The proposed improvements would start at the left side of Sunset View Park with an upper passive area. So this, this alternative here would create about .1 acres of passive area up high. The only difference with this alternative is that it would require the construction of three terrace walls. And now I'm going to turn this over to Chelsea for the environmental review.
Thank you. Chelsea Craigor with the Planning Division. So the first thing I'm going to talk about is the environmental review of the project and compliance with California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA. For the project, an initial study mitigated negative declaration, or an ISMND, which is a lot easier to say, was prepared. It was circulated for public comment September 23rd to October 23rd. On the screen in front of you is a list of some of the environmental factors that were considered, that I'm not going to read to you in its entirety, but I will point out that calculations were prepared for air quality, energy, and greenhouse gases. There were technical reports prepared for biological resources, cultural resources, and paleontological resources. And there's also a hazardous materials assessment and noise measurements that were done around the project site. The, the areas in front of you that are in green, those are the ones that have mitigation measures that are incorporated into the environmental document. And with those mitigation measures incorporated, any impacts were determined to be below a level of significance. During that draft review period that I mentioned, was 30 days, we received 27 comment letters. Though it's not technically required by SEQA, we did have prepared written responses to each and every single one of those comment letters. And after that, no comments affecting or altering the conclusions of the ISMND were raised. Could you actually stay on that side for a second? I did want to mention that we did receive a few comment letters after that public review period, and some of those raised issues with views, Native American monitoring, coastal sage scrub planting area, noise, burrowing owls. The staff did take another look at those, and we believe those issues were adequately addressed in the environmental document. Some issues were also raised with some Scrivener's errors, errors, or typos, and staff's recommendation will include that corrections for those Scrivener's errors be included if and when that MND is adopted. So along with the project are some requests for exemptions from the zoning code. The project, of course, was designed as closely to the zoning code as possible, but some of these exemptions are requested. So one of those, the first one, is for retaining wall height. The zoning code includes a limitation of eight feet on retaining walls, and in this case, proposed walls may go up to 25 feet. Secondly, any structures in the shoreline height limitation area are limited to 26 feet, and in this case, the bridge could be up to 36 or 38.2 feet high. And lastly, any parks, active or passive, and parking facilities require a minor use permit, and in this case, the request is that that requirement be waived. And then lastly, I wanted to talk a little bit about Coastal and the California Coastal Commission. So this project is located in the coastal zone and therefore does require coastal development permit. The portions of the project that are within the city's permit jurisdiction, the city intends to process those. However, a portion of the project, the part where the bridge touches down in Sunset Ridge Park, that's an area that we just talked about, the Sunset Ridge Park CDP. So that requires that the California Coastal Commission consider an amendment. So we will have to take it to the Coastal Commission for an amendment to that. In this case, we haven't done the CDP analysis yet, as plans haven't been prepared. Wasn't quite enough detail to do that CDP analysis, just though we did have enough for SEQA.
Thank you, Chelsea. As far as the preliminary estimated cost for this project, the total project cost is estimated to be at $8.8 million, which would include the planning and final design phases, the construction phase, as well as contingency and testing and inspection. Of the 8.8, I'm sorry, the current adopted budget has, is, includes $5.6 million in the current CIP. So the staff will be requesting for an additional 3.2, I'm sorry, on the current adopted budget, there was, there is a $2.349 million of federal grant included in the $5.6 million. So staff will be requesting for an additional $3.2 million in next year's CIP. Assuming that the conceptual design and the mitigating negative deck is adopted or approved tonight, staff anticipates completing the final design by spring of 2021, start construction early summer 2021, and complete construction by fall of 2022.
Could you just hold on one moment? Mayor Protim has a question.
Yes.
Grace, what's the, which fund balance are they going to be asking 3.2 to come out of?
Yes.
Okay. Andy, what, yeah, Andy, what fund balance is the 3.2 going to come out of?
I, I did fail to mention that this is going to be from the facilities financing plan, the parks facilities financing plan.
Right. That's right. Okay. This is, this is, this is in Lufy's? Or is this, yeah. Okay.
It's not out of the general fund?
No.
That's right. Okay. I couldn't remember. Thanks.
And then are there any Caltrans funds, state funds?
There, there is federal funding. The $2.349 million is a federal, it's actually federal.
Oh, no state?
No state.
Oh. I thought Caltrans was interested because of the pedestrian transportation mitigation. No? Okay. Okay, good.
So here are the five recommendations that we have for your consideration tonight, which are to conduct a public hearing, to adopt our mitigating negative deck that Chelsea just went over, to exempt this project from certain development and use standards, and also to select a preferred alternative for the recreation area and approve the conceptual design. And finally, to approve a professional services agreement with dock and engineering, so that we can start the final design phase.
All right. Thank you. Any comments from the DIAS? Seeing none. Mr. Avery?
Laura, the dog park. How long have we had dog parks in this town?
The, the first, the first and only one here at Civic Center Park, so two, since 2013.
And the response has been good?
They've loved it. And we have a very active dog community that's utilizing it. We've not received any complaints from the neighbors that live across the street. And so, yes, I, I would say that it's been favorable. And since we opened it, we have had a lot of conversation about where we can find future dog parks. I think a lot of the conversation also has been centered around Santa Ana River Mouth and finding other alternatives for folks on that side of town that can legally let their dogs off leash.
So obviously, when we have people concerned about the location of a dog park, we, we want to solve for the best location that won't have that kind of concern. And so we weren't able to do that here, apparently. This was a unanimous recommendation for the site by the ad hoc committee of PBNR?
Correct.
And then the commission too?
Pardon me?
Did the commission approve it?
The Parks Speeches and Recreation Commission approved it, correct.
So.
Wait, excuse me. Excuse me. If you want to speak in public comment, you'll be able to come in.
Yeah, they'll be funny at times. So. So we don't have a problem with the smell, with odors at the park we have now?
We don't, no.
And that's because we're there every day?
We, we are there on a daily basis cleaning the dog park. We have regular quarterly cleanings, where we come in and steam clean everything. We have an irrigation system in the synthetic turf that cleanses it on a regular basis as well. So no, we have not had complaints about odor.
Do we limit the number of dogs that can be there any one time, or does it sort of self-regulate?
Self-regulated.
And that's worked out?
Yes.
Thank you.
Laura, I have a few questions, as long as you're standing there.
Sure.
What is it, do you know the distance between the current dog park, between the dog park and the homes across the street?
It's, I'm, Andy, can you help me with that?
Yep. If I may, if I can show you a couple of other slides here. Oh, yes. It, the existing distance is 190 feet from the dog park to the apartments, to the homes across MacArthur Boulevard.
So it's a shorter distance?
It is a shorter distance.
Interesting. And the comparison of the two dog parks, the proposed and the actual?
I, I, to compare it, I would say this, this, the proposed is about a third of the size of the one here at Civic Center Park. So if you, if you've spent any time in that park and you enter into the big dog park area, there's synthetic turf and there's DG. It's about the size of that synthetic turf area at the front entrance of the dog park, so significantly smaller.
Will there be two sections for large dogs and small dogs?
Yes.
And then have we had, you mentioned that there have been no complaints from the residents who live across the street, because they do have complaints on various noise issues related to the Civic Center. Have they complained about the dog park?
We have not received any complaints.
And I've heard reports from the residents that currently dogs are using Sunset Ridge Park. Is that, could you talk about that?
Well, do, dogs are allowed in all of our parks as long as they're on leash. That's not to say that everybody follows the law. And we, it's not uncommon for us to come into any of our parks with our park patrol staff and find folks leaving their dogs off leash. And I would guess that this occurs at Sunset Ridge Park as well.
And what about leaving dog residue?
Well, I knew this conversation would go there. What, what we have found, and, and, you know, we work with our animal control partners as well, in, in the police department, and what we find is that if, if folks let their dogs run loose in areas that they're not, they shouldn't be doing that, oftentimes, they don't pick up after them. And so we're constantly dealing with complaints in our parks, where folks were wishing that people would pick up after their pets. And what we find is if we have, we provide an off-leash alternative for them, they'll use it. And we would hope that we had, would have less of a problem with folks leaving their residue behind.
I see. Okay. Mr. Avery, did you have another question?
I do. Thank you. So I deal better with square feet than .2 acres, but that's about what, 8, 8,000 square feet? .2 acre?
That's, that's correct. .2 acres is about 8,000 square feet.
And then, so the Civic Center dog park's roughly 24,000 square feet, if it's?
It's, actually, the Civic Center is, is a little bit more than double the size, so it's, it's about 17,000, 18,000 square feet.
And so this, despite its smaller size, is still, we still, obviously, the commission staff feels it's worth the, the effort to have a small park there.
We, we think that people will enjoy it, yes.
And then suppose we've misjudged the, the impact on residents? And we build this thing, and the one that concerns me the most, I'm pretty confident that we can manage the, the odor situation, if we're diligent. But I think so, it seems to me. And I know some people are concerned about traffic and parking, but this is a park, and this is what we, we offer citizens. And so I, I think we're going to have a lot of parking there, and people should be able to enjoy it. But I think if we've misjudged, or we do misjudge, the noise factor, we should be, we should have a plan for a retreat, if you will, to something else. Seems to me that's flat land there that could be converted into a different use. Hoops? I don't know.
You're correct. Yeah, the, the dog park will have, I mean, essentially, it will have some benches in it. It will have a fence around it, and those amenities can be easily removed if we get to a point where you feel that it's not, no longer a benefit to the community.
Yeah, I think everyone up here, it's, we don't want to force this on residents if it's not going to work. And, or I think we're representing that they're not going to have that impact that they're concerned about. Otherwise, we wouldn't be talking about this.
Correct.
And so I like the idea of having fallback positions, so our investment isn't wasted in sort of setting this up. We're going to be taking out a lot of dirt and spending some extra dollars to make this flat land. So that makes me feel better about, you know, that's my district. I'm concerned about the residents. I'm also, even though we all represent different districts, we always come back to the community as a whole and where, and then try to balance it out. And so from my perspective, I'm, I've, I've walked it with Andy, and, and I think it would work. And I don't think the neighbors would be impacted by noise. But I don't know that for sure, so, but I think we should, we should give it a try and monitor the situation. Thank you.
Is there anybody here in the audience from the PBNR commission? Wait a minute, Laura, don't go too fast. Is any commissioner here by any chance? Who's, somebody back there? Oh, Larry, would you like to come up and just give a, the report on the commission? Or anyone else too, just from the commission, just to, so Laura, you don't have to do that part if you, you may sit down.
I want you right here. I was on the ad hoc committee, and it was a volunteer position. And there were three of us. Walt Howell was here earlier. He was on it. And there was a third PBNR member, and as Laura stated, we went around to the four different sites. And clearly, the one that we felt that was the, the most suitable for a dog park was at Sunset View Park, Lower Sunset View Park. The PBNR commission voted unanimously, 6-0, there was somebody absent at that meeting, to approve the whole project, the improvement project of Lower Sunset View Park, to include the dog park.
Did they take into consideration the, the neighbors' concerns? Did they speak before the commission?
I, I don't, I don't recall.
Okay. And what about the noise issue and anything else, any other, the negative impact factors?
No, but I've talked to staff, and at the meeting that staff conducted at the Civic Center Dog Park about a month ago, that was attended by a lot of Villa Balboa residents, they went over the decibel level, and you didn't discuss that tonight, right? You haven't gone over the, the noise? And it's, all that information is published on the city website, if I remember correctly. So we didn't think about it then, and I've been reassured by staff that that's not an issue now. issue now.
Okay. Mr. Rudy, do you want to make a comment? No? All right. Any other comments? All right, well, thank you. I wanted to get input from the commission. All right, thank you. My screen's out again. Let me see, are there any requests to speak? Okay, no, no comments up here, why don't we go to the public? If they're going to be a large number, please line up in the center. And again, we're limiting it to two minutes, so please feel free to speak, but line up at both of the lecterns, if you would please, and we'll begin. Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Joseph Segetti. I'm a realtor working in the community a whole lot. And from the moment that the idea of the park came up, I had hundreds of people come to me when I'm doing open houses. And I wanted to dive into the details, because the devil is in the details. Some of the homes of, so we brought the issue of odor and noise, and there are some other issues to consider. One is safety. Some of the homes, just to give you a picture, the wall is about this high. Safety is an issue. Some of the homeowners here, people can literally, I can step over their fence, and that's a concern for them. Another concern is reputation. They're really feeling that, they don't want to be heard as the, as the community next to the dog park. I don't think anybody here will feel very positive, hey, you live next to the dog park. Another concern is comparing the dog park over here, next to City Hall, and the dog park over there. You have the MacArthur between the dog park over here and the community next door to it. Over there, there is nothing in between, no noisy street. And second, the wind over there goes from the ocean straight into the homes. So, the odor and the noise goes straight out to, into those homes. That the details are important. Let me see if I missed something. The size of the park. I have a dog at home. The size of the park is about, the size is a little bit bigger than this room, I think. If I will take my dog into a park like this, it, it doesn't make sense. So, that area is perfect for another grass area for people to enjoy, rather than a dog park. I think I'm done.
All right, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Mike Glenn. First, I wanted to clarify something. I know that I've heard this many times, that it's all the coastal commission's fault. We played a game of chicken with the coastal commission on this project. We spent tens of million dollars building a park with no parking. We lost that game. That was an awful gamble on our side, and we should take ownership of it. Blaming it on the coastal commission is simply not fair. But more realistically, the dog park is clearly being presented as an alternative to the existing dog beach. And, but as we've seen with the backlash from the public in removing Dog Beach, removing this dog park is going to be a whole lot harder than putting it in. So, if you're talking about putting it in and then maybe taking it out, it's going to be a real uphill battle, and you're going to take a lot of political damage on that. And so, you guys should consider that before voting today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hey, Lonnie, Doug Tamkin. Could I get the clock reset, please? Because I'm just going to make it through the two minutes, if you don't mind.
She'll reset it when she says back now.
Okay, hi, Doug Tamkin, 22 years at Villa Balboa. The initial study says the sound level of the dog park is going to be lower than the background noise, so we won't hear it. Next slide, please. These sound levels are averages of all the sounds from softest to loudest over a certain period of time, so it looks more like what you see up there. The actual sound has moments when it's much quieter, even during the day. Next, please. Dogs can bark at 80 to 100 decibels, and it looks more like this. So, you will hear dogs barking during those background lulls. The writers of the report also say that there will be no line of sight between Villa Balboa and the dog park, because it's going to be 20 feet below a hill. They say sound travels in straight lines, so we won't hear anything. But there are conditions when sound can curve over an obstacle. This is common, it happens almost every day around here. One of these is when it's windy. We often have a prevailing west wind, and because of obstructions, wind, I'm sorry, next slide. Because of obstructions, wind is slower close to the ground and faster higher up. Sound waves traveling the same direction as the wind are bent or refracted down toward the ground due to the gradient between the faster and slower wind speeds. You will hear dogs when it's windy. Another way sound waves bend is with temperature inversion. Next slide, please. During the evening, air closer to the ground cools off faster than the air higher up. There is a gradient between the warmer and cooler air. Sound waves travel slower through the cooler air, and again, are bent back down towards the ground and over obstacles. When it's windy and there's a temperature inversion, it's going to be even more dramatic. So, more people farther away from the park are going to hear noise than the study claims. So, never mind the numbers, what does it really sound like? Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon and City Council. My name is Wendy Kaiser. I've been a resident of Villa Balboa for 16 years, and I am a dog owner previously and animal lover, so I appreciate the efforts to find another location for a dog park. I just don't think that this is a good fit for the location where it's being proposed. Villa Balboa happens to have in its CCNRs a no-dog policy. We do have dogs that are companion dogs and guide dogs, that kind of thing. But overall, our community is a no-dog community, and has been so, and it's grandfathered into our CCNRs. So, a lot of people that have located there have done so with that understanding that they're not going to have those issues. Maybe they have asthma or allergies or concerns. So, that's one aspect. The, I did submit a letter to the city council with outlining seven concerns that I have. And I believe that one of the most important things is the noise issue, as a previous speaker mentioned, about the breakthrough sounds. And I told my husband, I said, should I go up there? Will I look like a crazy woman if I go, "Bark, bark, bark, bark"? You know, because it's unexpected explosive sound. That when you hear the sound or the hum of PCH, or Superior, or the ocean, that's different, or the Cogen plant, than the "Bark, bark, bark", you know? So, if you live right there, that could get pretty nerve-wracking. And if you're trying to use the tranquil Sunset View Park, that's a passive park, that's a lovely area there. We have people come from Hoag that are employees, and also people that have families there that are dealing with very difficult situations at the hospital. They come for a respite to walk through that park and reflect and sit on the benches. And it's a nice area to watch the ocean and the sunsets and have that quiet area. Hoag Hospital is a quiet zone, and to introduce that very uneven sound into that environment is going to totally destroy the tranquility of the park. The point that goes, the bluff that goes out in your drawings, all three versions there with the dashed line. People come to Newport Beach, and that's kind of one of our entry areas to the city. They go up and they stand and walk on that point. And to lose the bulk of that iconic point would be disappointing. Version number three would be the one I would support, because it would preserve the most of that point. And I would urge us to relook at and re-combat with the coastal commission about getting that cul-de-sac parking access, so that a bigger, more appropriate-sized dog park in a better location could be had on the far side of the playing fields. I think that would be a better solution here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Sandy Frizzell, and I live in Villa Balboa. And where I live, they call Ground Zero. I'm probably the closest, of course, there's three levels, place to the dog park. And I am very concerned about the noise. And dogs barking, I love dogs, but dogs barking, and when they're together, they bark, and that noise does concern me. But at the previous speaker, I just took words really out of my mouth, because my biggest concern is taking away that beautiful viewpoint that is on that dirt mound that is a landscape yet. And you can't replace it once you put the dog park in. I mean, it's there. And you'll, I mean, it will be gone forever. And I think it would be a real shame to destroy that viewpoint for people, because residents enjoy it, visitors enjoy it, and we enjoy it. So, I, I think that would be a mistake for the city to find another place for the park. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Mayor, council members. I'm Susan Wenzel from Corona Del Mar. I'm here in favor of the dog park, and I actually represent two of your constituents who were not able to attend this evening. There is a message that they've recorded for you. If we could get that to be played?
Hey, Newport Beach City Council, handsome Bob here. So, Daisy and I just want to go on record as supporting this new proposed dog park as part of the Sunset View Park Improvement Project. A dog park on the west side of Newport Beach, it's, it's much needed. That's a perfect location, and, you know, we're pretty sure we're going to use it all the time. It's really important to have a place where we can go and be off-leash and run and play and socialize, get out of mom's hair for a little while, give her a shoulder a break. So, we're urging the city council to vote yes for the new dog park. Hey, Newport.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, next speaker.
Council, hi, yes. My name is Carolyn Middlebrooks. I'm a 37-year resident of Newport Beach and a three-year resident of Villa Balboa. And I did attend the dog park meeting that we had. I was, the first thing that I was struck by was the noise and the barking dogs, which, of course, you would expect in a dog park. The other thing was the smell. I don't think I'm overly sensitive to smell. I've had children, you know, I do know what poop smells like. But I was, the urine and everything did offend me. And I don't know how we can possibly prevent that from happening. We have an abundance of dogs in the area. I walk three and four times a week down the access road. There's always dogs, there's always poop. Many people are very responsible, but there are many who are not. I just do not feel that it's a fit. I can tell you that living, I live on the third floor of the, of one of the buildings, and I hear everything that goes, that goes on down in Newport Cove. There was recently a, a building that was torn down, a house was torn down. I thought that they were doing construction right in my, right outside my door. And I couldn't, you know, I looked out and I thought, where is that? And it was down the hill in, in Balboa Coves, coming right up the hill. So, sorry, Andy, and everyone who has done your due diligence. There is a lot of noise that comes up the hill, and I am very concerned that our residents are not going to enjoy their quality of life.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Deborah Giro, and I do have some slides if, that were submitted earlier. Perhaps if the gentleman wants to go first, and then I'll go when the slides are... Oh, there they are. Thank you. I'm a 35-year homeowner in West Newport, and I wanted to put pictures of the park up there, so everybody could really appreciate, and other than the two-dimensional engineering slides, what we're looking at here. We're looking at the green part, Sunset View Park, which the view currently overlooks a roof at Hoag. And we are looking at the brown part, which is the, I guess it's called the earthen knoll, which is scheduled to be completely removed to make the dog park. As you can see from the top of it and its use and wear, it is a greatly appreciated, highly visited space. And one of its attributes is it does not look down on any structure. It doesn't look down on a canopy of a dog park, for example. I think it's very important to think about this dog park in time and place. So, you know, the noise that will now come up to Sunset View Park, which is immediately adjacent, the dog park is anticipated to have a volume almost reaching the maximum residential volume level. The street already is in excess of residential noise levels. And unfortunately, the impact report did not say how all the visitors of Sunset View Park will be impacted. It failed to calculate that, even though I requested what that might look like. I thank the city for looking at other alternatives, and I think the third alternative, which preserves this knoll, this view as much as possible. The city already has a recreational area, beloved by many. It doesn't need a dog park beloved by few. Next slide, please. I just want to show, this is at the, the air show, so many people using it. Next slide, please. Showing dog owners using it at sunset. They will not have this view from the park, by the way. The park will be 20 feet lower and have a six-foot fence around it. Next slide, please. So, the dog park will have a six-foot high fence, shade, benches, water. What else does it add up to? For me, it's a pretty welcoming place for homeless people. And I do not think this is the time or place to consider this in Newport. Next slide, please. The one thing I took away...
Your time's up. Please, can you just wrap it up?
Yes, I will. I read the environmental report thoroughly, and the one thing that was very clear, the safety for the bridge, the additional parking is a super-high priority. The dog park does not have to be that priority. Alternative three is a wonderful alternative. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Bruce Bartram. I've been a 34-year resident of the city of Newport Beach. My comments that I sent in yesterday have to do with the merits of the conclusion of the environmental impact initial study that this project has, merits a mitigated negative declaration. Under the standard, it only takes a fair argument that a project will make significant impacts to the environment. I would submit that Ms. Giro's, Giro's comment, photograph show that the bridge, whether concrete or steel structure, would change the scenic vista of what is present in the current view of the residents. Also, I would ask these city staff, you said you coordinated with the coastal commission staff. Did you get any kind of feedback about your conclusion that this project only merits...
Excuse me, sir, address the question.
Only merits a mitigated negative declaration instead of a full environmental impact report? Could they answer my question?
No, you have, sir, ask us, we'll follow up.
All right, well, okay, could you ask them?
Sure.
Because this raises a bitter battle that occurred with the construction of the park. Mayor Dixon said they didn't allow, the coastal commission didn't allow the city to build a onsite parking lot. That was because you wanted to build it environmentally sensitive, protected habitat. That would have been a violation of the Coastal Act, also would have been a violation of the city's general plan. However, the city was willing to do that, but the coastal commission didn't permit that. It was a very bitter hearing and led to bitter feelings between the city and the coastal commission staff, which is persisted to this day. So, please ask city staff that. You don't want to go before the coastal commission and have your coastal commission development permit, ask to amend it, and they'll say, why didn't you do an EIR?
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Sharon Bowles, and I'm an almost 25-year resident of Newport Crest. We are delighted that we now have a bridge. It will be safer. We've always worried about that. I am, everyone that I've talked to at Newport Crest questions why there would be a dog park. We see this as adding more people to the area, and one of the things we need right now is parking for the park. We understand all the problems with that. We've had to spend extra money to get, to get people out of our residency, because we're not gated. The parking is great, the bridge is great, the landscaping is great. Dog park just does not belong there. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Andy Keller, Villa Balboa. My wife and I have been coming here from Ohio for about 20 years off and on. We just relocated here in Villa Balboa. And one of the reasons we did that was Sunset Park. The view, the quiet, the people, all good. Second point, the realistic part of this is this dog park is literally just a little bit bigger than this room. So, if you can imagine throwing fence, shade, shade covers, and a bunch of dogs, and their size just a little bit bigger than this room, makes absolutely no sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, my name is Terri Christensen. I'm a resident of Villa Balboa for almost 30 years now. I agree with most of the speakers who have spoken against the dog park for all the reasons that they gave. all the reasons that they gave, beginning with the first speaker, the real estate agent in, in the area. He knows very well about home prices and retaining the home prices and the odor and, and security and noise. Definitely three huge areas. One additional piece of information I'd like to add is that the, I get confused between Sunset Park and Sunset Ridge and blah, blah, blah. So we're on the Villa Balboa side, that long skinny park that's right on the bluff there, is only about a minute's walk from the proposed dog park. So I see dog owners taking their dogs up on and then adding to the, the dog and the noise right in front of those units. There are two buildings that are directly above the dog park, and in those two buildings are about over 100 residents, 100 units, pardon me. That's two out of nine buildings in the complex with another few buildings from another homeowners association. That's a lot of people affected who originally purchased, A, for the views and for the serenity and so forth. So all those issues are very important to us as homeowners. I can understand that people with dogs want a nice place, but you don't want the noise coming up to you every single day. People keep their doors and windows open because of the beautiful summers and really weather all year long. Another, another thing that I wanted to point out is that in the 30 years that I've lived there, when I first moved in, there, there was nothing below us, below Hoag Hospital, from Superior to Newport Boulevard along PCH. All of that was like a wet lens. It was a protected area, we were told. So we've given a lot in these years, and I would appreciate that the dog park be placed somewhere else.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Ed Martheller. I love dogs, had many, many of them. I moved into Villa Balboa approximately three years ago. The reason I chose Villa Balboa was because number four in their regs was no dogs are allowed in the Villa Balboas. That's changed, that's okay. But to have a dog park in a place that was specifically no dogs just seems kind of ironic. And the impact that it has on these people that live that close, I can't imagine you would allow that impact to happen. It's not even a block away. I don't think, just a little bit over 200 feet, if I remember the verbiage. Other than that, you've heard all the negatives. Option number three, wow, that would be fantastic, to take that hilltop and turn it into a green area. Parents with kids can use it, children can use it, dogs could, and dog owners can still use it. Seniors can go out there at sunset and enjoy their sunset. It would just be a better use of, I think, the money for more and more people that would have that ability to appreciate that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Lealani, can you tee me up and then get, start me on time? Okay, my name is Mark Wilser, 25-year resident of Newport Beach. And when we heard about the dog park in July, we asked ourselves the question, is the location of a dog park immediately adjacent to high-density residential neighborhoods common practice? And we came to the conclusion through our research, which I'll share a little bit with you, that it is not. I would submit to you that the Civic Center dog park is not an exception. There's only two or three residences across a four-lane road with median. Next slide, please. All the way to Beverly Hills. So you can see, all these dog parks have no, no residences nearby, and I would submit that there's a reason for that. Please go to Beverly Hills. So Beverly Hills, when we get there, again, no residences nearby, is fully surrounded by multi-story industrial and commercial buildings. I did find one dog park, we did find one dog park, next slide, in Chevy Chase, Maryland, that was in the middle of a residential community, and it, in fact, had to be taken down after six or eight months. Brad, I like your idea, but the problem with it is if we shave that big knoll off, we can never get it back. Next slide, please. If you look at a key comparison of, of three dog parks we've talked about, Villa Balboa, or Sunset View Park is not wire in many respects. Compromises in existing, existing use, not the case in the others. Nearby residences, hundreds versus none and few. Surroundings, ice, common access. So it's a destination, dogs come into the area, they'll be immediately in our area. And there's a parking conflict. So you, we, we're building a parking to accommodate youth sports teams, and now out-of-area dog park owners are going to be there. Next slide, please. So we did a survey. We spent several hundred dollars and several hundred hours doing a survey. 450 local homeowners by U.S. Mail, 23% response rate. That is strong conviction. There are very few direct mail surveys that get 23% response rate. We had robust tracking, which I've shared with five of the city council members that were nice enough to meet with us. And in that robust tracking, we, we tracked name, email address, phone. People responded to a dedicated email and a voicemail. So they weren't talking to someone, there was no games playing in terms of, you know, trying to convince them otherwise or whatnot. 87% of the people that responded to the survey were opposed. 87%. And again, that just shows huge conviction and broad base of people. And again, Brad, I, I really appreciate your good-faith discussion of, well, we can always back out of it. But really, the key use is, is option three, because it maximizes the space at, at elevation where you preserve the view, right? So having space down below isn't that valuable. It's not that, it's not, this space is unique.
Please, please can quote your remarks.
Yeah. So I, I would just really compel you to please think seriously about option three. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Cara Kirby. I'm a almost 20-year resident of Newport Beach and a homeowner in Newport Heights. And probably not going to have a super popular opinion with a lot of the people back here, but I would ask you to strongly consider putting this dog park in. I no longer own a dog. My dog died, but I walked from Newport Heights over through the Sunset View Park on a regular basis, at least twice a week. We had a loop that we did. And this was after my dog had, was a little bit older, because when he was younger, I actually had knee surgery, which led me to come over to the dog park at the Civic Center right over here. So I, on a daily basis, because I was incapacitated after surgery, would drive over from essentially right by a restaurant, all the way over to Civic Center Park, go to the dog park, met a lot of people. It was a great opportunity, but I know the value of it, and it's something that would be so appreciated and so used. And forgive me if I'm wrong, but I thought this was city property. And I think that it should be accessible to all citizens. And most dog owners I know, they're grumbly, 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 but I'm a high school teacher, so I can take it. But most citizens are responsible, especially right over there. I know exactly where it is. There's the bags that I would stock up on so that I didn't leave anything behind, especially within the park zone. If there are bags available, most competent people will use them. I know that this has been in the works for a long time. In fact, my dog was in a picture in the Daily Pilot with the article that came out on March 5, 2015, saying, we think we've got it, essentially. So I would just strongly urge you to support this. I really think it would bring great value to a lot of citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Menace, and I am a resident at Villa Balboa as well. I am a healthcare provider, and I know there are many people living in, in Villa Balboa that are healthcare providers. So for the past 35 years, I've given my best to the public and, and to make them healthy and happy, but I think we need to consider the healthcare providers as well. I personally work some evening shifts and go to bed at 6:00 in the morning. And the, the thought of having to put up with dogs barking and cars roaring up and down the street is unconscionable. When do dogs become more important than people? So I beg you to please consider something, somewhere else for the dog park. The third option seemed very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Gloria Miller. I've lived in Newport Beach for probably 20 years now. I'm also a healthcare provider. And I believe this location is wrong. I don't think it's fair to put animals in the middle of roads, even though they're caged and they have fences. I believe it presents a lot of harm to them. People, dogs, bikers, autos, there's too much going on in there. I've been walking up and down all hours of the day, evening, nights, and coyotes are out. And coyotes are now out at 10 o'clock in the morning. They're also out at 6:00 at night. And it's going to present a big problem with coyotes, people, children, bikes, autos. And I think it's a huge liability to the city of Newport to have the coyotes out with people biting and the scent of dogs, and they're hungry for coyotes. I recently did have a dog, and I live in Villa Balboa, and it was hit on Superior. They do run away, and when they do, they could get hit by a car. So I would like to forewarn you the dangers and liability. I believe that dogs deserve a safe environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name's Marnie Tucker. I was raised in Newport Beach. I've lived most of my life in Newport Beach. I have four dogs. I've taken them to Bark Park, I've taken them to Dog Beach, and I've walked them on leash in numerous parks throughout Orange County. I'm very much a dog person, and I'm very much against this dog park. That's just not a good location for a dog park, for many reasons that people have brought up. I would say really to preserve the ambiance of Newport, leave it as it is, or make green areas, whatever, but putting a dog park there is going to be a big mistake. And I'm a dog person, so I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Dixon and the city council. Appreciate your time and attention and your hard work. My name is Gina Rios. I've lived in Villa Balboa for 15 years and have lived and worked in the community for over 20. Thanks, I wanted to say, the environment we live in next to the proposed off-leash dog park is serene and tranquil. People from all over the community and all over the world come to stand on that hill to watch the sunset every night. Artists, photographers, patients, and workers from the hospital and cancer center, which is right there by the dog park, and the childcare center at Hoag, are all surrounding the proposed dog park. And the rehab that is also next to that area utilized this as a therapeutic walking zone, the green belt that is existing at this moment. And we had a rule for over a decade for CCNRs of the, no, having no dogs. And there are people with therapy pets, but it's a minority group of them. Most people are over 40, and it's a senior community there. And it, it is, it doesn't fit with the surrounding community that, and should be somewhere more complimentary and safer. The park across the street is suitable for on-leash dogs, but an off-leash dog park will create chaos and be a source of many future complaints and environmental issues. Please take into consideration the calm and restful vibe that we have in our community, and we welcome everybody to continue to access the peace that we all share already. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, 26-year resident of Villa Balboa. A prior speaker didn't have a chance to mention that she had researched the size of the dog park is only-
Could you say your name, please? Your na, your name?
Shuster.
Sorry, sorry.
A prior speaker didn't have time to mention that the size of the dog park is only 20% of the size recommended by the Humane Society. And on to my comments. There was a councilman tonight that said, everyone has a right to live peacefully 24 hours per day. Please take this statement into account. People are not responsible. I live right there with a little patch of green grass, and the dogs poo poo, and it's not picked up. Please consider the residents who pay dearly a price per square foot for the views and the beautiful scenery. Please consider how a destination dog park next to a no-dog policy community eliminates the right to live peacefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
David Lucado, three-year Newport Beach resident. Good af, good evening, council. I arguably live in the closest residence to the proposed dog park, a little over 200 feet away on the first level. And I will tell you that the wall that separates my patio from the dog park is lower than this table. So for a medium-sized dog to jump over the wall is very easy. It'd be very attainable. I have an 11-month-old child. I have another child due in about three weeks. And the last thing I want to be worried about is a dog off-leash attacking one of my children. As they sit on the patio, you know, if an adult looks away for a second, a dog off-leash can easily jump this, if you want to call it retaining wall, you can, but it's, like I said, lower than this level here, so probably about 30 inches high. From working in personal injury litigation for over 12 years now, I've seen the horrific injuries that dogs cause adults and unspeakable injuries that dogs can cause children. I think this dog park is better proposed elsewhere, considering the size limitations that this area permits. And I, like a lot of other people, I really like option number three, where we keep that beautiful view available for all residents. And I do want to second one thing that someone said earlier. This part of Newport Beach is very close to Costa Mesa, and they obviously have their issues with night walkers, crystal meth tweakers, whatever you want to call them, but they're not far away. Increasing the traffic with a dog park is going to do nothing but increase panhandling in this area. Those people are also going to be closer to my children, and that's something I do not want. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Parthiban. I'm a proud owner of one of the Villa Balboa condos. I bought this condo, which is the closest to the Sunset View Park, mainly because of the view and the serenity. If you come out there and see in the evening, it's such a beautiful sight, and very, very beautiful sight. And a lot of people I see come only for the sunset. And why do you want to spoil those views by the, you know, dark park and the scent? It's a bad, it's a bad idea. So if you want to oppose this, and I would like to request you to, you know, vote no on this. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, ma, mayor, good evening, council members. My name is Suresh Parikh. I live in Villa Balboa, just moved three years back. And the only reason that we moved here is the view. You can have a million-dollar view from the point where I live. And with the, with the proposed dog park, the, the earth mound would be taken away. There is nothing to enjoy about the view. And lastly, the property value will be down by approximately 25%. We are talking about, the whole Villa Balboa valuation is like $350 million. You can safely bet the property values will, will be down by 80 to 90 million dollars. Leave aside the other Newport Crest owners and the other owners across the street. So please, I mean, nobody would like to move into a community where a dog park is in their front yard. Please be considerate and make some other use, some like, the old alternative three is a good alternative to have the use of this land. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name's Robert Bone. I've been a resident of Villa Balboa for 16 years. And I agree with everything everyone said. And more to the point with the, living in Newport Beach is about the natural beauty and the ambiance, and this dog park would not add to that, would, would take it away. So I don't, I, I would go with option three. I don't, I don't know why it would have to be in this location.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon and all the council members. My name is Rainu Parthiban. And we mainly bought this condo in Villa Balboa about seven years back, thinking that once you come back from work and you sit in your patio. And, and just for your information, we are the people who are most affected because we are closest to the dog park and the Sunset View Park. And our wall is hardly two feet, and anybody can jump in or, we are not jumping out, but jump in. And so, once you come back from your work in the evening, you want to relax in your patio and just look at the view and enjoy. And that's the main reason why we bought this place. And now I've, we have already lost our privacy due to the Sunset View Park because there's, there's so much crowd there. I can live with it still, but not with the barking dogs, with the dog park. And in future, I don't want to- And in future, I don't want to lose my hearing as well as the noise and the odor from, like everyone mentioned, I agree to everyone here who have opposed the dog park. So my humble request is that please make use of a better, make use of this place for a better thing, for another park or something like that, but no dog park, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name's Michael Kahl. I'm in favor of the alternative number three. And in fact, if the city clerk could put that on the slide there, it sure would be appreciated. I know it's not been scheduled, but basically, let's be very clear. This is not an anti-dog movement. This is, we want to have dogs, we want to have the dogs in the park, on the leashes. There's no attempt here to, you know, separate dogs from the people here. And there is a present use. I know that staff has been suggesting that it's an undeveloped area, therefore, there's no use. There is a use. There's picnics, there's recreation, there's couples that walk there romantically in the evening. And there are a lot of individuals that come out and sort of contemplate and look at the sun. So even though it's not actually developed, it is, there are uses there. I was there just last night, and I looked down the coast, and I actually was able to see Pacific Palisades from that location, and Palos Verdes Catalinas, San Clemente Island, and south of Dana Point. Now, the purpose of looking at the slide is very important because, as you can see, the altitude, or the elevation, I should say, is 75 feet. If the mound is removed, and once it's removed, Councilman Avery, they're not going to bring it back, unfortunately, respectfully submitted. So once this use, the present use as a park, even though it's not developed, it is the view park now. And once that mound is removed, all of the uses that I just talked about, picnics, gone. Families coming out and standing there looking at the view, gone. That's going to come down to 25 feet and, as per the drawing. Oh, wow. 25 feet. All of the existing uses will come to an end. The argument that suggests that people will be going to this location from the dog park on the beach is ridiculous because those individuals are down there, they're in the surf, the dogs are in the surf, they're running and all that. I wonder if everybody could, that have the pictures-
Excuse me, sir, you're out of time.
Thank you very much. Could actually show those pictures now because those individuals are in support of alternative three.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name's David Schnitzer. I've been a resident of Newport Beach for five years. My wife and I moved from Manhattan, New York, and when we moved out here, we thought open space. We had the dog beach initially, and then that was kind of taken away. I'd be lying if I said I didn't sneak down there every once in a while, but, you know, if we want to take our dog off-leash, we have to either go to the Civic Center or to the Bark Park, and it's 15, 20 minutes. And I think that's a great spot. I'm obviously in favor of it, but I just don't know why it has to be mutually exclusive, and it can't be a shared space. I understand people's concerns of living close by, but I think, you know, by them gesturing of three-foot-high walls being almost a football field away, they might be, you know, amplified a bit. Well, 260 feet is a football, 300 is a football field, so. So I think it might just be a little bit overblown, and that's not a popular opinion here, but, you know, we need a space for our dogs, and we really don't have anywhere right now. So that's really it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Seppi. Good evening, members of the council. I also am a resident of Villa Balboa, and I am also a healthcare provider, so I do work late nights, and I do rely on my sleep. And the reason why I moved to Villa Balboa was the serenity, the peacefulness, the beautiful views. There are a lot of great points that were mentioned, just about traffic, noise, but I really wanted to focus on the community because that's what we've been talking about this whole time, is a sense of community. So every night, me and my husband do walk there. We're newlyweds. We appreciate the views. We see a lot of children out there. We see a lot of people with dogs. I love dogs, but it's nice to keep that area open to everybody, not just people with dogs. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Sherri Campanioni. I'm a 16-year resident also at Villa Balboa. And when I moved in, I'm one of the front units as well, top floor. We had a reserve. It was like a little park in front of us. It was for the birds and all the critters, and they tore it down and put up a parking lot. And it reminds me of that song, and it made me really sad. And now they want to tear down this knoll that's, I mean, luckily, I'm not down at that end, but that blocks noise from PCH. No one's really mentioned that. Once that land's gone, you're going to hear more noise even from the traffic on PCH. Not to mention the traffic that's going down Superior now in the summertime, it's gridlock. You can't even get in and out of Villa Balboa unless you're on your bicycle. And here you want to make, not y'all personally, but here they want to put in, you know, a park that's going to double it, and those people are going to spill over, and they're going to come up right in front of our condos and walk their dogs up there as well, and poo, and do all the things that they do up there. So it's going to spill over up there no matter what. So really appreciate if you think twice about not voting on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name's Chris Nelson. I've lived in the neighborhood for about 15 years. As a frequent park user for both those parks, I just wanted to maybe throw out another idea that I actually, I have to agree with most of them, that I think with most people that think the option three is a, is a good option because that park is, that knoll is used so much by people to view the sunsets and the pretty views from there. But as a frequent park user for the park across the road, which is, that's not Ridge, but anyways, the city really does need more locations for dogs. I do a lot of activities over there where I'm actually in the grass, on the grass. I see how often that park is used, the grass area is used by dogs, and whether homeowners or whether dog owners are picking up after their dogs or not, you're still left with a residue, and that's a concern that any of the park users who are, who have their kids playing in the park should be concerned about. So just wanted to introduce that perspective, that we definitely need more access for dogs in that area where it's not used, it's not the grass areas that are used by people using the grass itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. David Tanner. I want to give you some different considerations to think about in your deliberations. I live and walk by the Sunset Ridge Park and know the parking lot very well as a result. I've observed how people access Sunset Ridge Park. It has limited access, in my opinion. During non-summer months, the Superior parking lot is often half-full. That's borne out by the pictures in your staff report. You'll see that during the summer months, the parking lot is often full, in my opinion, with people that use the beach. So I agree with the objectives to get more people to use the park, the Sunset Ridge Park. However, I'm not convinced the project will achieve the project's objective. I'm concerned the increase in parking spaces by the increase in the parking lot will be dominated by people going to the beach. And the construction of the bridge, whose primary user will come from people in the parking lot, will not significantly increase the use of the park. So should you choose to approve something tonight, I have the following recommendations for you. First, prior to going forward with the detailed design, the approval of the contract or going to the Coastal Commission, conduct surveys to determine if the project will in fact significantly increase park usage. Reevaluate the parking structure option, which is part of your staff report, which wasn't talked about tonight, to seek additional sources of funding, possibly to help alleviate parking shortages on the peninsula. Consider a pilot program, restricting parking on a portion of the existing, or if you approve something, proposed parking lot for park use only, to determine if this measure significantly increases park usage. Do not move forward with the design or construction of the bridge until such time as, I'll wrap it up, as the significant increase in parking usage can be demonstrated. And finally, Newport Beach has a limited number of sites suitable for parking structures. Whatever you do, keep this in mind, even if it's in a temporary mode. We need parking for the future residents and to help people to have parking situations on the peninsula where they don't have room for guests or anything like that. So keep this in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council members. Philip Thompson. I am a resident of Villa Balboa and a dog lover, and I do agree that we do need places for dogs. I just want to add just a couple of quick points that I don't think have been mentioned tonight, and that is, there recently was a donation of $50 million towards Benning Ranch. I'm hopeful that probably something's going to happen there fairly soon, and maybe we should be considering that as the location for the dog park as opposed to this location. Secondly, one thing we haven't mentioned, or hasn't been mentioned, is the noise level generated by people whistling and calling for their dog, which may actually be higher than the dog barking from time to time. Some people have very high-pitched whistles, and I think that should be brought into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Jack Rose. I'm in the Ebtide Community, just down the street. Also, I have a place in Newport Crest as well. So I appreciated the staff's presentation at the beginning. I thought it was well done. I thought it was very thorough and thoughtful in how they showed the conceptuals, and I really appreciated that. I also appreciate the history of how Sunset Ridge Park came about. I've been in the community for three to four years now, and so I was here after that. So I did, I just was a beneficiary of having that park, and it's a very nice park to have in our community. But as I listen, I start to think about it, and it seems like we're kind of digging the hole and digging it deeper now with the parking situation because it's a, I think our city's very fiscally thrifty, and I like that. And actually, I think it's past Mr. McCaffrey's bedtime because I thought if he was here, he'd be really excited about this because I really kind of question whether we should spend this money on this park. It's not this park, but this bridge altogether. The reason being is, I didn't hear anybody coming here tonight to talk about, besides the Parks Department, talking about how they're so excited about these organized sporting events. Nobody came here. I didn't hear anybody saying, hey, I've got all these kids, I want to show up to this thing, and I thought I'd see a bunch of little leaguers or something, or soccer players. Didn't see anybody. But I did see the people that live in a community that, that don't have dogs allowed in their community, and then they're going to get a dog park right next to them, which I thought was kind of, kind of actually appalling, that we kind of offered that up to them, that we shouldn't be having a dog park next to that community because they are not, you know, conducive to that. But I did not see any organized sporting event people here. So that kind of made me think like, okay, so now we're going to build a bridge over to a park from a parking lot, and I kind of questioned like, how many people are actually going to be using it for that purpose? And then I'm starting to go like, oh, yeah, I know who uses that bridge. It'd be somebody like me that will have to cross Pacific Coast Highway, but memo to me, there's no bridge crossing Pacific Coast Highway. It's only going over Superior. So anyhow, I just kind of question whether this is a good value of our money to begin with. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Continuing the open government theme of my previous two comments, I recall PBR appointing a dog park ad hoc committee, but I'm a little mystified by the city council working group we heard about in the first slide. This afternoon, I picked up a copy of our current roster, boards and commissions and committees, and I, I don't see that one on it. As to the bridge and the mitigated negative declaration, it's evidently very subjective, what people regard as a visual impact being significant or not. All of the bridge designs look impactful significantly to me, not to mention, which was not emphasized, drivers going along Pacific Coast Highway who currently see a landscaped semi-park area are now going to see a massive retaining wall. It's like 20 feet tall. As to dog park, I think the concerns, I would guess, are a little bit overblown, but I do believe that when we have an area that's uniquely valuable for people, it should be reserved for people rather than for dogs. I would point out that if we're having dog parks, we need to amend our municipal code at some point to make them legal. Currently, we don't have anything that allows off-leash dogs anywhere. And I would point out that this would not be our second dog park. We already have a dog park approved at what is called Newport Crossings in the airport area, which is a development of 350 new residences. It had a dog park incorporated into it. We're facing, as we heard earlier today, adding 4,832 units, which probably will have 50 acres of parks that go with them. There probably will be opportunities there where the dog park could be built in. And finally, like many people here, I support the alternative three, primarily because it's the one that's most in harmony with our general plan, natural land, natural resources element, policy 23.1, which directs us in all our decisions to try to preserve the natural topography and do development that minimizes alteration of it. Sadly, this whole area has been obliterated by Caltrans, very little of it is natural, but we should try to preserve what we have. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name's Jim Kaiser. I'm a resident of Villa Balboa, been there for about 16 years or so. And I'm a retired policeman, and I'll tell you, the most dangerous thing you'll ever do in your life is cross the street, so I'm fully in support of the bridge. I think that's a very good idea. But the dog park, I think, is a really bad idea. Yes, you know, so many people are opposed to it. I would greatly recommend, you know, approving the bridge and not approving the dog park. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, let's bring it back up here. I just want to ask a clarifying question. As a city manager, did you have, do you happen to have with you the totals of the total letters received on this item?
I do. Up and through 4:08 PM today, we had received, in support, 139 emails and opposed, 116.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Avery.
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight for this, and I know we've got homes sitting there waiting for you, and it's been a long haul. We get in these positions where we're trying to deliver something good, and we go to a lot of effort and a lot of studies, but ultimately, I think, the way I feel is that residents who are going to be impacted by our decisions, on balance, need to be given more weight on these things because it's their home. And when it comes to people's homes, that's a very large, that's a big thing. And so, it just, it seems to me that tide on this is, is difficult. We try to deliver something and maximize public space. One of the things that concerns me is just sort of, in some of the comments, the resistance to the public accessing these areas. Because this is city land, and it belongs to the public, and a full parking lot is a good thing. That means we're using it. And if parking is a problem, well, that's the way it is. But we want to maximize that usage and do the very best thing we can on balance for the city. And when the plant, when PBR votes 7-0, the ad hoc committee looks around and says, this is the best space. Our PBR, our PBR and director supports it. It's compelling for us up here. We want to support staff. And I'm not speaking, I'm basically speaking for myself here, but I think we, each of us up here also has to put ourselves in the position of being a homeowner and having a dog park built 260 feet away. a homeowner and having a dog park built 260 feet away, and it's a serious deal. And I don't think personally that it would have the impacts that were stated here tonight. But that doesn't mean there wouldn't just be the impact of the feeling, the, you know, it's more of a, it's more in your head than anything else. There's a reality to it, but this is hitting on several different fronts for residents. So I don't particularly like flipping on things, but I feel that on balance, I don't, given the testimony here tonight, people coming forward, the lack of people coming from the other side, even though we had the letters, we're pretty close, but I'm going to support option three. Thank you.
Please don't. Ms. Brenner.
I'm going to be kind of all over the place here, because my thinking has gone back and forth and all around, and I read most of the emails. I at least got the gist of all the ones that I didn't read in their entirety. I didn't meet with people from either side. I wanted to just kind of try and get all these impressions and facts down in my head. I did walk the site today with staff and with Councilman Herdman. I kind of in the back of my mind don't think that the impact would be as dramatic as you fear it is, but I don't know that. And I would hate to get into the position of finding out that your fears are absolutely justified after we've gone to all the trouble and expense of doing this. I have, part of me says, you know, if you live in a city like this, is it a right to have a dog run off leash? I see them down at the River Jetty, or at the, what's it called, Mike? The San Ana River mouth, and they look so happy, and I can appreciate how wonderful that is to let them run around like that, but yet at the same time, if you live in a community like this, maybe that's a little bit unrealistic to think that we should all be able to let our dogs run off leash all the time. But I'll tell you, the determining factor for me was today, when I was out there, and I stood on that knoll, which I know it's not a natural, it's not a natural occurrence, it was put there, but that view is so spectacular. And I cannot vote in favor of digging that down to put a dog park there. So for me, I'm going to agree with, I'm glad I can agree with Councilman Avery, whose district this is, because I feel like alternate three is a compromise. It's not telling people with their dogs on leashes that they can't use this park. It's allowing them to use the park. It's allowing the people that live there to use the park. It's allowing people that come with their kids to go across the street to use the park. And the argument about not having a lot of sports teams here tonight, I'll tell you, we cannot get them to show up at meetings like this, because they've got kids they've got in bed. So the fact that they're not here doesn't mean that they don't really care about having that parking lot and a safe access across the street for their kids to get to the sports field. So after all of that, and I know it's sort of schizophrenic, but I just have to agree with Councilman Avery that alternate three is our best option here.
Please, 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 please. Any other comments up here?
I'll make a comment or two. I think tonight has been informative. I'm sorry that more people, Alan's participation of community comments has not been here, as reasons Ms. Brenner just said, and a lot of people can't be here this late at night and their children. I do know from staff that sports teams would, I mean, I believe what you're telling us, that sport teams would participate, but parking and safety access across Superior has been really an obstacle to the full utilization of that space. While I appreciate the sentiments expressed by the residents, I will say that it, that the argument that it's public property rings strong in my mind. It is to been, that property, whatever it's, a knoll, whether it's green grass, whatever the use is, as determined by the city, it's public property. And just because there's a facility adjacent that happened to develop at CCNRs to say, no dogs, did not mean that that determines the surrounding property uses. I don't think the two are related at all, and that almost offends me, that the public should be limited to their, whatever potential use of that property is because of the neighboring CCNRs. I think the two are not even connected. I have tremendous respect for our PBNR commission, and their vote, whether it's six or seven to zero, I've seen a number of times on the council when, whether it's a Harvard commissioner or library trustees, or in this case, PBNR, they make a recommendation, go through the process, and then have the council go in an opposite direction. That sends a difficult message back to the commission that, just a difficult message. So I'm torn too. I respect my colleague, Mr. Avery, and this is his district, and that carries a lot of weight. It's adjacent to my district, that carries a lot of weight too. We did, as I questioned, we did get 139 letters of yes, slightly more than 116 no. And it makes it difficult. One other comment that I think is, in my mind, is not relevant, is the views. You have beautiful views. Those views from Villa Balboa are priceless in our community. They will not be obstructed for whatever is down there. I don't, I don't know what you possibly can imagine that is down that hill, that you could see a dog park or a picnic table, whatever ends up being there. I think that is such a specious argument to suggest that your view is going to be obstructed. You have the most, you have a multimillion dollar view from any window, any living room window or bedroom window, and that beautiful development, and to think that your view is compromised, I think is, I don't accept that. Having said that, I, the reason that I'm leaning towards going to alternative three, and please don't clap, or I'll change my mind, is that I think it is too small. The woman who spoke about the size that the Humane Society recommends, I don't know, Laura, if staff looked at what Humane Society recommends for minimum sizes for dog parks. I have two big dogs, and they'd love to run off leash anywhere. They never have. They've never run off leash. I'm concerned that that would be, if it's this size, as was said, it's maybe good for small dogs, but not big dogs. I don't believe the dog barking. I mean, dog barking is, it's not a kennel, it's just dogs could be barking. I think the hours of operation, we're in the staff report, I would not support those hours of operation. I think 11 o'clock at night is too late to have a dog park open. Was that intentional, or was that a typographical error?
The parks in our city are open till 11, but the dog park here, it closes at dusk, and we would do the same with any other one.
That would be, that would be my thought process, too. But in the spirit of trying to, I always like to find a compromise, we could draw things together. I want it to be a park. I don't know if that knoll, is an alternative three, the knoll comes down anyway, right? Oh. I mean, the knoll, didn't you say once, Duffy, that that was a remnant of the freeway, 55 or something? That's where the soil came from, the dirt came from, or down the, but where did it come from?
The knoll, I don't know. But the, 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 now.
Oh. So it's not, it's not like it's a thousand-year knoll or something? Anyway, so we have a motion on the floor. Were you going to say something? Oh, I thought it says motion to adopt. Is that not right?
Make that motion.
You did make a motion?
No, but I will.
Okay. Do we have a second?
To adopt option three.
Option three.
So it'd be move staff's recommendation with D3 and adding the errata sheet that was handed out as part of the motion.
What was the errata? I forget, what was that?
It's related to the environmental document. There's a few technical issues.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. All right. Do we have a second? Ms. Brenner is going to second. Okay, folks, are we ready? Let's vote. Motion to support option three.
The motion carries unanimously 6-0.
Don't clap, don't clap. Please do not clap. Thank you. All right, we'll move to, let everybody, if you want to leave. Well, it's getting late, let's keep moving. All right, number 22, it's a public hearing on the California Building. Standards, please exit quietly, please. We're still proceeding with our council. Please exit quietly. Please exit quietly. It's late, we'd like to keep moving. All right, it's an ordinance, adoption, public hearing on the California Building Standards Code. Staff, would you like to proceed? Do we need a report on this? We've already heard a report.
This is the second reading.
This is the second reading. All right. Any comments or questions? No, let's put it out to public, open the public hearing. Public hearing on the Building Standards Code amendments. Seeing no comments in public hearing, we'll bring it back. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. A motion by Mayor Protem, second by Councilmember Muldoon. Let's vote.
Okay, and prior to reading the vote, I'm sorry, I have to read the ordinance title. Ordinance number 2019-17, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending Title 15 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to adopt amendments to Chapter 1, Division 2 of the 2019 California Building Code designated as the Newport Beach Administrative Code, 2019 California Historical Code, 2019 California Existing Building Code, 2019 California Green Building Standards Code, and 2019 California Energy Code, 2018 International Property Maintenance Code with local amendments, 2019 Edition of the California Building Code, 2019 Edition of the California Residential Code, 2019 California Electrical Code, 2019 California Mechanical Code, 2019 California Plumbing Code, 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code with local amendments, and amending Chapter 15.10, and ordinance number 2019-18, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending Title 9 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to adopt a 2019 Edition of the California Fire Code as set forth in Title 24, Part 9 of the California Code of Regulations with local amendments. The motion carries unanimously 7-0.
Very good. All right.
Nice.
Item 23, conduct Proposition 218, public hearing and consider a water rate increase. Mr. Bukojewicz, you would like to make a brief staff report?
Yes, thank you. Very brief presentation.
We've had this before.
So we have in your packet tonight, a complete presentation and a complete staff report regarding our 2019 water rate study and our recommended increases and changes to the water rates. There is a detailed presentation there. I'm not going to go through that unless you have any particular questions, but I just want to emphasize that in terms of the information, you know, we've been to council here several times before, we've done quite a bit of outreach, had some, you know, newspaper articles out there as well, too, about this. We mailed all of our public notices to all the residents, and then we have received a few comments and responses since then, and I think the city clerk's going to speak to that here in just a moment, so we can open the public hearing and take questions and responses.
Okay. City clerk, did you want to make a comment?
I just want to report that as of the 27,324 pieces of mailing, we only received five protests from property owners and none from non-property owners.
And I'll just add, Mayor, we received nine phone calls as well, too.
Pro or con, or just inquiries?
Some of them were inquiries, and some of them were against.
Okay. All right. I don't see any comments up here. Let's open the public hearing. We'll go out to the public. Any comments from the public, please?
Hi, Mike Glenn. I know that we run our own municipal water supply, so the numbers can get a little bit odd. I know that we share a lot of funding with, say, for instance, our city employees who pull out of a different fund, we've got unfunded pension liabilities. All these things wind up winding themselves into the water contract. People from Mesa Water have repeatedly said that if we partner them, they can lower their rates as well as ours, because their biggest expense is keeping the pumps on, it's not the water itself. If I have a pump at my house, it costs me $100 a month to run, and you move in next door, we split the cost, it's now 50 bucks a month to run. Same scenario with Mesa Water. So I'm curious, in accordance to Prop 218, have we accounted for the costs of the unfunded pension liabilities and the city workers that are in the water, the, all of the items that we are using, and have we compared those to the surrounding areas, such as Irvine Water Company and Mesa Water, that would be able to partner with us and, in fact, already have the pipes connected that they can literally turn on, and have done this for emergency purposes? Have we considered those costs, and have we compared them with the surrounding areas to see if we can save money all the way around, in accordance to Prop 218?
Okay, thank you. Next public comment, please.
Good evening, council members. It's the end of the evening, so my name is Ryan Reza Farsai, and I'm here to talk about the history of water. As you know, who controls the water is king and controls the kingdom. So let's talk about the history of water. So in 1907, Knickerbocker Panic happened at the run of the banks, and the Rotarians were created. All of you guys are Rotarians, right? So the lawyers and the lawmakers, they proposed to give the water back to the public, but that's exactly what did not happen. So the Federal Reserve was created five years later, as we know, and those are the families that control the water at the banks, and they're all working together with the plumbers and the lawyers and bankers and all the firemen, police officers, everyone knows what's going on. The average person does not know what's going on. So I just wanted to bring it out there. Water comes from Mother Nature, but laws in place today in the United States and in the world means that if you're a property owner and you install a well or containment device to pool or gather the water, the city will want to come and put a meter on it and start collecting their money. Today is my understanding that our water in Newport comes from the Fountain Valley Aquifier. So the owner of the water is the Fountain Valley Aquifier, sells it to the county, the county sells it to the city, and then the city sells it to the citizens. So it is my understanding that every year, for the last few years, the city's revenue has been increasing about $1 to $2 million annually, but as you know, the future forecast for the economy does not look so good, so maybe you guys are not anticipating more revenue from property taxes. So as a result, you got to figure out new ways to come up with revenue. So on March 15th, the state of California officially stated that they're not in a drought. But ironically, on March 12th, the city instructed an analyst to study the, study rates. And as I spoke earlier tonight, the CPI for 2018 was 1.9%, and 2016 and 17 was 2.1%. So my question for the city is, how do we justify a 7.4% increase annually for the next four or five years? When there's no drought in place, the CPI is at 2.1%. And so my father always says, instead of making complaints, why don't you make suggestions? So my suggestion is that, you know, you guys have a restriction on watering in the city of Newport Beach every other day, right? So considering that we're not in a drought, why don't you remove that restriction, city managers, city council members, so you can increase your revenue, as opposed to increasing it by almost 50% over the next few years? I'm a property owner, and, you know, you raise our rents like 7.5% every three years or something, that's kind of a little excessive, but this is standard lease. But to go 7.5% every year, that's a little bit excessive. So that's just my opinion, I'm just sharing it with you. This is America, and God bless America. Thank you for your time and consideration on my request to consider alternative routes to increase your revenue. Thank you. And fight on, Trojans, let's go ahead and beat those UCLA Bruins on Saturday. Thank you. Peace out.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? Please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I did not file a protest. I'm not protesting the rate increase, and I I'm not protesting the rate increase and I'm hoping not to do what I inadvertently did a number of years ago when a previous council was considering the sewer rate increase and I pointed out some inequities in the rate structure that was being proposed and it actually caused one of the council people to change their vote and the city staff had to do the Proposition 218, noticing all over again with a slightly modified formula. I am hoping that when we come to the next rate increase, which might be five years from now, might be 10 years from now, that we do make a better effort, now that I understand the water rate process a little better, to, to do this allocation of the fixed rates to different users a little more scientifically or equitably than we do now. When this was presented to the Finance Committee, I understand, we, we have this structure where we have different rates for people with different sized meters. I believe the Finance Committee was told the reason we do that is because we're char, we build our infrastructure not for what people use, but for what they could use based on their meter size. And I've since learned that that's not true. Our average water use in Newport Beach is about 8,000 gallons per minute. That's how much we use. Our system is designed to supply that much water and about three times that much during a peak. So that's like maybe 24,000 gallons per minute. If all of these meters were turned on at their capacity, it would be a million gallons per minute that we would have to supply. So we're not building the infrastructure based on the meter sizes, we're building it based on how much the people actually use. And we know which accounts have meters of which size, and I would advocate the next time that we do this, study of this kind, that we actually look at our billing and find out how much is being used by the people with five eighths meters, the two inch, the three inch, the four inch, and divide the costs up as to who is using it, because that is what our structure is being built for, not for the meter sizes. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Please come forward. Seeing none, let's close the public hearing and come back to Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yep, so to answer a couple of questions, pension costs are included in Appendix 1 of the water rate study. To answer the question on the question of IRWD or Mesa Water, IRWD, it's tough to compare because they've got, they show up on residential tax bills. We did a cost comparison, rate study on the difference between Mesa and ours. Mesa's more expensive than ours at the moment, even with the adoption of these increased rates. On the question of seven and a half percent, that's covered pretty extensively in the water rate study as well as the presentations given to the Finance Committee and given to the study session and, and it's almost entirely driven by substantial increases in infrastructure costs as well as the commodity costs that are coming to us from Met. So with that, I'll move staff recommendation.
I have a second. Mr. Avery, you had a question?
I just wanted to commend Director Bukojewick for running a great operation and bringing this in for a landing and it's just, I think, I always say this, I just, we all get here up here and you, you tour a facility and you just realize how much effort and work goes into delivering water to the citizens of Newport Beach on a consistent, safe basis. It's huge and I can't say enough about it. So we, it's, we're an amazing city and this is just a star program, one of many of the star programs in our city that residents, they shouldn't have to appreciate it more, it just comes and it's great. So we just kind of go about the work and thank you so much for those efforts.
I, I just want to mention though too, I've, this past year as mayor, I've been to a number of sites around the city where we've had aging infrastructure burst, break, open up and cause emergency situations, costly situations. The one on Jamboree and PCH, I guess earlier last winter, is huge. And so we do, we have pipes that are what, 85, 75 years old? And part of this rate increase is to fund the, the infrastructure, as Mayor Protem said, to, to provide that reserve because we know that those pipes are going to continue to be replaced and need to be replaced. Also, in the eventuality that there is a drought, my understanding is that part of this rate increase will preserve, reserve some funds for covering that decrease in water usage to get us through those drought periods. So I want to commend staff and the outside consultants that worked with us this entire year. We've been in meetings on this, as you've taken us through the process and we've looked at different considerations. At the end of the day, the annual cost is the cost of a pizza with extra pepperoni. I mean, that's just really what it comes down to on a yearly increase. And based, just to echo what Mr. Avery said, our, our community turns on their water faucet, we all do every day, all day long, and the water is clear, pure, and always there. And so I commend you for the excellent work that, and preparation to put this together in a way that 99.9% of our residents seem to be supportive of. So in the interest of time, I will say, let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, the motion was made by Mayor Protem, modell and segmented by the mayor. Ordinance number 2019-16, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach amending Chapter 14.12 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code, setting water rates by resolution and other related charges. The motion, with Councilmember Muldoon voting no, the motion carries six, one.
Okay, we're not done yet, folks. As I said at the beginning of the meeting, we are continuing to this portion now where we will give council committee reports unless, unless.
Move to adjourn.
We don't have a second.
I had some comments.
Well, I, and I have to make an announcement too. One more moment, folks. Mr. Muldoon, go ahead.
Thank you. So there's a very important issue that's been brewing in our city for some time. It's what have, what has Next Gen done to our community? I met with the CEO of JetSuiteX a couple of weeks ago and I asked him if he's really interested in being a good member of this community, that he would consider departure procedures that are less impactful on our community. And he agreed, and he went one step further and he did a noise study. And that noise study was recently given to us and I hope that it's given to the Airport Aviation Committee. I hope that everyone takes a good look at it. If this noise study is true, it shows that the departure procedure used as unintended consequence of Next Gen is in fact multiple times louder than the previous flight departure procedures used before the change 2016. It shows that those impacted in the city of Newport Beach, specifically the peninsula, are, are not wrong in saying that it is significantly louder and we can deduct therefore there's more pollution based on the elevation of the planes, the time they cross over into the water. It is, I won't say it's, it's irrefutable, so I'm going to request that the noise expert come during my public announcement, next council meeting, if, if it's agreeable with the council, and explain his findings, what can be done about it and how the other airlines perhaps could follow in JetSuiteX's path in either studying or exploring more efficient and quieter ways to fly when they depart from John Wayne Airport. Thank you.
I haven't seen a copy of that report. Has, has, have all of us seen it? I'd like to see it.
I believe it's, we're supposed, we don't all have it yet, but I believe we're supposed to all. And I believe Aviation Committee is supposed to be submitted it as well. And it's, it's really shocking. So it's really eye opening.
All right, well, I'd like to look forward to seeing it. All right, and I do have one announcement, it's only time, it's timely, it's two announcements. So Tara, is someone putting, or city clerk, are you, Ms. City Clerk, are you putting that up? Is this for Saturday? We have on Saturday a public safety day here in the community room. Supervisor Steele is going to have a seminar. I think we have the Sheriff Barnes here and Michelle Steele and our police chief, I think, is Chief Lewis still here? So it's a public safety day for all the community from 9 to 12 in the community room. So you should have all received a brochure in your mail and hope you could come on behalf of Supervisor Steele. I'm extending that invitation and I will be there. Also, just a personal note, on behalf, do we have a slide here? This family, the gentleman in the back, is here in Newport Beach with his family as a gift recipient of the Jack and Jill Late Stage Cancer Foundation, which visit Newport Beach, is one of several cities across the country to participate in this program. And several organizations in Newport Beach contributed to meals and events and football games and dinners and Disneyland and visit Newport Beach coordinated all of this, the airfare, the rental of the short-term lodging home and, and on the peninsula trip logistics, Disneyland, LA trip. This gentleman, he has seven children and he has late-stage cancer and this was his make a wish come true, to come to California, to come to Newport Beach. They live in Chicago and to come where it's, the sun is shining and the air is clear. And it was a pleasure to meet them, beautiful family and going through a really difficult time. But I know if Gary Sherwin is watching tonight, he organized it, visited Newport Beach and his staff organized this and it was a pleasure to meet this lovely family and share their spirit of hope. And just wanted to say thank you to them for making my day yesterday. All right, and I think we have adjourned. Thank you very much.